The recording has started. Chair.
Okay. Monday the twenty-sixth, five P. M. Board of Adjustments is now in session. We do have a quorum. Business Matters, number one, to bore show elected chairperson of the board's membership. I have any recommendations on that?
Yeah, Mike. Done. The bottom. There you go.
A little face.
There.
I tell you, I am out of practice. If Mr. Sellers would be willing to accept a nomination as chair, I would like to make that nomination.
I will accept that.
Okay, and since you're chair, I guess you have to ask for a second to nominate yourself.
I'll second it.
Okay.
We have a we have a nomination in a second. Everybody agree to that? Mark?
Aye.
Are you calling for a vote?
Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Hello, y'all. Number two, the board shall elect a vice chair from the board membership. We have a nomination.
Well, seeing how Mr. Gillian was so nice to nominate Mr. Sellers, I will nominate Mr. Gillian as our vice chairman.
I accept your nomination.
And I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, Mr. Gillum. Number three, we're going to approve the minutes from November the twentieth, two thousand twenty-three.
That's how long it's been.
Been a while back. Do we have a nomination to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. We have four yes and one no for the record?
Yes.
All right.
It's a
Abstention.
It's a decline to vote.
Moving along. Number four, board will conduct a public hearing to hear the citizens on the applications submitted by Eduardo Garcia. At that time, will you come forward? And the public hearing is open at five oh four.
Good evening, board members and chairman. I am Rose Anderson with Community Development, and joining me this afternoon is Mr. Eduardo Garcia, local business owner of Concord USA, who is requesting a variance for the side and rear setbacks for the installation of a car shade for a property zoned O-one low-rise office. The property is located at two-five-five Shady View and two-nine-zero-two Hillcrest Drive. It is zoned O-one low-rise office, and the proposed shade will be located on the two-five-five Shady View. The setback regulations for O-one zoning district are side setback twenty feet and rear setback of twenty feet. Mr. Garcia is requesting a variance to the code of ordinance to build a car shade against the property line resulting in zero feet setbacks. So here's a picture. In the red is the location of the shade. The ten-foot-tall car shade is about twenty-five feet long by twenty feet deep and covers three car spaces. Two supporting posts will be placed along the existing roof fence, and canopy will extend alongside property line. So attached are just some pictures of the proposed structure. We've, I've also included some pictures, the next slide, please, of the before improvements. And next slide are the after property improvements. And as you can see, Mr. Garcia has invested significant time and effort into improving his property. Next slide. Staff must acknowledge that the existing setback regulations are in place for important reasons, including fire safety and water drainage concerns. Also, please recognize that several permits have been denied in the past for similar carport setback regulations on Hillcrest Drive. The city believes that this variance will not cause substantial detriment to the public good and is appropriate for the redevelopment of this property and recognizes the Board of Adjustments authority to grant this variance to the building setbacks. At this time, I will hand things over to Mr. Eduardo Garcia.
Good evening, board. How are you guys doing?
Good evening.
Um, the reason I wanted the carport is because there are several trees and we have several vehicles where the birds are kind of, you know, on, on, the droppings are getting on the cars, and they're actually ruining the paint. For another reason is when it's raining or hail, we get our cars somewhat protected. But also, in addition to that, it looks real nice, and it matches our front office. We, we have one exactly like that, only it's taller and bigger that covers the back of our office. So this will match it perfect, except it'll be smaller in, in essence. So both buildings will now match. So it'll kind of, because it's going to be in fence, which we, we already have a permit to put the fence up, only it's being built. So it's literally going to be inside the fence line along with the wooden fence that I got the approval for, and it's built. So it's going to all match. It's going to fit in there perfect, but it, anything, any vehicle can drive through. There's no vehicles in the slots. They can drive through without hitting because it's ten feet tall. So, and I just wanted to beautify so everything can match the front and the back to match, make it look real nice. Apart from the fact that I want to protect the vehicles that we have from, from the elements.
Excuse me, Delia, would you put that picture back up? Uh, please. The one with the fence. That's good enough. I just wanted the board to see that and view it and discuss it.
Thank you for that, Mr. Sellers. May I be recognized?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia, I do recognize that all the improvements you've made on that property. It looks really, really good. I do have just the one question regarding rain and hail. So if this is on the fence line, where is the runoff going to go off the back of the?
It doesn't show the gutters, but it's going to have a gutter on the back, whatever slides off. It's actually, when it's curved, when it's curved, two-thirds of it will go to the front, which is where it's going to land on the asphalt. One-third of the water will fall to the back inside my fence line, but it's going to fall on a gutter system, which will go down the pole and onto my asphalt and out into the, into the street like it does now.
So there's no impact to you?
There is no, zero impact. Yes, sir.
That's, that addresses my concern.
Do you have any approval or disapproval from the neighbor?
No, sir. We have two approvals that came in.
I don't have those approvals in, in front of me here.
One of them was from Tracy Ebersol, who's around within two hundred feet.
Right.
And the other one is from twenty-nine eighteen Hillcrest, and I forgot his name. I think it's Reggie.
Yes, yes, it's Reggie.
Reggie.
Okay.
And they were both in favor.
All right. That's good to know. Does the board have a, a motion?
May, may I ask a question, please?
Yes.
Uh, evening.
Yes, sir.
You, you said there's going to be a fence facing Shady View also?
No, there is a fence already there. On the drawing, you'll see the fence.
Okay.
There is a, the, oh, yeah, there's, it's going to run parallel with, but it's a wrought iron fence.
And that's, that's a fence that actually goes up to the corner of the building, right?
Goes up to the back corner of the building, correct. Just parallel with Shady View.
Yeah.
And then there's going to be two gates
Okay.
over here and one gate for fire department so they can come in and out if they need to.
Good, good. That was my concern.
Yes, sir. No, um, and then this gate on Shady View will be exit gate only. So that nothing, you know, because we require when you're driving in twenty-some feet, so you can go and open up. Well, this gate will have a giant sign that says exit only. So you come in through Hillcrest. You either hit the keypad to open the gates, or you have a remote, you can get in. But if the fire department wants to come in, they'll have a Knox box at my other gate and have a Knox box at bo, at both gates either, so they can, they can access it from either way.
Any other question?
If no other discussion, I would make a motion to approve the variance.
Do we close the public hearing?
Okay.
And then go to?
Thank you for your comments. Public hearing is closed at five twelve. So do we have a motion to approve or disapprove?
So.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous, aye.
Who was the second?
I was the second.
You were the second.
It's unanimous, so it's approved. So the application was approved, and the next step is to adjourn.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank all of you very much.
Next time you have to sit over here with a, yell.
Hello, everyone. Today is August twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. So notice is hereby given that the above call meeting of the governing body of City of Balconies Heights, Texas, will be held today, Monday, August twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, at six P. M. in the Justice Center Council chambers located at thirty-three hundred Hillcrest, Hillcrest Drive, Balconies Heights, Texas, seven-eight-two-zero-one, to consider and act upon any lawful subject which may come before said meeting, including, among others, the following items to be acted and discuss, rather, to be discussed and acted upon. So we were going to call the order, and we're going to record the quorum. We do have a full quorum. So let's move on to the next invocation and pledges of allegiance to the USA and Texas flag. Who would like to have the honor of doing that? Who would like to have the honor? Let's go over to our colleague.
Our heavenly Father, please grant us the wisdom and knowledge to govern all issues of our community, the welfare and true needs of our residents. I pray for the agenda set before us and help us make the right decision for the benefit of our community. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, everyone. And I'd like to do one more invocation and prayer. I did this last time, and I would like to make it available to us at all times. So you will join me, please, in the saying to our Father. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heav, heaven. Give us to stay our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Thank you, everyone, and whoever wanted to participate there. So we're going to do the public comment, period. So we have this time persons who have submitted comments in writing prior to the meeting. We have those comments read out loud, entered into the record during the citizens to be heard section. No council and discussion and action may take place except for placing on a future agenda, so it may be considered. So at this point, let me call out the first individual, Mr. Juan Lassera, two-twenty-three, Ronald Lanes. Status on council. Lassera, you have the comment section to go?
Yes, sir. Mayor, council, thank you for granting me the opportunity to speak. Just as, as we look forward and move forward into this budget process, there is decisions that have to be made, and we're doing the best we can with what we have and to move forward. Decisions will have to be made. As part of our function, we have to make decisions. We cannot put obstacles to obstruct the decision-making process, and we'll see some of those objects further down on the agenda. The other thing I'd like to do, there's also an item that we'll discuss later about unity within the council. It is imperative that we work as, as a unit and stop the separation that's going on. It's example by leadership, so we need our leadership, our mayor, to start working with the council and stop contradicting our actions as we try to move forward as a city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lassera, very much. We have now this Nita White, item number eight. Is that the item you want to speak on, Ms. White? Item number eight. So you run a reserve, and so we go in and okay, got it. Pull up there. Uh, we have Suzanne DeLeon, three-twenty-three, Crestview. Staff departures, responses to letter distributed to residents this past weekend.
Thank you very much. My name is Suzanne DeLeon. I live at three-two-three Crestview Drive, and I've lived here with my husband, Robert, for around a little, more than thirty-eight years. Before I respond to the letter distributed over the weekend, I think it's important for this council, the staff, everybody that's here this evening to know about a conversation that happened between two members. A voicemail was anonymously sent to me. I don't know who sent it, and it's important for y'all to hear because of what was said. I was going to play it, and I decided against it. So instead, I'm going to read you the most important part that I found very offensive. I'm appalled that on the voice, that the voice on the voicemail is speaking about our incredible staff as, quote, rats. The rats are taking off. That's good, end quote. And I would suggest that you apologize to staff because we have wonderful staff members here, and for this to be said about our staff is very, very unacceptable. I really was appalled that a city leader is speaking about our outstanding staff members, two of whom are leaving to enjoy their retirement very soon. Mark Kite, captain in Balconies Heights Fire Department for thirty-three years' service to our city. Delia Sanchez, our city secretary. I always tease her. She knows where all the bodies are buried. And we, you both served us very well, and thank you for all of your time with us. Is Mark with us today? No? Okay. Gilbert Perala, city administrator, is also going to be leaving on September the twentieth. Gilbert, your time with the city has made us stronger. Your wisdom, your knowledge, your guidance has been invaluable to the city, and I want to thank you, and I hate to see you go. Lorenzo Nostasi left a few months ago, a longtime staff person with excellent skills. So in less than four months, we will lose four highly qualified department heads out of seven. So now I'm going to address a letter from some of the, that some of the residents received over the weekend. First was about elimination of dispatch office. The statement is incorrect. Yes, yes, I can. I can talk about it now if I choose to. His statement was incorrect. No one in this room, or I dare say the entire city, wants to eliminate the dispatch for police and fire. Having a discussion about outsourcing our dispatch to another agency such as Bear County is not eliminating dispatch. Eliminate means to abolish, to disregard. Most of us of the sitting council and our residents understand this. My question to this council is, what is your plan to take care of the citizens and the business leaders to be able to continue to pay the dispatch cost, which will continue to rise yearly? Has this council tried to find other agencies or cities to bring their dispatch services to us, or just wishing it so? We would like to have an answer to this question in the upcoming newsletter, please. This item has been discussed over and over again over many years, and we heard from our residents about their desire to keep dispatch in the city. This council has a very hard decision to make because a lot of the residents don't understand exactly the workings of that, and I wish that they would come and talk to staff about it. The reality for one of the issues regarding next year's budget is because the contract for the red light safety cameras expired in May of twenty twenty-four. Through no fault of the cities, the Texas legislators voted to ban new contracts for the red light cameras, but because our contract was in place, we did have the option to renew it for another ten years. But that didn't happen because we had a council member at the time who spoke to the company and demanded that we get new cameras, which they were not willing to do. They were told that he would not vote for the contract extension unless they put in new cameras. They were going to upgrade, but not put in, put in new cameras. That's the reason the company did not sign the contract agreement to continue this service, which is affecting the city's budget this year and future years. We would receive around four hundred thousand dollars annually from the red light cameras that paid for three police officers and other police supplies. Unfortunately, that money is now gone. Increase in property taxes, one of the others. To be clear, I was at the meeting when the agenda item was discussed, and the three council members noted in the letter did not agree to raise property taxes. In order to do their due diligence when working on the annual budget, all possibilities must be openly discussed, and that is what was brought to the council's attention for discussion, among other things, to get a balanced budget. The city administrator's retirement play, retirement pay, it's completely false statements in the letter. Regarding hiring our city attorney, it is not a conflict of interest to do so. No one in administration is trying to bypass hiring procedures. Where did he get this wrong information? Also about the salary, Gilbert's salary is a hundred and sixty thousand plus benefit, not two hundred and six thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars that was told to you. Next was selection of a new city manager. The idea that they have pre-selected a candidate is not true. City hiring, of city secretary hiring processes, this is on, on your agenda tonight. Previous council gave the city administrator the okay to train a current employee who is very familiar with the job requirements of the city secretary. This is called a succession plan. This is a very necessary practice in companies and cities. Hiring within the organization is showing staff that we value their loyalty, their position, and services that they take care of. There is nothing wrong with hiring within the city when we have a qualified candidate who has years of experience working in Balconies Heights. Potential consequences. This is another one of the scare tactics, but yes, it is always possible that sitting council members could make bad decisions, and our city could become insolvent. However, during my term as mayor, this was one of our foremost considerations, our financial status. We love our city, and we want to remain to be a municipality. Finally, the last statement in the letter, quote, "Let's stand together to ensure our city's future is managed with integrity, transparency, and fairness," end quote. I think this is a great statement, and I agree, and I hope that whoever wrote that actually means it, and it's not just pretty words. Council, please, all of you should keep in mind that you are here as a duty to residents you serve, and the city's future should be managed with integrity, with transparency, and with fairness, and we will hold you accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzie, I mean, Suzanne DeLeon, excuse me. Thank you, Mr. DeLeon.
Mayor, can I ask that you speak into your microphone? It's very difficult to hear you, and especially on the recording.
Thank you, Ms. DeLeon, very much for your comments.
Thank you.
So we now have the Mark Sines, number one, state of the city. Five oh one, Balconies Heights, Rose. Is where you reside at, Mr. Sines?
Yes, I would actually ask to speak after the state of the city is done on that one.
Okay. Well, then it won't be proper, so if you want to do that, you, you would have put item number one that you wanted to speak during that time. Is that what you want to do?
Yes, I put, I wanted to speak for item number one.
Mr. Charles White?
Well, I submitted to.
Okay, we'll, we'll do it. No problem. Uh, Mr. Charles White, two-eleven, leisure.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. It's a pleasure to be here. I am extremely pleased that you do not put time limits on citizens to be heard. I deeply appreciate that. I, I remember when I was on council, I'd hear this, you have two minutes left. You have one minute left.
Actually, there's three minutes, but it's up to the mayor whether to enforce it or not.
Oh, okay.
Just in case, if we don't violate the Open Meetings Act, there should be no.
Well, that's okay. I mean, Frank and I made eye contact.
I'm just saying, if we do it, we got to everybody else, and so to protect the integrity of the Open Meetings Act, let's just let you speak and say your piece. Do you want to address number eleven and fourteen as well, Mr.?
No, I, I'm going to.
Reserve to that time come, when it comes?
Yeah, I'll wait for that time.
Let's let you finish on your citizens to be heard.
Uh, one thing that I've gotten concerned about is I hear that y'all only give ten minutes to discuss an agenda item. To me, that's absolutely ridiculous, because every person here has a thought and an idea. And I look for all of y'all to put everything together, together to come up with a plan. Budget's going to be your biggest thing this year. I heard that Lamar Gillian made the comment that the CBD G grant for Hillcrest came in. And I believe that's a, it should be in your budget packet, because it's a fenced fund. But usually, that's a ten-to-one expenditure. So if it costs ten million, or it did five years ago, whoever Lamar is, is he still with us? Hey, Lamar. That means we'd have to put up a million dollars. So my main concern is that with the way the mall's gone, that the city's having to pick up expenditure there, and we're getting into our reserves. Are we going to be able to even get a loan to pay for Hillcrest? Well, that's if the, the checks come in. But they usually will give you two years. If you don't do it the year it comes in, they give you one more year. And if you don't do it, you fall out of the program. And once you get out of it, it's almost impossible. It's not impossible to get back in, but it's difficult. Because they run all that through committees to make decisions. So anyway, the budget's multi-layered. But you have our finance director over there. He is more than adequate at putting all the pieces together for you. So roads are important. Roads are important for the businesses to get people here or the businesses to have people to, to come in. And of course, that gets back to dispatch. Even though our tax base is higher, the fact that they can count on the police and fire being there within a few minutes is very important. Are they going to catch the car thief? Are they going to catch the person that stole something? Probably not. But the fact that they're there is a huge deterrent. Of course, businesses sometimes are willing to pay a little bit more in taxation, realizing that it's to their convenience to have these things, but not necessarily. Of course, the police department has a 2% COLA, and they are a union. So you can't get away from that. It's binding. And somehow, it's written in there that what you do for one, you have to do for all. And I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but you control the budget. So to make everything happen, you can say, "Police Department, this is your budget. You make it work." "Fire Department, this is your budget." That's our two biggest expenditures. And that's been really cold, but it's fact of life. You're out shopping. You'll notice that you're not getting the service that you used to, or the quality that you used to, even in the medical field. Because everybody is cutting back. So it's not going to be easy for you. I haven't looked at the budget, but I plan on coming by and sitting down with y'all and trying to hash all this out. It's not going to be easy. And as far as the mall, mistakes happen. We should have gotten company to do more research. I remember Johnny said that they needed to do more investigation. We didn't do it, but it's behind us. We have to go forward. So we have to make adjustments. So let's all try to buckle down and do the best that we can. Thank you.
Thank you, former Councilman White. Mr. Jimmy Hernandez, 112 Leisure Street. Dispatch and budget.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Jimmy Hernandez. I lived in this community since 2010. And I currently serve as a member on the Board of Adjustments and previously have served with the Planning and Zoning Commission. And tonight, I want to address, I guess, not only the members, current members, but even former members. Living in this community for many years, it seems like there's two camps. We have one camp with former Mayor Suzanne DeLeon, and the other camp with current Mayor Johnny Rodriguez. And I can tell you, as a citizen, from time to time, I have different people from both camps come to my house and visit me. And both sides are pointing fingers at the other. And both sides are making strategic and tactical, I'm going to say political moves, if you will, to push their agenda and block the other group. And today, we're at a point where our budget, as everybody knows and people have talked about tonight, we're in dire straits right now. We're about to lose either our dispatch office here, or, you know, we're going to have to cut salaries. We're going to have to do something. Now, I'm not in tune with what's going on with the budget. But I want to encourage the current city council members and the current mayor to work together instead of working against each other. This is going to be crucial to our success. And I can tell you, you know, first off, I meant to thank everybody for serving because I know it's a huge sacrifice. I can tell you that I don't want to serve. I've been approached at different times, and I just don't have the time, and I can't make that sacrifice. So I want to thank you guys for doing that. I know it is a big time, I'm going to say, commitment. Plus, it's a huge responsibility, decisions that you guys are faced with. And so with that being said, again, I just want to encourage you guys to work together and stop pointing fingers at each other and come up with a viable solution. It's been said tonight, we don't want to lose dispatch. And I agree, I don't want to lose dispatch. Also, don't want to cut anybody's salary, right? I don't know if there's other ways, other areas that we can, you know, tighten the belt or eliminate, or maybe there's some frivolous spending. I don't know, but you guys got to look at that, and you guys got to figure it out. The last thing I want to talk about is transparency. So yesterday, you know, again, I had two different groups, you know, come to my house. And I can tell you that for the first time since I've been, you know, living in Balcony Heights, a member of city council actually stopped by to drop off a letter, and that was Mark Sines. And I didn't greet Mark. I must have been out of the house, and, you know, he left the note at our door. But I read it, and I was really impressed, not so much on his viewpoint, but the fact that he was being transparent and saying, "This is what's going on in the city, and this is my position." So I want to encourage the city council and the mayor that why don't we use the city bulletin to, you know, document different areas of discussion, whether it be the budget or something else down the road. It could be years from now. Whatever important issues are up, I think we should post that in the bulletin. And then I think that the mayor and each city council member should also have a segment as to their position and why on that particular topic. And I think that would open things up for our community, and our community can come together and, you know, help support and help make in decisions. So that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez, very much for your comments. So we now have these others that are going to be spoken to at the time of the items of the agenda, and we'll move right along.
No, Mayor, I specifically wanted to talk about number 24 before the meeting.
Before the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't hear that. You're welcome to.
That's what I was trying to say when you cut me off earlier.
Are the rest of the council members okay with that, discussing 24 prior to getting there? Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Sines, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So Agenda Item 24 is Discussion and Action to Respectfully Request Council Members to Make an Extra Effort to Begin Working Together to Build Collaboration and Make Suggestions and Place Items on the Agenda that are Constructive and Convulsive to Solving the Dire Financial Needs of Our City, Helping Our Community, Fellow Citizens, and Promoting Business-Community Prosperity. So this was presented on the agenda on Thursday afternoon. And then Sunday, I found out about a letter that was being distributed to our residents. And I'd like to talk about some of those in how it relates to Agenda Item 24. So on some of these letters that were handed out by the mayor and Tracy Ebersol, there's a, there's a verse written there. It's Ephesians 5:13. And my wife took the liberty of looking up that verse. So I'd like to read it right now. It says, "But their evil intentions will be exposed when the light shines on them, for the light makes everything visible." So as I read that, I was deeply disturbed because in this letter, the mayor makes misleading at best and outright false statements repeatedly. Again, no one is proposing elimination of the dispatch. I have taken the stance, and then I wrote a letter that I distributed throughout the city. I unfortunately did not have enough to get to every single residence, but I tried to get out as many as I could. But we really need to look at the potential or the possibility of outsourcing our dispatch as a way to close our budget deficit. This number here, $320,000, is incorrect. It's actually closer to $230,000. And outsourcing our dispatch, the estimate would be an annual savings of about $250,000. So that immediately closes our budget shortfall. As to increase in property taxes, again, as Mayor DeLeon said, there are certain ways to propose budget that are required by law that allow the finance director flexibility in how he presents the budget to the city. And one of those is allowing a range of potential property tax rates. One of those is up to, the statement says, up to the voter approval rate, which at present was about 6.12%, I think, give or take. So that does not say that we are going to raise the property taxes. That means it gives the finance director the capability to present our budget with a range of options to the city. That's all it does. In fact, we are fighting hard to reduce our expenses so that we can have the option to not raise our taxes, and if we can, lower our property taxes. That's at present, right now, if we do nothing, the proposed tax rate was 6.7. Okay, that's if we do nothing, as Mr. or the mayor has essentially proposed. The city retirement pay. Again, Mr. Peralas's salary is not $207,000, as stated on here. It's about $161,000, as Mayor DeLeon said again earlier. With retirement pay and medical, that comes up to about $189,000. When we hire a new city administrator, with the additional responsibilities that we've added of economic development, that pay, that base pay is going to be about $160,000, most likely. It's going to be somewhere in there because that's what the range of pay is for city administrators in the San Antonio metro area. So looking at other cities, some cities have a city administrator makes way more base pay. And some cities make a little less, but the average is about $160,000. So including medical, retirement, and other benefits, it's going to come up to about the same, about $189,000. So it's not going to be a net savings for our city when we do hire a new city administrator. Going on to number four, selection of a new city administrator. There is no pre-chosen candidate. What we have been trying to do is find a venue or an avenue to identify qualified candidates at the most economical rate possible. So the mayor, back in May, proposed submitting an RFP, which is a request for proposals from executive search firms. I asked him. My name is Mark Sines.
It's a public, it's a public meeting. It's a public hearing. We're not allowed to discuss.
Yes, I was going to say, you have enough time, so I'm not going to restrict any time or anything, so just go forward with what you want to say.
Yes, thank you for not interrupting. Okay, well, thank you for not interrupting me again. As I was saying, we are trying to identify an avenue for finding an executive search firm at an economical cost. So back in May, the mayor proposed submitting an RFP, which is again a request for proposal for executive search forms. I asked him at that time, how much would it cost? And he did not know. He told me somewhere between $25,000 and $55,000. And I voted against it because I felt that that was too much money, that's an unfunded expense. It's not budgeted, and it would come out of our savings. In the past, we have used Mr. Garza's law firm, and they have identified candidates that are high quality, including Mr. Peralas. So that, at that time, cost us about $4,500. So you're talking a savings of about $14,000 to $15,000. Again, with the city hiring practice, it is good practice to have individuals within your, within your business or within your hiring structure that are capable of taking over in the event that somebody leaves. So there's nothing untoward about that. Potential consequences, we do have dire potential consequences. If we do not make these tough decisions to close our budget shortfalls, we stand to lose our city. If we cannot make our payments, if we cannot meet our budget requirements that we are liable for, we will lose our status as a city, and we're not going to become San Antonio. We will become an unincorporated area of Bear County. And at that point, we will have sheriff's deputies responding to our 911 calls, responding from somewhere outside of 1604, responding from somewhere by Jordan, Tennessee. They're not going to be two minutes away as they are right now. So the way our dispatch, the way dispatcher works is a call goes into the dispatching agency. The dispatcher takes that call, takes the information, and immediately dispatches out to the appropriate responding agency, fire or police for that area. Bear County handles approximately 20 agencies and jurisdictions already. Leon Valley, Live Oak, and others, other school districts and everything. So they handle all those 911 calls already, and they don't have 45-minute response times in Leon Valley. They don't have 45-minute response times in Live Oak. Our response times would be approximately the same because our officers are still going to be within our city. They're still going to be patrolling around, receiving those 911 calls, those dispatches, and responding appropriately. So again, we do have serious financial budget deficits. We need to make the decisions, and we need to be able to work together to be able to, to be able to close those. Again, one of the things that the mayor has proposed is cutting police and fire overtime. That's not acceptable for me. Cutting police and fire overtime would reduce their staffing that is available. So if we don't have the capability of having the police officers available, then we will not have them available for those 911 calls. It doesn't matter if we have 10 dispatchers. If we don't have enough police officers, they're not going to respond. Same thing with the fire. Chief Motokine, if you can correct me, I think you have a two-plus-two rule is what it's called?
It's a two in, two out.
Two in, two out, thank you. Where they have to have a minimum of two officers or two fire officers or firefighters, thank you, outside to be able to send anybody inside to perform rescue operations. If they don't have that minimum coverage, then they cannot send anybody inside. And the firefighter is required to stay out and fight the fire from the outside. And if we don't have the capability of having the proper staffing, that's the risk that we have. And with that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councilman Sines. Well, we have another item. You want to wait for the item until after I do the state of the city, is what you said?
Yes, please.
Have that opportunity. I think that's it. That's all we have on the, other than the other items that will be presented at the time of the actual item, agenda item. So we'll move along. Let's go ahead, and I will do the state of the city address, which I think everyone here is wanting to hear.
Mayor, the consent agenda that goes before.
I'm sorry, I was passing over. Let's go back. Let's go ahead and do the consent agenda. I do have some questions, but does anyone have any questions regarding the consent agenda from the city council? Okay, I do have some that I was looking at. I was wanting to confirm someone, and whoever the party is that needs to answer this, please step up to the plate whenever you're. On the hot funds, we currently have $224,334.43, is that correct? That's what's on that, is presented to us on the consent agenda? I just want to confirm that balance, the Hotel Multitax Fund? I just need a confirmation of it.
Mayor Council, fund balance beginning of the year for your hot fund was $378,954.
Okay, this 224, 334, 43, what number is that? Because I took that right off the consent agenda that you provided in the package on the agenda packet?
Was that for the hot fund, Mayor, or for some other fund, general fund?
It was identified as a hot fund.
On your line item budget?
Yes, sir. Let me see if I can find it.
Revenues of 234, 900. Expenses of 234, 900.
24, 334, 43?
I got 234, 900, but, okay, 233, 400 was part of the revenue, plus another 1,500. So I think that's the number. So the bottom line number for revenues, 234, 900, and that equals expenses.
15, I was missing that.
Yes.
Okay, the Economic Incentive Fund. Can you tell me what that fund is? And then it's 298,149.23, is that the correct number?
Economic Incentive Fund, Fund 30, was created to assist businesses for economic incentive purposes, obviously.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Fund 30 Economic Incentive was created to incentivize businesses for upgrades or whatever that might be needed that the city could offer. Currently, at the beginning of the year, the fund balance in that fund was $462,000, projected to be $362,000 at the end of the year.
And currently, at 298,149.23? And currently at two ninety eight, one forty nine, twenty three is the number that I took off of that consent agenda? That's off your, your paperwork that you gave us.
A current year fund balance of two ninety six, five thirty six is where we stand now. Yes, sir.
Okay, is there a difference in that number from two ninety eight, one forty nine, twenty three? It's like the other one with an additional fifteen hundred at it, or an additional number at it to come up to the two ninety eight, one forty nine, twenty three?
So for Fund Thirty, if that's what you're looking at, what I show for expenses is two hundred and twenty thousand, seven thirty four and the revenues of fifty four thousand, six oh five, if you're looking at, uh, Fund Thirty.
I'm looking at the Economic Incentive Fund. That's how it's titled.
Okay, do you have a line number there, Mayor? Maybe that would help.
Put it up on my computer, but it's referred to as an Economic Incentive Fund.
Right.
It was on the consent agenda. Get a password change. So if you look under line item budget.
Should be on page twenty seven.
All I did was note the actual expense and what it was listed under Economic Incentive Fund. Regardless of the number, I'll tell you what, let's move forward so we don't hold this back too much. On the Economic Incentive Fund, give me an example of how we use that money. What did we use it for in this last? Let's just say it's two ninety eight or you're three hundred or whatever the number is.
I think it's been a while, Mayor, since we've used it, but I, I think there were some signage in, in one of the shopping or strip centers, uh, close by here and we, we helped business owners to, uh, renovate their signs and put up new signage and whatnot, but that's been a couple of years.
Okay, but recently, I mean, we have that balance in there, so we haven't used much of it and it can be used for economic incentive, correct?
That is the purpose of the fund. Yes, sir.
For us to use for sales tax revenue generating and whatever may, whatever that fund allows us to use, it's available to us at that balance that we're looking at more or less.
Or the purpose that it was created. Yes, sir.
I'd like to keep on that later on, see how we can do that to help our budget and stuff. Our newsletters costing us four oh five eighty nine, correct?
Or that I would defer to Ms. Mary on that one.
Okay, that's on the budget item here. So our dispatch council lines, which, um, those are new dispatch lines that we put in in addition to what, uh, I had worked on to try to get in this nine one one service, come in with new equipment, new, um, servers and things of that nature. This is it a maintenance item or is it a, an additional equipment item?
Uh, it's difficult to know what you're talking about without a, a line item reference there, Mayor. But if it's dispatch lines, then that's required by dispatch's backup. I know we pay AT&T, uh, for that service monthly. If that's what you're referring to.
Yes, sir. If that was included from last year on the upgrade, that's the encryption that everyone is, they haven't given us a due date yet, but it was launched by City of San Antonio and Bear County, that all the little cities to include us. Uh, we changed the radio frequency, so that's the backup to the Corey Run in Brook City Base. So it was, uh, certain lines that we had to all have.
That's what I was looking for. Excellent response. Okay, and the repair lines in the park, we spent seven hundred and fourteen, ten. What happened there? Did we get line break on us over there? Are the infrastructure of those lines are needing attention?
Yes, if I believe correctly, that was one of the rest rooms, um, that had been sealed off for a while. We opened it up and there was a water leak. Yes.
Okay, that was another one. We had another item expense for that at a hundred and ninety. On our legal, on May and June, we spent thirty two thousand, um, uh, three, uh, three, what is it? Uh, three thousand, two hundred and eighty five dollars and thirty seven cents for the month of May and then three thousand, five forty two, twenty for the month of June. Is that correct?
If that's what the invoices say, yes.
Okay, and then four thousand, sixty two recently. Okay, IT support, that's going to be anything going on with our computers or anything like that? Is that correct? That's six thousand, nine hundred and fifty.
When, when you get a minute, when you get a minute on the, uh, legal, if we can get a, a description of what that was expensive for.
It doesn't tell us, it's just line item. I can look into it. As a matter of fact, I got a, a packet that I asked for information on legal expenses to date, so y'all can have an idea. You should have a copy of it. Uh, Mr. Messick gave it to you today. I prepared that. I haven't give you a copy.
Just because when I was going through the, the budget report myself, I did see that we have a big increase on a public record request.
Yeah.
So that, that, that's probably why we have such a big expense on, on legal for those two months.
His itemized billing will show that. It goes in there. Which one? Uh, we had a fire department engine repaired. Chief, can you give me some update on that? What it cost us and you remember what it was for? What happened? Is that our main pumper?
No, it's our, our reserve. Um, one of it, it failed the pump test.
Okay.
So it had to get repacked and all the valves had to get changed out. And then another one, the new one, the A triple F foam system, it needed to be maintenance also.
Okay. Do you remember how much that cost us?
They were both around eleven hundred.
Okay, so about twenty two hundred dollars?
Yep.
Okay. We don't foresee any more problems with that, right?
Not with the engines. The tower is a different truck.
Keep our fingers crossed. Then we, is on the sewer treatment and transport, that's a huge item that we're spending, um, in the tune of about fifty three thousand, six hundred and forty nine dollars for each time. Um, the two entries that I saw for sewer treatment and transport is amounting to a hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and eighty one dollars and thirty eight cents. Is there any way we can reduce that fee?
Uh, no, Mayor. That's offset against the revenue.
Yeah.
You see fifty thousand in expenses, but there's also eighty thousand revenue coming in. So that's their portion of it, what they provide for us after it leaves.
No way to bring that down. Okay. It just stuck out to me. Uh, the visitor's guide magazine, I think we're spending four thousand and eight dollars for that on the advertising out to different cities. Uh, in the coin operated machines, I was curious about that and we're bringing in two thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars current on that. So you concur on that number? Do you know what it, what we're charging for those coin operated machines apiece?
Fifteen dollars.
Fifteen. Is there any way we can go up on that or?
That's a by state.
It is?
Yeah, it's a law.
Good to know. I didn't know. Maybe we can bring in some revenue on additional. Okay. All right, that's all I have unless anybody else has anything else.
Thank you for the questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Messick, for providing that to me. Okay, so we, um, the consent agenda items, then we have approval for it. We have, we don't have to vote out and remember, right? We have to vote. We need a motion for a consent agenda item to approve.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, agenda items.
Okay, Councilman Science motion to approve. And we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Councilman Lysia has made second. We'll do a roll call. Councilman Valverde.
Yay.
Councilman Science.
Yeah.
Councilman Lysia.
Yay.
Councilman Sellers.
Yay.
Councilman Burton.
Yay.
Five oh passes, uh, motion passes to approve the consent agenda item. All right, now we'll move into the state of the city address. Welcome residents and esteemed members of our community. As we gather today, it is essential to address the current state of our city and outline our path forward. Our city of Balcony Heights with its vibrant community of nearly three hundred residential homes and approximately twenty seven hundred apartment residents is known for its Wonderland of America's Mall. The annual jazz fest and many in a strategic location at crossroads of Loop Four Ten and I Ten highways. While our city has many strengths, we are currently facing significant challenges that require our collective effort. Acknowledgement of challenges and mistakes. We recognize that mistakes have been made in managing our city finances, investments and operations. It's important for us to acknowledge these issues openly. I understand that the previous council mistakes were made with good intentions. Moving forward, we need the cooperation and support of my fellow city council members along with active engagement from the entire community to transform these challenges into a positive collaborative effort for the benefit of the taxpayers of our city. Current challenges and budget shortfall. Our city is facing a severe budget shortfall of approximately three hundred and twenty dollars, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars due to previous financial challenges, increased expenditures and loss of revenue. We need to address this issue with transparency, strategic planning and proactive efforts. I want to emphasize that the current budget shortfall and high salaries are in no way the fault of our employees. They have worked diligently and with great dedication. And it's important to acknowledge that these issues are not a reflection of their performance or commitment to the city. High salaries and workforce size. A significant portion of our budget is allocated to salaries and our workforce may be larger than necessary for our city's needs. It's crucial to reassess these areas to ensure sustainability and efficiency. Here are examples of the total yearly cost to our city. Administration, city administrator has a total yearly salary of two hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and ninety six dollars. The finance director is, has a one hundred and thirty one thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollar salary. The city secretary has a salary of a hundred and six thousand, two hundred and fifty three dollars. The finance administration has a salary of ninety one thousand, eight fifty four. The part-time janitorial, a total salary of twenty three, three thirty nine. The court, the senior court clerk has a salary of seventy one thousand, seven hundred and six dollars. The court clerk one has sixty three thousand, six hundred and two dollars. The court clerk two has a salary of fifty nine thousand, five eighty seven. The part-time judge has a salary of twenty nine thousand, sixty six dollars. Plus, the department has a one thousand dollar in overtime. Community development, director of community development has a salary of one twenty nine, three fifty one. The code permits clerk has a salary of seventy five thousand, one twenty nine. The part-time code enforcement has a salary of fifty seven, one oh five. The police chief has a salary of one fifty six, eight fifteen. We have two police lieutenants from salaries from one oh five, forty seven to a hundred and fifteen thousand, fifty four dollars. We have six corporals with a salary range from ninety thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars to ninety eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty six dollars. We have three sergeants from a hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and seventy six to a hundred and twenty seven thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars. Six police officers from eighty six thousand, six hundred and forty one to ninety six, three hundred and ninety two. We have one part-time fleet maintenance at forty three thousand, nine sixty eight. Plus, the department has fifty thousand dollars in overtime. The fire chief has a yearly salary of a hundred and forty two thousand, seven hundred and forty two dollars. We have three captains in the fire department that earn a hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and one dollars to a hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars. We have three lieutenants from nine six, ninety six thousand, three hundred and seventy four to a hundred and five, five seventy six. We have nine firefighters from seventy nine thousand, two hundred and eighty six to ninety one thousand, thirty nine dollars. The department has forty thousand dollars in overtime. The dispatch supervisor has a salary of seventy two thousand, five hundred. We have four dispatchers from ranging from sixty six thousand, fifty four dollars to sixty eight thousand, twenty six dollars. The department has five hundred, I mean, fifty thousand dollars in overtime. So number two, lack of oversight and accountability. There is a need for improved oversight and accountability to enhance decision-making processes and financial management. Three, leadership and administrative issues. Concerns related to our city administrator position and other administrative practices need to be addressed to ensure effective leadership and adherence to professional standards. Political dynamics. The current political environment has impacted city operations. Promoting collaboration and focusing on the city's needs will help us overcome these challenges. Proposed solutions, one, implement salary caps and conduct an audit. Enforce salary caps, caps for the city employees and commission an independent employee compensation study and audit to align the compensation with our city's financial capabilities. This will help ensure long-term fiscal responsibility. Optimize workforce. Reassess and streamline the workforce to enhance efficiency and better align with the city's needs. Enhance oversight and transparency. Establish stronger oversight mechanisms and improve transparency in decision-making processes. Making financial records and decisions accessible to the public is a priority. Address, address leadership and administrative concerns. Reevaluate the job description and role and responsibilities of the city administrator and consider leadership and contractual changes before next administrator is hired. Implement clear policies for time off and ensure effective oversight, transparency and accountability measures. Reevaluate collective bargaining practices. Assess our collective bargaining agreements to develop a more sustainable approach to compensation and seek another solution to the practice of raises negotiated for police officers that are automatically extended to all other non-collective bargaining city employees, resulting in unsustainable salary and benefit increases, further straining our already fragile budget. Promote political collaboration. Continue to encourage open dialogue and foster a collaborative environment within the city council to move beyond political infighting and focus on pros, on progress. Seven, engage the community. Involve residents in financial planning and decision-making to rebuild trust and support for our necessary reforms. Empowering our business community. Adopt policies and procedures that drive customer growth and boost sales tax revenue for our present and future business partners. Clarification on proposed measures. Outsourcing dispatch services and raising property taxes have been suggested as a potential solutions to our financial challenges. However, I want to clarify that these measures will not address the root causes of our budgetary issues and could impose further burdens on our residents. Instead, I'm confident that through collaborative efforts and open dialogue, we can find more effective and mutually beneficial solutions. Conclusion. Our city faces challenges, but by acknowledging past mistakes and working together, we can navigate these issues effectively. As your mayor, you elected me to lead our city out of these financial difficulties and guide us towards prosperity. I am committed to developing strategies that not only address our current challenges, but also enhance the well-being of our community and provide the amenities our city deserves. Let us all unite in our efforts and focus on building a stronger, more resilient and sustainability city for all. I encourage you to visit our city's website at www.bhtx.gov to view council meetings and stay informed. I thank you very much for your time and I appreciate all the, um, consideration to all these things that I presented for you and I leave it in your hands at this point on. Thank you very much. So we'll move on now to item number two.
Uh, Mayor, I had asked to respond. That's what.
I'm sorry.
So, thank you. So I wanted to address, um, I'm trying to go point by point here. I was trying to take notes as the mayor was reading through his letter. The first thing he led off with was, was the salaries of our city employees, um, saying that we have too many to meet our city's needs. And then addressing one by one, the, what he calls their salary. I've, I've asked the mayor previously in, in other budget meetings to propose which, uh, positions he would like to cut. If he says we have too many positions, which ones he would like to cut. And, uh, he has never provided a response to me. In addressing the salary, he's, he's looking at total compensation to include medical, retirement, all those, those are required by law. We have to provide those. That's same as our 401K, right? Same as our health benefits. So we're required by law to provide those to our, our employees. So he used the city administrator again of two hundred and seven thousand dollars. Again, it's not that, it's about a hundred and eighty nine thousand, including the medical reimbursement and the retirement reimbursement. So, um, he rattled off the police, um, um, payments or salaries that they have or their total compensation. So our police are under a, a, a union contract that we cannot touch. Okay, we cannot re, re, address that for a few more years. And I agree that we do need to, um, go in there and negotiate something that is better for our city that is more, uh, financially ma- manageable for us. He also brought up the fire department. So in a previous meeting, he brought up the base pay for a San Antonio cadet and I forget what it was, probably about forty five thousand dollars or so. And then he tried to compare it to our firefighters who have already been through the training and are full, they've already gone through probation. And I think their, their base salary is about fifty-two, I think. You can, somewhere around there.
It's right under fifty-two.
Okay, thank you. This is all from memory. I didn't write any of this stuff down. So I don't know if everybody saw, but the city of San Antonio just approved a new contract with the fire department for San Antonio, approving a twenty-one percent pay increase over the next three years. And I guarantee you, cities around our metro area have noticed that and will be adjusting firefighter base pay in accordance with that as well. So we have that budget challenge coming up very soon, mayor. He called for, need for oversight over finances. So our police contract requires that we review salaries every two years. Is that right, Chief Jahanar? Two or three years?
Three, three years.
It's open again this next coming year, and that's strictly for salaries again.
Right.
And that was something that it was a bargaining chip, if you lightly say, and then it reopens back again, I believe. Was it the following year, Mr. Garza?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're required by our contract to review police compensation every three years. And when we do that, we also review our city staff employees to make salaries to ensure that we're competitive with the market. And that is something that is done, I think, every year, Mr. Messick?
Okay.
But we're required every three, but we do it every year. He also talked about the current political environment, which I addressed earlier. I'm not going to bring that up now. He's talking about salary caps. And in a previous meeting in June, he actually proposed freezing all employees' pay, which is not something I think is something our city staff would be very happy with. I wouldn't be happy with my pay being frozen just, and I assume our citizens wouldn't appreciate that if their employers just froze their pay. Optimizing our workforce again, that it goes back to his, his point that we have too many employees, but he won't say which areas he wants to cut. Does he want to cut our city finance director? He says he makes too much money. He says he wants to cut our city administrator. We are a, by law, a city administrator city. We must have a city administrator, a qualified person in that role. Does he want to cut our city secretary? Our city secretary does a lot for our city. She's not just taking notes at meetings. She runs all these things. She ensures that our meetings are meeting the laws that we have to have in order for these meetings to occur. So if their notification doesn't go out at the right time, we cannot have our meetings. She also oversees our municipal court system. There's many other roles she has. She is our elections, sir, elections administrator. Thank you. So she has to ensure that all those are done correctly. Improve transparency. We can do that as a city. I think so. I think Mr. Hernat has had a great idea to have the, the city post challenges that are coming up and have us propose or put our ideas and what we believe on those. Addressing the job of the city administrator, that is something, the city administrator oversees every aspect of our city. He oversees fire, he oversees police, he oversees the city administrator, he oversees public works. That's a very complicated job, very complex responsibilities, and we can't just hire some guy off the street. We have to make, ensure that they are qualified and meet the minimum qualifications. He talked about reevaluating the collective bargaining agreement with the police. Again, we can't do that until that comes up for renewal, or if they agree. If we come up to them and say, hey, we'd like to renegotiate, but all the police would have to vote, or the, the police would have to vote for that. Engaging our community, I, I support that a hundred percent. Empowering our business community is a good idea, but there have to be restrictions on, there have to be some regulations that the city has to, to ensure that the business community is doing responsible things. So we recently repealed the, the ordinance that we had that regulated how businesses could paint their buildings. At the time, I said we need to work with our, our business partners in this, in the community and work with, to relax those restrictions, but not to repeal them. So repealing them means the city has absolutely no control. A business could go out there and paint their building in tiger stripes with purple, gold, and brown, and there's nothing the city could do to remediate that. They tried to remove and repeal the ordinances for signs. Again, we cannot repeal ordinances outright. There have to be, we have to work with our business community to improve.
Excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I need you to stay on point to the state of the city address. None of those items were addressed in the stated city of address. And so if you can please stick to just the city, city address, because that's what you signed up for.
I'm speaking to those points.
Okay.
And in relation to your point of.
Just stay on point.
I'm speaking to those points in relation to your point of empowering our business community.
Okay, well, just.
Those are related to empowering our business community.
Kind of stick to where we're at, if you can. Thank you so much.
Yes, I, I believe I am. I wrote down notes so I could stay within. But again, we need to work with our business community, not completely remove any kind of oversight that the city has.
Well, thank you very much. Then go ahead and continue and let's move forward.
Thank you. And, and to address his, his final statement that we're trying to raise our city taxes, our property taxes. Again, we did not, and we've not proposed raising property taxes. We merely followed the legal terminology that is required to allow the city finance director to present a range of budget options for our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sines, for those comments. So I really don't think I need to go into a tit for tat, because I think that's what I'm hearing. The citizens don't want to occur. And I think that a lot of the statements you made are not true.
Please tell me where I said untrue statement.
I, I would prefer not. I'm going to let my city, state of the city address stand as it is, and I respect your comments, and I respect your input, and, but I just, I want to make sure that it's on the record that those are not statements that are not true, so.
You're, you're calling me a liar, and I would like to ask you where I'm.
Well, again, in, in the spirit of trying to build collaboration and work together, I don't want to get into that. And I don't think it would make any good to anybody here in this room to go in that direction, so I'd rather not engage in that. I'd rather stay positive, move forward, working on the solutions that I suggested, and looking at some of these things and how we can address and help our city with these really serious things that we need to do. And the way the citizens have come forward, and I, I hear them loud and clear. They want us to quit the back and forth engaging and just work on business, work together, try to get along, and work for the benefit of our community. So in the spirit of that, I'd like to just not engage in, in any conversations with you on that.
Very well. Well, I would encourage our citizens to watch the meetings that have been posted on our YouTube channel. You can see everything I stated is recorded and there for everybody to see.
Yes, sir, Mr. Sine, that's, I concur with that. I think it's good for everybody to do that. Great. Okay, so next thing on the item on the agenda, we did a state of the city address. We allow you to speak on the items. So let's move forward to now number two. Retirement announcement and acceptance of Gilbert Peralas city administrator effective September twenty twenty-four. So basically, what Mr. Peralas has done, he's given us a letter. I'd like to read it to you so that everybody will be privy to what he wrote to the city. And we will all have the opportunity to understand what his comments are to our city. He dated the letter August the fifth, addressed it to myself and the city council as a reference of notice of retirement. Members of city council, I would like to remind you that my commitment to bring, be in your city administrator is nearing an end. My current timeline is to retire from my position effective Friday, September twentieth, twenty twenty-four. While my original commitment was to assist during a time of transition, the opportunity to remain and provide guidance and help establish a path to help address short and long-term challenges has been truly enjoyable and rewarding. That both leadership on council and staff embraced and trusted the efforts designed to get us through our challenges was remarkable. I have experienced staff's tremendous level of professional growth and a commitment to excellence. They are truly the backbone of our organization. A great group of employees working within the confines of resource limitations to sustain the highest levels of customer service. You should be very proud. I've truly enjoyed my time here, and I sincerely appreciate the support provided to me during my tenure. While I look forward to the future, I will miss part of being in this team and the community. I trust that the friendships I've developed here will last well into the future. If I can be of any assistance before my departure or afterwards, then please let me know. I'd be happy to provide whatever assistance I can provide a smooth transition to my successor until a successor is hired. Respectfully, Gilbert Peralas. The second retirement announcement is by Ms. Delia Sanchez. Ms. Delia Sanchez also wrote a letter. Acknowledgement of your retirement notice date. I'd like to read that to the record that I sent Mr. Peralas in response before I go into Ms. Sanchez's. Dear Mr. Peralas, I hope this message finds you well. Thank you for your recent notice regarding your upcoming retirement effective September twenty twenty twenty-four. We deeply appreciate the commitment to be in our interim city administrator during this time of transition. Your efforts have been valued. As you prepare for this transition, we want to ensure a smooth handover of your responsibilities. I will reach out to you to discuss the necessary arrangements before your departure to facilitate this process. Due to current budget constraints and the high salary associated with your position, I regret to inform you that the city will be unable to retain your services or request further assistance after your retirement. We must align our resources within our financial parameters. And unfortunately, this means we cannot accommodate additional support beyond your departure. We sincerely thank you for your understanding in this matter and for all that you have contributed to the city. We wish you a fulfilling and enjoyable retirement and hope it brings you much happiness and relaxations. Warm regards, Johnny Rodriguez, Mayor. Delia Sanchez's letter reads August sixteen, twenty twenty-four. Dear Ms., and I'm going to try not to tear up here. Dear Ms. Peralas, Mayor and City Council, please accept this letter as my formal announcement on my retirement. I am leaving my position as a city secretary in the city of Balconies Heights, and my last day of work will be September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. I'm retiring after thirty years, four months, and twenty-three days of service with the city. I had planned to retire in January twenty twenty-five, but my daughter is about to have twin boys, and she needs her mommy. It's time for me to move on to the next chapter of my life. I'm looking forward to the opportunities and challenges this retirement will bring. I'm grateful for the opportunities I've had while working, and I appreciate the training, experience, and knowledge gained during my time here. I want to thank you and the entire team for your support and guidance provided throughout my career. I totally enjoyed coming to work and was proud to call the city of Balconies my second home, and I will miss you everyone dearly. I will commit to making the transition process as smooth as possible. Please let me know if there's anything I can do in addition to assist with the transition. And I have not written you, I promised you I'd write you a response. But I have to really think, because we go way back, you and I, I mentioned that earlier. Nineteen ninety-four, you said, right? Was it? When I came on council in ninety-one, I think it was. And I remember you were just a little clerk there, and you are hardworking. And you learned the trade, you harnessed your skills, and look where you're at today. I'm very proud of you, glad to say that you were our city secretary, and I really wish you the best in your retirement years. With lots of love. So now we will go ahead and go with the council number four. Council will hold a public hearing to receive public comments on amending section one fifty-three point three point one, point one six of the zoning code for the property located at seven zero zero one West IH ten to allow the installation of fifty-five-foot electric sign with the dimensions of fifteen feet by thirty feet. The time is to hold a public hearing, seven ten PM. So now we will open it to a public hearing at seven ten PM and move into that meeting to hear the comments. The respective parties can come forward and address the council.
Good evening, council and mayor. This is the presentation that we used at the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so this presentation was back on August twentieth, next slide. For those of you who don't know where this is located, it's, the address is seven zero zero one West IH ten, which is basically on the access road if you're going from the Shell station and, and the former Howard Johnson, now the GTHQ, if you keep going up that way, past the Soul Apartments, that's where this is located at. You see what it's zoned at and the owner. And again, for those who didn't know, it was a vacant lot, but it was a mobile home park at one time. Next slide. Basically, the proposed revisions here is, so this property is governed by a plant unit development. And so in order to change the, the, the proposed revision by the developer was related to signage. And basically, you'll see there what was originally in the HUD was for a monument sign. It actually prohibited a pole sign. And so he's asking to put a fifty-five-foot electronic sign with the dimensions of fifteen by thirty feet. When it's installed, the sign would meet all our electronic sign requirements. And so again, and, and then all the other sign requirements are still in effect. So, so that's what he's proposing to put his fifty-foot electronic sign, next slide. There's a picture of where it, what it would look like. The sign that's being proposed, as we mentioned, there, there are dimensions of fifty feet tall. If you see a little star there on the property, that's where it's actually going to reside. And so it's actually kind of parallel to the frontage road. That's the frontage road there. So that's where it's going to actually be the most used, next slide. There are several signs already in the area. As you can see, these are all the different signs that currently reside along that pathway and also on, on the other side. As you can see, they're, they're all pretty tall. And of course, I'm sure you're all familiar, if you've driven along there. There's two electric signs on the opposite freeway, so this sign would be the first electric sign on, on the other side of the freeway, and a bunch of other billboard signs. The benefits of this, this proposed sign to the developer, of course, it's important to advertise and expose the property, property to the IH ten is elevated at that point. And so the, the traffic is where the most of it is, is up on the highway, so it's elevated. That's why you see a lot of elevated signs on that corridor there. The dimensions of the sign are necessary to actually, so that people can actually see it from the, driving on the highway at the speeds that they'll be driving. Again, as the picture in the previous slide showed, it is compatible with already our existing signs that we have all along the road. Next slide. And finally, okay, and again, this sign is not as tall as the existing post signs along the frontage road. I believe Tech Dot has even come out with a new regulation, and any sign on their right-of-way can't even be taller than sixty feet. So this, this sign even meets Tech Dot's requirements as far as height. Next slide. And so based on that background information, staff doesn't see any reason why not to approve the changes like the PNZ approved unanimously for the change in the zoning district requirements for signage to allow this fifty-foot electronic sign to be placed during the construction. So I'm going to, at this time, turn it over to Mr. Ian Fisher, who's a developer of this property. And if you can go back to the sign that shows his post.
Thank you, Robert. Mayor Rodriguez, council members, thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen who've come tonight, thank you for your time. I think that Mr. Loris covered everything, the sign and the pictures showed it all. Just in short, the benefit of the sign is for our tenants first, because their success brings success to the city. And second, for the city, I think we took time, number one, to place it very strategically to where you can see that sign from a long distance coming up the highway. The reason we wanted it larger, because we wanted to, to embrace the Balconies Heights name, and we put that on top of the business park. And we've also offered free advertising to the city for an hour or two a day for whatever you need, for any different types of events that may be going on, special events, city council meetings, brush clearings, et cetera, anything, whatever you like. And those are the primary benefits. And if we all work together, and most importantly, if the tenants succeed, and the, you know, the businesses, the small businesses succeed, we all succeed. So I'd love to take any questions if anybody has any.
Tell me what the letters and numbers are beneath the sign.
I think that's an older picture, but ours are seven zero zero one. They were put there just to indicate where the actual number on the sign would be. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Burton?
What is the luminance or the candle power of that sign?
You know, we, I don't have the exact number for you, but the-
Mayor, we are still in the public hearing. The questions should come at the next item with the action items with regards.
We'll do it on, he'll ask you in the next portion of it where it's open to the. So he can, yeah, we'll let him finish his presentation, close the meeting, then we open it back up. Yeah, and see, is there anybody else in the community here that has any other? Okay, so one at a time, Mr. White, Councilman, former Councilman White, would you please come up? And you get up, if you can get up to the mic, please, so that you'll be recorded in the actual session.
Greetings, Charles White, 211 Leisure Drive. Better? There you go. It's getting back to what David was mentioning, because you do have some residential streets over there. And then there's going to be a, the motel's being refurbished for so the lighting as far as maybe keeping homeowners awake at night or tenants, temporary tenants at the weapons facility, I don't know what else to call it. So that'd be my, my concern for them. Thank you.
Jimmy Hernandez, 112 Leisure, I have a question aside from the business park, and by the way, it's a beautiful sign. Is, are you going to advertise other advertisement for other businesses, like to sell the space?
So we will advertise the spaces available, but essentially it's there so that the businesses that use the park can advertise their businesses through the day. That's the purpose of it, the long-term purpose of the sign.
So my recommendation to the City Council is, I don't know, put some kind of provision in there if that, if he actually sells the space, that we should get a tax on it, we need to look at ways of generating revenue for the city. So, you know, if he's selling billboard space, there should be some sort of sales tax so the city can generate revenue. Other than that, I love the sign.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Any closing remarks, Mr. Fisher? Let me see if he's finished yet. Any closing remarks, Mr. Fisher?
You made that point clear, sorry that I didn't address that. We're not selling, advertising space on behalf of our tenants nor for other businesses in the area. That's not the spirit of the idea, it's just to advertise for the tenants in the center.
Mayor, may I ask that you speak into your microphone so you can be picked up for the recordings? Thank you.
Mr. Peralas, go ahead, sir.
I was just going to say that anytime any sale happens, even for space, we would, there would be a sales tax charge regardless, so.
Any rebuttal, any? No saving, Mr. Fisher?
That up to him, what he's going to do, he's going to advertise to the tenants. What I'm saying is that he would sell for any other business outside of the development, then there would have to be a sales tax included. So to, to, to your point, sir, then yes, there will be a sales tax included if the sale happens to another business.
Thank you for your clarification. Shall we move forward, Mr. Fisher, you done?
Yep, that's it.
Okay, let's move forward and go ahead and close that public hearing. The time is 7:21 PM. Now we will move into item number and go back here, my thing, my-
It's number five, sir.
Yeah, my, thank you, Mr. Science, Councilman Science. I need to move my agenda. So now we will go ahead and consider the city number five, the City Council will consider and take action on Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation regarding the requests submitted by Tamir Enterprises LTD to allow the installation of a 55-foot electric sign for property located at 7001 IH10. Mr. Lotta, you have the presentation. Mr. Lotta's name is on the-
I already did the presentation, Mayor, so-
You don't have any comments today?
No, no additional comments.
So council, what is, now you can, Mr. Burton, you wanted to talk about it. Go ahead and bring your issue up.
Well, when you're talking about visible from I-10, are you just referring to the overpass ramp, the flyover from I-10 to 410?
So after much driving up and down that highway to see where the best visibility was, we recognized that the only place we're really going to get visibility is for traffic that's coming north on I-10 from downtown. So that's primarily it. The, the other side of the sign is in fact not lit at all. That's just the sign, but it has no benefit to be, to be lit, because you can't see it, the actual, the girders on those overpasses cover that up. So really, the only visibility is from downtown.
So at best, they would be driving from, let's just chuckle, say downtown. And they, they drive by, they're still going to have to go all the way to Vance Jackson to patronize your business there.
To see it.
No, to, to, if they see the sign, they'd still have to go down to Vance Jackson, turn around, come back and come back up the access road.
Well, it's not a retail center, so it's not, the purpose of the sign and the businesses there are really not for retail at all. They're not, people are going to see the sign and say, oh, stop by, pass there. It's more a recognition of who's in the business park, they make a mental note of that and they support that business in one way or another later. It's not a stop of retail location.
And when we discussed this at the St. Gregory's meeting, I had mentioned that, you know, our previous administration or council had put a lot of money into a master plan requiring the monument signs. And I asked something about, was there going to be digital lighting on this sign? Is there a way we could see the sign again? Where it says business park, that's fixed, right? That's, that's not going to be moving or-
No, that's just, that's fixed.
Now leasing, is that going to be a motion picture or television type screen?
That's just the lights on which you advertise, yep, so it can scroll by, it can be set to last for a minute at a time. One can adjust those as one wants.
Is that going to run 24/7?
I have no idea at this point how long it's going to run, probably not 24/7, because in the middle of the night, there's no need for that. But just dependent on the mix of the tenants is how we'll run it. And unless the city says to us they want to run it for X amount of hours at a particular time, we'll be happy to accommodate that.
But where the star is, that's, that would be closer to Hannish Street.
That's right, that's right on the access road. Very close to the access road.
Closest, closest to the Hannish Street, not the Burl, that's above your business park, but-
That's correct, that's correct.
Yeah.
Burton, yeah.
And what's the distance away that that sign is going to be placed from, let's say, the closest home?
I can't give you an exact, but it looks about 120, 140 feet. And it's also very tall, so it's way above the point that you'll see light shining down on it. That light is going to shine towards the traffic, it's not going to shine-
That brings me back to the first question I asked you in the, in the other meeting, which was, what is the luminance or candle power of that sign?
You know, I don't have that, I'll be happy to get to you, but it's in compliance with everything that's not too bright. I mean, we've worked with a very, you know, compliant sign company, it's Keller Signs down the road here. So it's not going to be, you know, an obstruction to the residents who live in the area.
Mr. Laura, can you embellish on that? What is our, our lighting spillage?
Right, so that, I mean, we have an ordinance and that change in the ordinance still requires him to meet the electronic signs. So whatever's currently in there, I have to look it up to see exactly, but he has to meet that requirement, can't spill over based on our ordinance.
Yeah, we don't need anything in excess of what your ordinance calls.
Our ordinance is not changing, and his sign has to meet that, electronic signs, that's what number B was. That specifically says.
I mean, I can't make an informed decision if I don't know, because I looked for it as well in the, in the code of ordinance. I was trying to do it on my phone, because my laptop wouldn't work this past weekend.
Yeah, I'm looking it up right now.
And I know the City of San Antonio, I think, is 0.3 luminance or foot candle power?
There's, ours is no greater than 0.3. Foot candles over ambient light levels for the location in time shall employ light cutoff devices such as, but not limited to louvers in order to minimize light escaping above the horizontal plane, foot candle readings shall be measured at ground level at the distance shown below. And then there's different sources, 100 feet from the source, size of sign, near the 100 feet.
And, and he's saying possibly 40 feet from the sign is the first-
Yeah.
He said approximately 120 feet from the sign to the, to the closest residence.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood you, then, 120 feet?
40 feet from the access road.
Oh, okay.
From the Hannish, from the street below, it's, it's about-
It actually should read from, from the sign to the first, to the first home.
So the first home, it has to be 0.2 feet, because it has for residential. Here's residential property line. A maximum light emanation from an adjacent digital sign shall be 0.2 foot cameras. That's what we require today, and he's bound by that.
And then are we, is he required to dim it or at, after dark?
Yes, they automatically dim.
He's required to have a dimmer and a photocell to adjust the display intensity according to the natural ambient light conditions. That's part of our ordinance as well.
Okay, that's what I couldn't find in my, my book of ordinance.
Yeah, it's 153.12.16.
I, I don't have a foot in the fire, but I, I still continue to look out for the people in Hannish and Burl, just to to, to keep them happy. If they're okay with it, I mean, I don't have a problem with it. But if, if the light is spilling into their, it'll, both of those, their backs to their homes and generally your bedrooms are going to be in the backs of your homes. And I don't want any undue lighting into their, you know, to disturb them and stuff at night.
Yeah, Councilman Burton, that's a perfectly fair request. We're on the same sheet of music as you are, as relates to our neighbors. As I mentioned at the P and Z meeting, we want to be good corporate citizens, that's why we've stepped forward and made the advertising for the city available. That's why we've celebrated the Balcony Heights name. And so I think are all playing to the same end game here.
With all due respect, I do respect that, but you know, when, when things go through, after, after time passes, you know, things start to get not looked after. And who enforces that, by the way? Do you all have a candle power meter or?
If there's a complaint, we will, you know, get whatever equipment we need in our, we have a code officer, our compliance officer. So we will make sure that we go measure it.
Do we own one?
I'm not aware that we own one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Burton. Councilman Sellers, you have some questions?
Yes, sir. I would like to ask yeah. You've stated that that sign is not lit in the back.
Correct.
So as to Charles White's response to that, that luminance, that sign is only facing a highway, so the residents behind that sign should not be affected by the brightness of that sign. Okay. And my second question is the new tenants that are moving in, and I don't know if this is a premature question or not, who is responsible for informing the new tenants, because I'm sure they're going to want to put signs above their businesses, okay? And who's responsible for informing them as to our sign limitations and codes before, you know, it gets out of control and now we have to go back to planning and zoning or order of adjustments and appeals because they got a sign too big or too tall?
So no, good question. Each business has the same size sign, they may be made together by the same sign company, the same painted color, it'll be very uniform across the building. And if a tenant leaves, you just flip open the box, remove the sign, put a new name in. So the type, these, these businesses are not going to have all sorts, it's not going to look like a rainbow of signs and colors and dimensions, it'll be completely uniform. And that's our decision.
Yep, Mr. Sellers. Also, everybody individually, they'll get a sign permit. And we'll make sure that they meet, because again, like the proposed ordinance says, all other components of the sign ordinance that we have, they have to comply with.
I just want to make sure that they're aware of our codes before.
Correct, right, we'll work with the, continue to work with the developer and then if he does hire a property manager, we'll work with them as well.
Thank you, Mr. Sellers. So I think we've got a pretty good idea. I think Mr. Fisher has answered all the questions and I think everyone had their ability to speak. Do we have anybody else that's interested?
Yes, Mayor. Oh, go ahead.
You want to wave to Mr. Science? Councilman Science, right ahead.
No. Preferred Mr. Valverde.
Mr. Valverde, you have the floor.
Yes, Mr. Lotta, did I hear that this, this request went through the P and Z?
Yes, sir.
And it was approved?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I was looking at the, I was concerned about the light going into the residential area and in the packet, I looked at the location restrictions, which reads, no electronic sign shall be permitted within 150 feet of a residentially zoned property or property used for residential purposes. So by looking at the picture there, I think it's safe to say that this sign is nowhere within 150 feet from a residential area, is it?
I don't believe it is, we've stuck to the ordinance and as you can see, it's way up on the property.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, that's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Valverde, Councilman Science, you can proceed.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve or accept the Planning and Zonings Commission.
We have a motion on the floor.
Recommendation to approve.
By Councilman Science to approve, do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Councilman Lysia, second that motion, let's take a roll call. Councilman Valverde?
Hey, yay.
Councilman Science?
Yeah.
Councilman Lysia?
Yay.
Councilman Sellers?
Yay.
Councilman Burton? And we have a unanimous 5-0?
Thank, thank you very much, we appreciate all your support, look forward to being good neighbors and good tenants in your community. Thank you.
Hey, let's move right along. Does anyone need a break right now, a few minutes, anybody? We're good to go?
Recession.
Let's take a quick little recess. The time is, and we'll take maybe no more than five minutes recess. The time is 7:34 PM, Ms. Delia? And we'll give it about five minutes, we'll come right back, give everybody a stretch. Ladies and gentlemen, let's get back to business, it's going to be 7:43 PM. And we will call the meeting back in order. And where we left off, we have property managers sit wise to discuss issues pertaining to Wonderland of Americas. But Mr. Weiss, if you could just have the, will you please give me the courtesy of, one of our officers wants to make a few comments, he didn't sign up and he asked me if it's okay, and I'd be more than glad to let him just come forward and make a few statements that he wants to make.
Thank you, Mayor, so I want to let you know, I'm the patrol lieutenant for Balcony Heights Police Department. I know that we're talking about budgets, about cutting dispatch, you know, in certain areas and stuff. I, for one, I used to work for Bear County, the time span, just to get to a call, it's unreal. I can guarantee you that the response time that you have now, if we do get rid of dispatchers, it's not going to be the same. I know a lot of the people here in the residential area, we have a lot of seniors. A lot of those seniors count on our officers, my officers, to get there in a timely manner. People from WSS, Target, Burlington, all the major businesses, they count on our officers to catch criminals, people that commit crimes in our city. But I know if, if this change happens, it's not going to be the same. I can guarantee you, a lot of residents are going to be very upset with the call volume, the takes and everything, because with Bear County, there is an option where you have to press one, two, three or four just to get a response time. And all those officers, yes, we have officers in the city, but that response time would be more than 20 minutes, I can guarantee it. So just please, keep an eye on that, be cautious of it. So just please keep an eye on that, be cautious of it. I did want to bring up another issue uh, as far as budgets. I know back then we got rid of our warrant officer. That warrant officer did a lot of things for our city. And it was a shame to see him go uh, just because we got had to cut back on certain issues. So I just wanted to inform everybody, if we're trying to save money. I'm going to read you a number. It's probably going to put you all in shock. So from four one of two thousand twenty three all the way to August twenty second of twenty four. With my officers running traffic, staying proactive, staying busy. We have a total number of four thousand three hundred sixty one warrants, active warrants within the city. So with that amount that's owed to the city, all those active warrants. The city is actually missing out on one million six hundred thirty eight thousand four hundred and six dollars and eighty cents that could be going to the city. I believe if we reinstate the warrant officer position again, I believe those numbers will be good for the for the city. That's all I wanted to say, Mayor.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'm sorry that we weren't able to get it earlier, but thank you. Okay, Mr. Weiss, please proceed.
Mayor, if I may briefly.
Yes.
Before Mr. Weiss begins. So we have a uh, an agenda item to have a joint E D C and council meeting. And I think Mr. Weiss's presentation would be better presented there.
No, he's already made the presentation to the E D C. He's following up with the council now to inform you on it. So it's important that the council gets this information. For the joint. Forward. Let's move forward. We we need to move on.
But I think he made a motions. If we have a motion, we need to get a second.
No, he didn't make a motion.
Okay, okay.
Let's let's allow Mr. Weiss to speak even if um, I I don't see the reason why. Let's move forward, Mr. Weiss.
Mayor, yeah, council members. My name is Sid Weiss. I'm managing general partner of Wonderland of the Americas. Uh, I've got two issues to bring to the council members. Uh, number one, a prior council member has accused us of misrepresenting numbers that were presented to the E D C for their consideration. And I want to, I sent a letter to each of you outlining my position on those accusations. I don't want to have a discussion in in this public forum, but I want to invite you to meet with me personally. You can have the city uh, financial director, you can have a C P A, you can have any one of your choice. I'd be glad to meet with you one on one and have a discussion about those numbers. And that's all we're going to discuss at this time. The second issue I'd like to bring up is I'd like to compliment the prior council on the presentation that was been prepared called the twenty forty city plan. It's very well done. It's very comprehensive, but it tells a story that that we really don't want to hear. And I want to be part of the solution, not part of the problem. And I know I've been pointed out as part of the problem for the city. But I'm telling you that I'm going to also be part of the solution. Uh, I'm going to introduce you to a lady by the name of Patty Joyner. Uh, Patty Joyner is a past director of planning and development for the city of Houston. She is currently a a planner for the county of Harris County with the redevelopment of the old Astroworld property and the Astrodome. And she is a super qualified individual. Uh, Wonderland of the Americas has hired her to assist the uh, redevelopment, upgrade and replacement of some of these multifamily projects in the city as well as some of the single family projects. And we're going to show you a video of some things that were done in Houston that we believe can be applicable to Balcony's Heights. I think it will add sales tax dollars because it'll bring in more affluent people that'll spend money at the properties. I think it'll add a property tax dollars to the city because it's going to bring in upgraded quality products of residential housing. And I think you'll find her presentation very uh, informative and productive. So this is Patty Joyner.
We'll be going down to item number seven. It'll be a PowerPoint presentation to discuss general plan to move the city's twenty forty strategic plan. Mayor.
Good evening. My name is Patty Knudsen Joyner. My company is Knudsen, and I was the former planning director for the city of Houston uh, for eleven eleven years, but it was um, thirty five years ago. So it's been a while, but I do work for the city of Houston and for Harris County. And we do a lot of revitalization in the state of Texas. And um, Sid asked me to evaluate some of his ideas and his vision. And that's how I came across your twenty forty plan, and you should be congratulated. It's it's really well done, and it sets out a path for revitalization. But I also want to uh, start, and I'm going to keep this shorter than the presentation in the interest of time because you've had a lot of speakers. Um, but city planning is about seeing the future before you get there and deciding if you like it or not. So what your twenty forty vision plan does is it lays out what we look like today, what we could look like, and what are those strategies to help us achieve that? In Balcony Heights, and you could go to the next slide, please. Balcony Heights is just uniquely located. I mean, you have all these great uh, locational land uses, the medical center, downtown San Antonio, U S A Today, the military bases, um, everything that you're you're and you're on the freeway, two freeways, four ninety five and ten. And you're on Fred Road. You have access to so many places, and you could be literally the next um, West University, the next Heights, if you were from Harris County. Those are the neighborhoods that I used to live in. And um, and you've got that opportunity. Uh, we were driving around this afternoon, looking at the large lot development and everything and looking at the number of multifamily. And when the mayor was opening up his remarks, talking about a city of three hundred homes and twenty one hundred multifamily units. That's a lot of multifamily for a one square mile city. And so some of the things in your strategies is looking at your land use, looking at your regulations and how you how you would revitalize. But when changes happen in a city, they don't happen overnight. They've happened over decades. So one of the things that your twenty forty plan does outline is how to um, to evaluate what is your priorities and what you can go forward with. And I appreciate sitting through your council meeting tonight because every city in America has been where you are. And every city, New York, L A, you name them, big ones, small ones, where you have loss of property values or changes in costs. And then the value of the property hasn't kept up with the expenses. So when you talk about planning, we talk about revitalization efforts. We do have to take into consideration the residents that are here. And you could go to two more slides. I'm I'm talking ahead right there. So this is a dashboard and and the city secretary has this presentation for the members of council. And this is the same presentation we did to the E D C meeting last month. But you've got um, a fairly low um, um, it total income per population per family of four. And we can't change that overnight. We have to improve their housing stock. We have to work with their education. We have to work on creating better housing stock and better options. And you also have a relatively low um, home value in the city for those uh, three hundred houses. But you've got large lots and you've got the bones of really great old nineteen fifty style subdivision that could be part of a revitalization strategy for single family. And I know this slide is hard to read. But when you look at your demographic dashboard from the three mile to the five mile, then you start seeing the benefits of the San Antonio Medical Center. You start seeing the downtown. You start seeing housing values going up. So this is um, a little bit of a donut hole for that um, process. And it creates a strategy that we're going to have to work with the residents and work with the community on how to help revitalize and improve those properties so we can improve their value. Next slide. We also have um, a rather high poverty level as a city compared to Texas. And so we need to provide jobs and we need to provide things that help overcome that level of poverty. And that is with partnerships. That's our partnerships with the school district, partnerships with the community college, partnerships with industry, with jobs, with the the medical center, so we can help improve people's quality of life. Next slide. And this is just, uh, and we're going to breeze through these so we can get to the meat. But these are just your neighbors. You have beautiful facilities that are being built or under design throughout uh, within five miles of Balcony Heights. Next slide. Next slide. Now, this slide, uh, I encourage when you get a copy of this from the city secretary, your strategies and your vision around Balcony Heights and what could happen with Wonderland of America is also something that isn't going to happen overnight. It didn't decline overnight. It's not going to recover overnight, but we have to work on it in stages. And next slide. These are this next two pages of next two slides are just two pages from HUD where we could get assistance in working with C D B G. And somebody just afternoon was talking about um, the C D B G money and the million dollars and the ten percent match. There there are literally dozens and dozens and dozens of programs within HUD. And some are direct grants, some do require a match. But we should be having that partnership. Your our Texas HUD office is in Fort Worth. And um, that should be part of the partnership that you do as city council with your new city manager coming in is let's talk about where we can get those federal dollars to help us and um, talk to our legislative representatives as well as our federal representatives to see what we could do. And what we talked about with the E D C is um, and I I studied under Henry Cisneros and Ephraim Garcia. Ephraim was your E D C director for San Antonio when I was at the city of Houston. And when Kathy Whitmire got hired, she hired Ephraim Garcia to be the planning director. So I got to work with Henry and of course, he introduced me um, to all of the redevelopment strategy people of San Antonio back in the eighties. And and there is just a plethora of programs that we could look at for the city of Balcony Heights. But you've got the you've got the heavy lift done. Your twenty forty plan tees you up for lots of grants, lots of grants at the state level and the federal level. So as you're talking about your job descriptions for your city manager and priorities for your budget, I would highly suggest that you uh, include asking the the incoming city manager for help with grants and budgets and how to do go after that money. And then how we can tailor the money uh, both at the state of Texas level, Bear County level and or the federal level. Because those programs are there to help us, help cities like Balcony Heights. Next slide. Uh, this is just the second page of the grants, next slides. So this is actually your plan, actually, and this is your purpose and need statement. And this is the very most important part of what you're doing because this three pages tees up what you're going to be eligible for 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 federal money and state money. Because virtually every program requires you to have a plan, a current plan. And this is as current as it can get. It was last year, plus the statement in need of what is the vision for the city of Balcony Heights. Next slide. So one of the things that um, as we were driving around, you only have about twenty percent uh, homeownership in the city as compared to about sixty three percent homeownership in the state of Texas. Now, not everybody wants to be a homeowner either. But part of the homeownership change is that three hundred versus twenty one hundred uh, multifamily unit. So you've got a lot of stock in multifamily. You also have very large lots that uh, might require you to look at your zoning ordinance and look at your minimum lot size and where you've got the uh, ability to rezone residential areas that are single family but are closer to. And I was trying to think of the name of the road Denise. We were residents returning into businesses. Still crest. Um, there might be change in your zoning designation so that you can have higher density housing, more like patio homes, which would be eight units to the acre. And that way they could be appealed to young people who want to live and work at the medical center, but maybe can't afford to live over at the medical center properties. So we could become that housing option. And we could look at rezoning some of our la- our single family lots that are large lots that are already transitioning to commercial to a mixed use um, townhome type density that would then be attractive, I think, to people that are in that, you know, twenty to forty year old um, census tract cohort. Next slide. And then this just also compares what's happening uh, kind of, and this came out of your twenty forty plan in terms of rents, what's happening with household size. A lot of the young people would rather rent a townhome than own a townhome because they like to lock and leave. They like to travel. They're not, they don't have that buy a house uh, uh, desire. But it is something that um, we we should be fixing the the vision or your goals and your strategies to what what kind of densities your residents would want to support. Not everything has to be uh, eight units to the acre. You're probably close to about five units to the acre in some of your small lot. And then even two and three units to the acre on those large lots. So it's it's an opportunity. Next slide. And then also, this shows you how we compare to Alamo Heights, um, Castle Hills, Leon Valley. And again, you want to know, just like you were talking about what's happening with fire departments and firefighter salaries in the surrounding region. You also want to know what's happening in your surrounding communities and what's happening with that data and that income. Um, but again, this didn't happen overnight, and it's not going to. Your revitalization strategies will take time. They won't happen, you know. And it might even be ten years, ten or fifteen years before you start to see the benefit of revitalization. Next slide. Um, this is your community profile strategy. It's really well written. It talks about air quality, talks about transit, talks about providing housing, private sector housing, meeting, improving median income, and taking steps to make Balcony Heights attractive to young professionals and families. So um, and I what I did want to ask is was this adopted, this plan adopted by the city council? Okay, good, good. Next slide. This is right out of your plan as well, and this is the cookbook. This is the recipe on what the city council and your planning commission and your E D C will look at to just to try to establish what should we do first? Because not everything can be done first. And one of the things I was just going to share is on economic incentives. You should make the developers raise the income of their property value and pay themselves back. You don't have to write checks for economic incentives. You should be able to create economic policies where they are going to agree to create certain improvements. Um, let's say uh, residential improvements. And one of the things that we did in Houston is we literally took high density residential, remodeled it, revitalized it, and created new units. And we created uh, a situation where you could have micro units for this for the single family, one person living in a maybe a five hundred square foot apartment to a four bedroom for the for the people with the families that have multi multiple kids or multiple generations of families living together, parents moving in with their kids, kids moving in with their parents. So this is your recipe on how you can do some of those revitalization strategies and what could be first. And um, then again, this came right out of out of your plan. So everything that we want to do for grant rotting, you've you've taken the first big leap. And then the next slides are to give you some examples of what happens when you revitalize. These were old lots. They were probably um, hundred by two hundred foot lots. They were replatted. They were single family lots. They were replatted to do about six to eight units per acre. These happen to be ownership. And they were created with private streets. Now, I haven't looked into your development regulations to see if you allow private streets or um, private drives. But those are the kinds of things that help create the density and help financially pencil on projects. The other thing that the planning department did is they require extensive landscaping when you do the replats to make sure that they're beautiful and the areas um, have the right um, buffers from other land uses and dedicated driveways so that you have one way in and one way out. And this only has about six units behind the two on the front. Next slide. This is another example. This is about another six to eight units to the acre. This was a bigger lot. And this one happened, Houston allows you to have um, a gated community for private streets. Again, you'd have to have the right street dedications to gate them if you wanted to gate them, but not every city wants to have gated communities. Next slide. This is off of Wesleyan, and this is a very old subdivision compared to some of the new ones. But this one was done as patio homes, and these are all attached wall. And these are all attached wall. And then they all share a common courtyard. And it's kind of an English design. But it's, it gives you examples of what the architecture could look like for revitalization that allows you to have higher density. And these probably were maybe, maybe 200,000 when they were built. And now they're 600,000 and 700,000 dollars. So they do increase in value over time. Next slide. Another example of the large lot subdivisions that have been replatted. And I'm not saying this is the architecture for Balcones Heights. But it's just an example of how these were replatted over time and built. And these are up on Augusta and Bering in Houston, between San Felipe and Westheimer. Next slide. And again, these were again about eight to six units to the acre. Just to give you an idea of how you can do townhomes without changing your single family status, they would just be in feet simple. The next slide. And of course, what makes a good community is landscaping, walkability sidewalks, access to Via, access to Fred Road, bikes, you know, thinking about young people moving in, making sure that you could have shared paths. The slide on the right with the orange barrel, that's a shared path that allows you to have both walking and biking. Next slide. And again, more examples of just street treatments. And I like that you have your PUD process because you don't know every street face is going to look like. Some streets may be a 50 foot right of way, some streets may be a 60 foot right of way. So you want to use your PUD, PUD process to help determine what your sidewalk configuration and your street tree development might look like. But it gives you those choices depending on the right of way that you're building off. Next slide. These are again examples of street, uh, street treatments, landscaping, sidewalk that were put in. And they, we are blessed to be, actually in Harris County, we get 50 inches of rain. You probably don't get quite as much rain as Harris County does. But you can establish these trees with about a four to five year watering contract. And then they would, then you could do what they call throw down irrigation that then allows it to be irrigated from the rainwater that comes in annually. But it's another idea of when you do revitalization, you, you want to think of those beautification elements that make up the streetscape. Next slide. And of course, Wonderland is something that is a centerpiece here. And when Sid bought it and was able to reinvent it and bring in the medical, the veteran, the clinics that serve our community, that was ahead of its time. Now people are doing that all over the country. They're trying to convert their malls into something other than retail. Amazon has taught us that you can shop from your, your couch. And so you don't, you have to attract people to malls. And so what Sid's tried to do and his partners have tried to do is they put the medical uses in there. Then they've got the, the arcade, the skating rink, and the other kid, you know, the family uses that makes it an attraction for families. And so we've looked at this mall. There's actually the ability to build at least two, possibly three residential developments here, apartments. But they would be served by, by Via. They would be on the mall. Then they would could walk, they could walk to the mall. They could walk to shopping. They could walk to the clinic. So continuing to explore the revitalization strategies for the mall is important because that's what is, one of the anchors for the city of Balcones Heights. And we'd like to offer that help to you to work on what are those strategies that you've already adopted in your plan? And what are those things that you want to, you want done first? Because we can't do it all at one time. But there, whatever the priorities, I would like to work with the council and the EDC on achieving those things. Now I'm available for questions.
Very, very nice presentation. Very interesting. Is this connected with the Wonderland Mall? Is this like a combined package?
There's no connection. The only thing that I want to emphasize is that Patty's Services costs the city nothing. My involvement will cost the city nothing. I'm not going to get a fee from some developer to go out and do residential. She's not going to do that. She's on a fee structure that Wonderland is paying for. The beneficiary will be the city.
Okay. And maybe it's not the right venue to, to discuss it. But the benefits from the Wonderland of the America have not flourished. So on my part, I'd be very reluctant to move forward with anything.
We're not asking anybody to move forward.
No, I, I understand that, but just for, for future, for future knowledge.
I, I will clarify something to you that, that will come to pass. The investment that this EDC made and the city made in Wonderland Americas will be a profitable investment. What's not happening is the orderly distributions that were estimated.
Right. And, and maybe we'll discuss this.
Decision that was made, a great decision, and it will work out long term.
Absolutely. And I'm willing to entertain and really move forward with this project once we start seeing the, the revenue coming in. So if, if it takes five years or 10 years, well, I'm very much on board. But once we start seeing the return coming forward, I'd.
This has nothing to do with the city and the standpoint of monies or commitments. This is just an effort that we're going to be the catalyst, hopefully, to get the residential multifamily and single family redeveloped for the benefit of the city. We're not going to benefit other than Patty's going to get a fee.
Okay. Martin, thank you.
And if I may help Mr. Lysia a little bit understand better, the way the economic development sectors work and with cities and the, I'm, I'm speaking into it. You can hear it.
It's very difficult to hear you on the recording. That's why I asked you to actually speak into the microphone.
You can hear me. I have both of them on, Mr. Johnson. Thank you very much. I appreciate your attention to that. Thank you. So the way it works with economic development is that it's a partnership.
And, 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 and I know. I just want you to make sure before we get into a discussion, I want you to understand that I don't need to be educated. As the way you've done in the past, try and belittle and try and take everybody to where they understand. Thank you.
You're out of order. Please, let's conduct ourselves in a professional manner.
That's why I asked.
I'm just trying to offer you a little help.
Okay, go ahead.
So please, let's not get in for a tip.
And I've asked you that I know about economic development. I've taken the course.
Mr. Lysia, you're out of order, sir. Don't have me remove you from these premises. Okay? Please, I'm begging you. I'm pleading with you. Do not do this. All right? All I'm asking, and I'm respectfully trying to address you in a, in a proper manner, in a professional manner, that I'm just trying to explain to you how economic development works. And you have to understand, he's not proposing anything other than what's on our strategic plan. That's it. And he's paying out of his pocket to bring this professional to us in which I had already pre-planned, without even speaking to him about this, pre-planned by talking to you, everyone here, about proposing, bringing in grants to the city to help us finance. Because I already foresaw the financial difficulties we were going to be in. Okay? So I said, let's propose going to grants. I propose you going to school to educate yourself on commercial real estate investing, specifically a mall investment, because that's what we're involved in. And then I specifically said, let's try and see if we can get a contract urban developer to come in. Well, what Mr. Weiss is doing graciously, because he cares about our city, cares of the situation that we're in, in our mall. And he wants to be a proactive contributor to our city. So there is a major reset button that has been set. And there is a pivotal moment in our city that we must grasp this moment and move forward to revitalization of our community to save all these jobs that we have, to save the, the city from its heartaches that we're going with right now. So all he's asking was for your attention to listen to these proposals that we have. Now, this Patricia is an excellent professional. She's currently doing some very big deals with the city of Houston involving, I think, the, what is it? The, what is that, that organization that you're working on?
Well, Harris County, the Harris County, Ters 24?
Right.
It's 8,000 acres.
They're involved in very major issues and deals that are promoting other cities. These people have come and be gracious enough to be here to give us this information. So they're not asking you to make a decision.
Right.
They're informing you so that later you can make an educated, informed decision to move our city forward. And then most importantly, one of the most difficult parts that we're going to have to do is not only implement our own 2025 and 2028 future plan that we have, we must maintain continuity regardless of who is in office, regardless if I'm here, you're here, anybody. But the continuity of that plan needs to move forward. And the way it'll move forward is that we focus on the short term and the long term goals. This is part of the short term goal. Okay, that's all it is. It's a short term goal with ideas to show you where we can improve our city to start making it more attractive, to start looking at our zoning laws, how we can more, we can enforce them more to get the housing imprint changed in our community from these apartments that need tremendous amount of work and make them viable to bring in a workforce from like the medical center area, other areas and part of San Antonio. And that in itself begins the restructuring of our city in conjunction with the efforts that we're taking with the mall to engage in that particular, which you're concerned about, to make it more productive for all of us. And the only other, only other strategy after that is an exit strategy.
Right.
That's all you have. You have two options, to stay in or stay out.
And, and going back to that, I, I like it. I, I had a good idea of the way that, that was going. And, and just to make sure that we're on the same page, the service that you're providing will be at however you're going to work it out. However, it will be going out as an RFP? Or are we going to go straight with one vendor to what, to where we're going? Which, which I, I see where we're going, but I want to make sure that we give everybody an opportunity.
We're not even close to, to that point.
Right, but I want to make sure.
You'll recall, this report, which is about this thick, is dated September 23.
Right.
Right.
Well, nine months later, 10 months later, what's happened?
Still waiting like on other things.
So that's, that's what we're going to try to do. Try to be the catalyst to bring to the council certain opportunities. The council makes the decision is whatever they want to do, and we'll go from there.
Okay. And, and that's.
That's all we're trying to do.
And, and Mayor, and like I say, I want to make sure that if we're going to get a service from a vendor, that it's an opportunity for all vendors of that caliber.
Yeah. And all due respect, I understand you're a little confused. That's okay. We're trying to explain.
And, and again, you're going back to trying to belittle. It's not that I don't understand. It's that I want to make. Okay, so we'll, we'll leave it at that. And if that's the one makes you feel good, we'll move forward.
Thank you.
Okay, well, then we will move forward now. And just trying to help a little bit here, just understand what we're trying to do. And so, Mr. Weiss, and I would like to thank you and Ms. Nutson for your time to be here, Ms. Joyner, very much. So this is a tremendous opportunity for the city to take something that we can, in our own plan that we have to move forward. So I look forward, EDC is 100% behind this. They were very receptive to it. And I think that this is a proper and first good step to move forward.
Want the council to, to have some benefit of enthusiasm that we have.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Councilman Burton?
Will this also be given in the EDC slash city council?
It was already been presented in the last EDC meeting. They made this presentation.
But a joint, a joint council and EDC.
I don't know if they will be able to make it in their schedules. But they, they're, what Mr. Burton is asking is will you make this re-presentation again that you've already given to the EDC in our last meeting? On the joint meeting between the city council and the EDC, will you be able to make this same presentation?
There's no plan, there's no plan to do that. If invited, we'll certainly consider. That's what the city and the, and the council wants.
But both parties have been informed, the EDC and the city council right now.
The, the goal is to, is to increase the viability of the city.
Yes, sir.
The city's been dead on, on its feet in the last few years. And it needs a housing stock that's going to improve the multifamily, the single family. And if you, if you say, well, why is Sid Weiss doing that? Well, I've got a big investment in, in Wonderland Americas. If Balcones City does well, the Wonderland Americas will do well. So that's, that's where I benefit.
So just convey if we want him there and see what happens. Mr. Sellers?
I wanted to know if there's a, a pamphlet on that presentation.
A PowerPoint? Yeah, I'm sure they can make that available to you. I think Delia.
Have it. I could send it to you.
I would like to have it. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
To everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Okay, so that's the PowerPoint. Let's move on over to number eight. We have a person that signed up to speak about number eight. Let's move that one first. And Nada White, am I pronouncing correctly, Ms. White? So you're going to be making the PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. This is part of the.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Rodriguez, council, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Nada White, and I am with the Sociedad Cultural Hispanoamericana in San Antonio, Texas. This organization was created back in 2015 by four countries. That was Argentina, Colombia, Peru, and Chile. And it was registered by the state of Texas in, in 2016. Our mission is to promote the rich diversity of Latin American Hispanic cultures through cultural and educational events. Slide next, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Okay. Next, next. Okay, now I'm going into the vision. Thank you. Our vision is to build, preserve, and celebrate the Latin American culture by uniting different cultures. So we've had countries here that there's a large community of them, and they were not united. And so we've helped them to obtain the 501(c)(3) and, you know, that sort of thing, so they can be united and represent their, their, their countries. Next. This slide shows you all of the 15 countries that are part of the Sociedad Cultural Hispanoamericana. I'm not going to read it to you, but these are the countries that, that pertain to this, to this organization. Our board of directors, thank you. Our board of directors is Mr. Andres Urbano, who's here. Our vice president is Lilia Suen. Our secretary is Leonard Houston. And our treasurer is Marie Carmen, which she's in Peru right now. And I am the public relations director. And we also have today Gustavo Rodriguez with us. So shortly after creation, in 2017, we launched our first Hispanic Trail Cultural Festival in Balcones Heights, thanks to your sponsorship and private sponsorships. As you can see, we've had different events in, in all these years, in five years that, that we've been celebrating and promoting, I mean, putting on events. And this is 2017, 18, 19. And we do performance for, chloric performance for different groups, the immigration, the Forsen Houston, Lackland, you know, Wells Fargo, et cetera, et cetera. This usually all happened during the Hispanic Month Celebration, which is from September 15th to October 15th every year. Next. This is just a little bit more of the, of the events that we, that we put on. And as you can see, the Hispanic Trail Cultural Festival has been in Balcones Heights for the last past year. This would be our sixth year conducting or putting, promoting this, this particular festival. Next. Now I'm going to show you some slides on the festival that is, is held right here at the Wonderland of the America. And we have, you know, members in the community from all 15 countries that come to celebrate with us. Different, next, different, different countries, their, their cultural, the folklore. Chile, Argentina, Colombia, Panama, you know, next. 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 There. Last year, in 2024, the, we gave out four scholarships to youths that are going to college or in college. And we had the county judge Sakai, Peter Sakai, and our former Balcones Heights mayor, Susan De Leong, who presented the scholarship to the four recipients that we gave scholarships to. Next. In, in, in addition to the festival, we do cultural presentations or, you know, conferences about different things. In 2023, we did this one that's called Kinestomus, Who Are We? And then we talk about the Latin community and how we got. And then we talk about the Latin community and, and how we got started and that type of thing. Next. This is another, this is the one we had in twenty twenty-four, eh, at the UNAM. And this year it was about La Guitarra y La Cumbia, so the guitar and, and the, and cumbia. Next. Chassa promotes, um, talented students. And we had, we hosted, uh, Katie's High School String Orchestra Concert here in twenty twenty-three. Next. And in twenty twenty-four, we also had a concert with the Katie's High School students, um, composed of thirty-four graduated students that came to San Antonio to present. Next. Our President, um, Andres Urbano, has taken upon himself to participate in international conferences. He's gone to Spain, he's gone to Peru, Chile, Argentina, at his own expense to promote the festival. And also, at the same time, he's promoting Balcones Heights internationally. This slide shows, uh, this is Queen Sofia, and, um, and this was in Houston where they had the debut of the Academy of History of Spain's Portal of Hispanic History in Houston, Texas. These are showing, um, recognition to the Brigadier General Hernando Garzón, and US Army South. Also with the Yafa, which is a part of Lackland Air Force Base Training Center. Hmm, and, um, Fort Sam Houston, the US Citizenship, I mean, US, uh, Citizen and Immigration Services. Hmm, Heritage Month. So all these organizations have, they have, they celebrate the Hispanic culture, and so they ask us, they reach us to us to go and, and do all for chloric acts and, and what have you. This slide shows you the budget, how much it costs actually, the expenditures to put on the, the festival. Um, and that, again, you know, you can see, you know, we broke it down so that you can see where the money is spent. If you crunch these numbers, you'll see that a good portion of, of, of your sponsorship that you've been gracefully giving us, you know, throughout the years, um, stays right here in Balcones Heights to produce this festival. And we infuse the money back into, right back into your economy. Next. So, why sponsor our festival? This festival this year is scheduled for October thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, from one to eight PM at the Wonderland of the Americas. Um, Mr. List, Listia? Yeah, yeah, he was there last year also with Mayor, um, De Leong, uh, at our ceremony. And, um, and he, he saw the amount of people that, that attends this festival. It's, again, the fifteen countries, and it's a celebration of rich heritage, captivating music, all chloric dances, and the cuisine, because each country has their own, they sell the food of their country. And so people come out and, and you can, you can taste the different type of food and celebrate the culture of, um, of all these countries. It also promotes women, minority business vendors, arts and craft, free community services, and the Wonderland of the America businesses. Next. We're here. Here are several, uh, compelling reasons to continue being our sponsor. Um, we have branded this event with the identity of Balcones Heights. Everybody knows that, you know, the Hispanic Trail Cultural Festival is held here at Balcones Heights since it started, five years. So this will be our six years having this event here. And, um, we've attracted people, visitors from San Antonio, Austin, Dallas, Houston, Mexico, Honduras, and beyond. I mean, there are people coming in from all over the place, and they come to see and participate with us in the festival. The Balcones Heights will be prominently featured across social media platforms, flyers, radio, and TV, ensuring your brand reaches a broad audience through multiple channels. In other words, we go before, the TV stations ask us to go, and you know, we take a, a small sample of what the, the whole event is. And at all times, we are always promoting Balcones Heights. So in other words, Balcones Heights is Hispanic Trail Cultural Festival, and Hispanic Trails Cultural Festival is Balcones Heights. So today we're asking, we respectfully asking for your sponsorship of six thousand dollars to, to be able to have this event again for the six years in Balcones Heights. With that, I want to thank you for having us and for, um, listening to us.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Now I'll open it up for discussion with the City Council on this item that is being discussed. Would like to go first. Councilman Burton?
So our investment in this is about fourteen thousand?
No, sir. Uh, we're asking you for six thousand dollars.
Okay.
Yeah, that's your investment. And of that, we return about three thousand dollars back in fees and, and everything is that we have to pay Balcones Heights.
Thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the council? Councilman Sellers?
It says, uh, discussion and action to consider providing continued hot funds. The word continue, does that mean we've provided funds to you before?
Yes, sir.
In the past?
The past five years, yes, sir.
I don't recall hearing anything about you being at Wonderland Ball.
Oh, my goodness, yes.
But then again.
Yes.
At the Jazz Festival for the first time in my life this year.
Oh, my goodness. And that one was like fifteen years that they've been having it there.
Any other comments?
I, I, uh, I'd like to make the motion that we do the sponsorship as, as budgeted. The past years, I think we, we've, uh, budgeted five thousand dollars, and if that's what the number is, then I'd like to make the motion that we continue that. Right, that's, that's what we've asked for, but I think what we've budgeted in our budget, I think it's five thousand dollars. Whatever, whatever our budgeted item is.
Mr. Lassia? There, there are reasoning behind the budget?
Mayor?
The five thousand, yes.
Yeah, in this current year budget that we're proposing, it's four thousand dollars. And, and what we're really constrained by is not necessarily the amount, but how much of the hot fund that we can contribute to the arts. As you know, Mr. Garza, we can only do fifteen percent of that.
I'm sorry, rephrase that, because I could not understand what you're saying.
Yeah, they, our budget this year has four thousand dollars budgeted for this. Um, primarily because of what legally we can spend the hot funds for. Fifteen percent of the hot funds revenue can be spent for the arts, and a big, the biggest chunk of that is taken up, of course, by the Jazz Festival. Uh, nevertheless, we still have four thousand dollars budgeted, uh, in the hot fund alone, uh, for this event. Now, if you want to do it other places, then that's a budget discussion.
For this event or for any event in that fact? You have four thousand total budget? And, and yeah, clarify that for me so I understand.
And the majority was used for the Jazz Festival, and we've got, we've got budgeted four thousand for this particular, um, venue.
From previous financing? And so there is no consideration to, with cost of living and the cost of goods and everything like that, to give them a little bit more? Um, out of that, I think when, um, I was looking at the information that you had, it seems that we're giving like three thousand dollars. You, you, your organization is giving approximately three thousand dollars back in the form of hiring police officers and fire department personnel, right?
That's correct.
Do the in-service while you're there?
Yes.
And then you got another thousand, well, it's between that and another fifteen hundred that goes to the permits. So you're only, if out of the, if you, you're looking at the six thousand, then you're only looking at originally what you're giving right now, what they're considering giving you, which is four thousand. So with the six thousand, you're really getting four thousand with what you're giving back to the city, which you're infusing back into the city.
Mayor, if I may, that, that, that money's not going back into our general fund or back into our hot fund. But we are restricted by law how much money we can spend on the arts out of our hotel occupancy taxes. So, I don't, I don't know exactly what that number is, but the vast majority of that goes to the Jazz Festival. And I think we have four thousand dollars of that remaining fifteen percent that is budgeted for this.
So there's no other funds, funds available other than the four thousand that was budgeted, correct?
We would have, it would have to come out of an unbudgeted expense, unfunded expense, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Morales?
Yeah, so to clarify, there's only four thousand available for this under the hot tax fund. But you certainly have general fund money that you could, you could put into this to, to add the additional two thousand, if those were the wishes of the council. So it, it, you're limited hot tax, but you got other resources available.
And the only problem is under the general fund, um, what are the fallacies of using that fund, considering our, our budget deficit?
Those are the fallacies of budget deficit, so.
Okay, that's what I thought. So yeah, that's not a feasible item right now. Unfortunately, you hit us on a time that it's, you know, the budget strain. Now, um, perhaps in the next future, you could look into, and the council could look into possibly increasing that funding, decreasing it from the Jazz Fest, and throwing a little bit more money out for different events. Because there are going to be other events that are going to be happening in the community. I'm sure that we're going to get approached with. These are not normal operating funds. These are out of the hotel motel tax ones, as I explained to you when we spoke. So, right now the council's limited to the four thousand that they can allocate for you. So if you're willing to accept that, that's what the council is offering you right now.
May I make?
Sure.
A suggestion, because in the past, they have, the city of Balcones Heights has waived the food and business permits. So, yes, we would gladly accept the four thousand, but can you waive also the food and, and business permits? That's another, you know, that's twelve hundred dollars that, that this year we have to pay, that we haven't paid in the past. Is there?
I, I would say that's a possibility.
Would you like, anyone like to suggest an amendment to Councilman Science?
It was Councilman Lassia's.
I mean, Councilman Lassia's, uh, motion? Would anyone like to offer amendment to that?
I would offer an amendment that we waived the fees.
Okay, with Mr. Lassia's four thousand dollars?
Exactly.
So that's the amendment first, and then we need to consider now Mr. Sellers' amendment, is that correct?
I'm out. I want to make sure that we're getting this right. No.
No, that's, so we need to get a second for that.
Yeah.
We need to withdraw.
Let's get a, uh, you want to withdraw or you want to keep it?
Uh, well, I want to make sure that we don't open up ourselves to a bigger problem down the road. Because if we do the exception here, we're gonna have to do it tomorrow, we're gonna have to do it the next day, and we're gonna defeat the purpose of implementing our fee rate. I want to make sure that, that we don't fall into that trap, and then we commit that error, and then we're doing it for every organization that's me coming forward. So, I would love to, but I think right now it's not conducive, and it's not something that we're in a position to do. At least I'm not in a, in a position to accept reducing the fees, because I'm afraid of the repercussions that could come afterwards. But I'm happy with leaving my recommendation of the four thousand dollars. Now, since Mayor, you have the option of getting money from other funds, that would be the other option.
Yeah. No, I think that, um, that, uh, we'll move with the motion that you have on the floor right now, and let's get a second to that. Do we have a second to Mr. Lassia's motion on a four thousand dollar investment from the hot funds into this organization's activities?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second by Councilman Science. It will open up for discussion. Now we have Mr. Mr. Councilman Sellers that has offered a secondary motion with an amendment. The amendment is to waive the, um, fees, um, and they're going to be specific to the food and beverage, is that correct? Okay, so specific to the food and beverage, yes, Mr.?
So make sure it's, it's a permit fees, because there's inspection fees that, that the city's liable for. So, we don't want the city to pay for inspection fees. Uh, so the permit fee itself is one thing. The inspection is something different that is, that is automatically, you know, paid by the, the user. So just make sure you say permit fee.
So are we clear on the permit fee?
Yes.
Is that what you're looking for? Okay.
I will say.
Councilman, excuse me, just one second. Uh, Councilman Sellers now has made an amendment to the motion to waive.
Waive the permit fees, and I stand by that.
With four thousand dollars.
Stand by that.
Do we have a second to Councilman Sellers' motion on the floor?
If not, if, you know.
That's okay. You, you're pervy to, to.
May, may I say something to that amendment?
Yes, Mr.?
So, any reduction in permit fees would be a reduction to our general fund fees. So it would be the same, taking out of one hand, out of the other. So, if we don't collect those permit fees, it's the same thing as just giving her twelve hundred dollars.
Once a year thing, you know, and it's, it's.
But, but to the.
Bring in people here in Balcony Heights.
Right, but to Mr. Lassia's point, the next vendor is going to be wa- wanting permit fees waived as well, and then we've gone down.
Do we have a second to his motion? Anyone in the council have a second to his motion? Valant Effort, Councilman Sellers? Well noted. Unfortunately, you don't have a second to your motion, so the motion dies. Let's move on with the motion that we have now on the floor, the Councilman Lassia's original motion. Let's call it all in favor. Okay, and we'll take a roll vote. Councilman Valverde?
Any discussions?
Do we have any discussions above, above, beyond what we just discussed? Just in case, Councilman Burton, thank you. Go ahead, sir.
I would like to suggest possibly, uh, a business donor here. You know, someone who's got a business here to, to help with this, to, to keep this, this is, I think this is a good thing. I, I, I think it, it brings visibility to the mall. We want to help the mall. And, uh, maybe we could find within our business alliance, someone that, that could possibly, you know, be a sponsor. Be a, be a noted sponsor on, on the signage. But, you know, I, I agree with Mr. Lassia and, and Mr. Science that, you know, the budget is the budget, and we're sitting here squawking for dispatch and all this other stuff. And, uh, I, I appreciate their suggestions, but there's, there's gotta be a way we can make this work. And, and, uh, I appreciate Mr. Morales's suggestion too about the, uh, the, the fees. But there's gotta, there, there's gotta be someone that can step up in increments, or two businesses, or three businesses. We, we've got it, we've got some very high-profile businesses that could, even the hospital, uh, that could, that could kind of pitch in for this to, to make, make it happen.
Well noted, Councilman Burton. So, we have a motion on the floor, and we already called for the vote. Now let's go with a roll call. Councilman Valverde?
Yay.
Councilman Science?
Yay.
Councilman Lassia?
Yay.
Councilman Sellers? Two, four, four thousand. Yay, Councilman Burton?
Yay.
We have a unanimous vote, five, to pass the motion for a four thousand donation to your, uh, organization for the sponsorship of your event. Thank you very much for coming to see us. Maybe next year it might be more profitable for us, and we might be able to have those funds available to you later.
We'd be praying for that. Thank you so much for, for having us.
My part, as a mayor, anything I can do for you, please let me know. I will be there to support you. Anything you need, I'll be there.
Thank you, thank you, uh, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmen. We appreciate it.
Um, Madeline, Ms. Slade, may you come up, please?
Hi.
Have a few words?
Madeline Slade, also resident. Um, I would like to, uh, offer you the two thousand dollars from Slade Architecture.
Bravo, well done, Mad- Ms. Slade. Well done. Thank you so much, Ms. Slade, for helping. Well done. To be commended. Okay, so, there we have very, very nice thing and gesture that one of our citizens has done. So, um, we will now move over to the, uh, let's see, that was item number eight. By that action, I just got thrown off a little bit. Uh, for hot funds, eight, we were just finished, we're going to number nine. The council will hold a public hearing to receive public comments regarding the adoption of the City of Balcones Heights Property Tax Abatement Guidelines and Criteria. Does anyone want to take a quick little break again before we get into this, we move forward? Okay, the time is eight forty-four PM. Let's move into the public hearing. Okay, so we will have a public hearing. Um, Mr. Morales, who is going to be making the presentation? Uh, our city attorney, Frank?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mayor, under the Texas Tax, Tax Code, Chapter three twelve, it allows municipalities across the state to offer tax abatements or incentives to try to attract businesses to come into town. Um, in order to be able to offer tax abatements, uh, the city must adopt guidelines as to what types of businesses would be qualified to receive such tax abatements. Um, behind, um, tab, uh, I guess item ten, you see the tax, proposed tax abatement ordinance. Um, that is proposed, uh, Um, that is proposed, uh, for the city. Just because you adopt guidelines does not mean the council has to grant abatements. Someone could come in with a proposed business that the council does not want coming into, into Balcony Sites. They might meet some of the criteria, but it is still totally discretionary as to whether the council ever would grant a tax abatement. So some of the examples with regards is we're looking, the council specifically identifying the locations for tax abatements only in the commercial areas. There will be no tax abatements offered for residential, either multifamily or single family. It is only, uh, in the commercial, uh, areas. Um, also, uh, depending on the amount of investment. Um, at minimum, in order to get even any type of investment, there has to be a hundred thousand dollars to five hundred thousand dollar investment. And that's the lowest level where they would receive only abatement of fifty percent and only up to two years. It goes all the way to if they put in an investment over five million dollars, then they can receive an abatement of a hundred percent, but no more than five years. Cities actually have authority to grant abatements for up to ten years. Your policy, per the direction that I've received from staff, did not want to see any abatement greater than five years. But again, it goes down the level depending on the number of investment, will depend on the amount of abatement the city can give. If the city were to try to, uh, uh, if the city wanted to offer an abatement, the individual could also go to the county or any other entity that does, uh, taxes to receive an abatement. The only ones that cannot offer abatements per law are the school districts. Anyone else, the county could be involved or any other entity could, that offer, that does ad valorem tax could also provide investments. So that's the basic purpose of, of, of the abatements and so forth. We do have a recapture provision that's very important, and that's one of the most important things in any ordinance for that offers abatements. That if you offer a five-year abatement and you've given them three years worth of taxes and all of a sudden they shut down and they're gone. This recapture allows you to recoup all the abatements you've given the first three years. They'd have to reimburse and recapture those dollars. Uh, I know that for an example, the city of San Antonio had given a tax abatement many years ago. You'd recall Levi, when they were off I ninety and so forth, they closed down before the abatement expired. The city was able to recapture all the abatement they had provided that company the previous seven years. So that's why it's very important to make sure you have a recapture provision. Um, and I know this is the public hearing, so at this stage, uh, we can turn it open to see if there's anyone from the public. If not, after the next item, I'll be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Absolutely. Thank you, counselor. Do we have any questions from the public or anybody else to this particular item in the open session that we have? Public hearing.
Mayor, Frank, just to make Mr. Attorney.
This is the public hearing for the next item.
Do we have anybody from the public that wants to comment particularly? Former Councilman White?
Yes, greetings. Uh, the, this is just another tool for y'all to, to get incentives for businesses. It doesn't mean it's going to be used, but you have to have a guideline. So it's to the city's benefit to have something in place. Thank you.
Thank you. White, thank you very much for your comments. Any other comments? Okay, the time is eight forty-nine PM. We will now, uh, close the public, uh, presentation. And we'll move now into discussion with council members and staff regarding this item. Now, Mr. Lysaez, you can go ahead and have the floor to.
I found, I found my answer. It was just to make sure that it's just, all we can do is just our taxes, nobody else's.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, does anyone else have any? Uh, Councilman Burton?
So we, we have something in place right now under three twelve, right?
Three ten.
Oh, it's.
Chapter.
Three ten.
Well, there, the city, under state law, has certain incentives you can provide under state law. This is a tool that's under that chapter that allows you to also include abatements. But cities cannot offer abatements under Chapter three twelve without adopting some guidelines.
So I guess the gist of my question is if we did nothing. We, it's still become before council and we could still.
No, sir. Without guidelines for businesses to understand what types of business you would provide abatements for, you cannot offer abatements. You must have adopted guidelines. And these guidelines are only good for five years, then you'd have to re, relook at them to determine whether or not the guidelines are working or whether you want to make modifications. But if you do not have guidelines, you cannot offer any type of tax abatement incentive.
Okay. I think Mr. Morales wants to.
Mr. Morales?
Just as an example also is you, you can, uh, you can create the type of program that you want. Uh, in the city of Ardington, we created one where no hotel that was built outside the central business district would receive any, any assistance. Because they were trying to push development inside the central business district. So you, you can create a program that suits you. The other thing is that if we recall some of the presentation that was being made earlier. That's, that's the kind of tools that you need to be able to attract some of the ideas that will be in discuss about the twenty forty strategic plan. So this really comes in handy when you're trying to attract developers. And those are the things that you keep in mind. But to Frank's point, you don't have to provide any incentive or, for everything. It's just those things that make sense to the city.
Councilman Burton?
I, I know enough to be dangerous, but, um, you know, I, I think lots of considerations should be, is this a tax generating business? Uh, does it, you know, to, to abate prop, property or ad valorem? You know, are we going to make it back on the backside of, of, of the, of this deal? To, to your point, bringing it to within.
The, uh, so you have options. It can be a, a, a property tax abatement or a sales tax abatement. So if it's a property tax abatement and it's a, it's a retail establishment, then, you know, you're guaranteed at least the, the sales tax. Uh, or, or vice versa. So it's, it can be a sales tax abatement and, uh, and then a, uh, let's call it a three eighty agreement. And then with, with, uh, with your full taxes coming in or a combination of both. I mean, so, so you have choices.
But three eighties are only specific, can be used at one, one time, right? Cause I knew we had a three eighty with, with, with this. So you have to do those as needed.
Correct.
It, it's not a blanket.
Yeah, Chapter three eighty agreements do not need these guidelines. These are simply guidelines for under Chapter three twelve, tax abatement guidelines. Uh, uh, if, if a developer or a business comes in want, not wanting a tax abatement, but wanting, um, a three eighty agreement where the city provides them something and they provide something to the city in return, that's something that you can do there. But three eighty agreements do not need these guidelines.
Councilman Lysaez?
Sines.
Oh, excuse me, Councilman Sines, excuse me.
Mr. Burton still has a question.
I have a floor. Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Burton.
Um, like I said, I, I know enough to be dangerous, but I think this needs to be looked at a lot more thoroughly than just making a, uh, an ambiguous, um, passing through, you know, because now we've split two of them. We got the sales tax side, now we got the ad valorem side, you know, uh, uh, length, term, term of, term of the abatements. I know what target was ten years abatement on, on. I mean, tar- target was, was on a ten year.
Property tax, not sales tax.
Property, but not sale. So we were making it up off the backside. That's.
Right, because we knew they were going to have come through the door with five hundred thousand dollars just right off the bat.
Right.
That's what, that was the incentive, that was the caveat that I agreed to push for and.
You know, we, we've got, we've got, you know, is it sales taxes and ad valorem, length of term? Uh, is this a, a, a corporate type business or is this a mom and pop business? Uh, is it going to be like to Gilbert said, is this going to be outside the business district or inside the business district? Um, I, I think we need to look a lot closer than, than this meeting can provide.
I'll be happy to call another special call meeting. We can do a special workshop on specifically abatements. But I, I think what Mr. Morales is trying to do right now is implement something. Do we, do, okay, then I'll, I'll go ahead.
So just real quick, these are just guidelines.
Yeah.
This is nothing specific. I, I think there, there's a class in, in San Marcos that's going to talk about all this stuff. If you're really interested about detail, it, it would be there. But, you know, quite frankly, all you need right now is guidelines. The specifics or whatever you guys want it to be, as long as they fall within the guidelines. In order for us to have any program at all, you need to establish guidelines. And guidelines are just that, guidelines. Any specific project has to fall within the guidelines and you decide what the project will, will look like at the end of the day. Not the developer, not anybody else, it's you. If you want to make it three years at fifty percent, depending on how much they're going to invest in the development, it's entirely up to you. But, but all those questions will be answered depending on the project that comes to make the request. And so, and, and you decide, I, I think it's been very clear, no residential. So that's out. And you can decide whether it's going to be commercial, retail, mixed, mixed use. All that stuff can be up to you. And, uh, and you decide the level of, of participation that you want. And, and if you want to, you can also include, uh, a, a conversation with your county to, to, to participate. So to, to make, to, to lessen the, uh, the, the impacts to you as well.
Yeah, Mr. Burton.
From what I heard, I, I, I thought I heard last time was that most of us were in a agreement that we didn't want to go over five years, that one meeting.
And, and that's what this says.
And, uh, but as, as long as, as we're making it off of, of, off, off of some end, we're, we're getting something back. You know, we can't just give a hundred percent abatement for, for, you know, something, a, a business.
So, so ju- just, just remember, so it's an abatement on the increased value of, of the property. So all your base remains with you. So if somebody, if somebody's paying you twenty-five thousand right now or for their property. Then everything above and beyond the twenty-five thousand is what's in play, not the base. So you never touch the base. It's the tax increment, the increment to the tax. Or if you're already collecting twenty-five, that's protected. It's anything above and beyond that that you, that, that, that you, you, uh, negotiate. You won't lose a penny. You, you may gain very little, but you won't lose a penny. What you gain i- if it's retail, you gain the sales tax.
Right.
So things of that nature, but you never lose the base. It's an increment to what you collect.
Mr. Burton, you?
Thank you.
Councilman Sines?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'd like to, uh, use the business park as a potential example. So that area, those combined properties right now have an assessed value of about a million dollars. So we get about six thousand dollars from them in property taxes right now. So if they invest five million dollars and it has an assessed value of five million dollars. That total assessed value, we'd get a little, a little over thirty or thirty thousand dollars, okay? So at the end of that five years, we would actually start making that money back and then some. You know what I mean? So, uh, we're not going to be losing money in the long term. So even if we give them a hundred percent, we're going to gain that back really fast. Yeah, yeah, he has a question, so.
Okay, so, so using, using the business park as an example, none of us, including the owner, knows what's going in there. There, there could, there could be, you know, blue bonnet flowers going in. There could be something that's really sales tracks, sales tax driven that, that we're making the money off of. We, if we abate that sales tax and just accept the ad valorem tax, you know, we're on the short end of the stick there. I mean, we're going to get our ad valorem no matter what, but say this is a, a successful business in there. We're, we're losing out by, by abating their sales tax and keeping the.
But only for a short period, and then we make that money back and, well, you know, I let him ask me a question, so I'm responding to his question.
He's discussing, and so let him finish his presentation.
Yeah. Okay. But I was, I was just using that as a. The unknown is the dangerous part.
Yeah, I was responding to him. Thank you. I was responding.
We keep this form, okay?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I was responding to Mr. Burton, just saying that short-term, yes, we would lose some of that property tax or, or some of that sales tax. But we wouldn't lose money, and that's what Mr. Morales was saying. So doing this helps entice those businesses to come, and then we will be making that money. Either additional sales tax, if they have sales tax generating businesses at the, at the business park. Or if we choose to abate their sales tax and get the money on the fir-, on the front end with the, uh, ad valorem taxes. But that's up to us.
Right.
And that, that's just using them as an example.
And they're already here, so we don't have to worry about that.
Exactly, exactly. I was just using that as an example to show what the potential, uh, possibilities could be.
That, that business is already here, so that's.
And, and all I'm trying to do is make sure we just maintain the flow of the conversation. Have you speak up, whatever you need to speak. Once you're done, then you can speak after that, and that way you're not back and forth. And we just want to keep control of the flow of this conversation, okay?
Questions asked and answered, so thank you.
Thank both of you very much. So, um, any other concerns, any other communications regarding this item? I do have a quick question. Do we have any pending projects right now that are going to be needing this and it's time sensitive for us to be able to pass this right now? You have any?
Time, time sensitive, no, but, but it is the, uh, the presentation by Ian Fisher. And, and basically because they, they can't request one right now. Uh, and I know that the previous council had, had said yes to consideration of a, of a tax exemption until they find out the full cost of the development. Because that's what's going to determine how much taxes there are. And the request is really for him to be able to, uh, to borrow, to pay down the interest. And, and so, so that's, that's his request. That's what his request is going to be. Uh, because interest rates are high, that's what the, this, uh, discussion was geared towards that. But he doesn't know the full cost of his development yet, so he doesn't know what the appraised value is going to be. He knows the appraised.
Okay. Well, in answer to my question, there is a pending project, which is Mr. Fisher's project that requires this. So back when the council had agreed, previous council, that's why we need to do this now because of the fact this was not in place. But a commitment of some sort was made verbally to him, and that's why we're doing this now. We're basically just, well, for future, future, but specifically for him. Yes, okay, so that was what I kind of assumed, or not assumed, I, I kind of gathered from my intelligence gathering on this. And so basically what it is, is that the previous council pretty much gave him a verbal, Mr. Fisher, but they didn't have this in place, the actual legality of allowing an abatement. So this permits not only Mr. Fisher, but any other future. So when we had read in some of the past correspondence of the city council meetings where there was consideration of a ten-year abatement to Mr. Fisher for, um, his project, really couldn't be done until we get this taken care of. So this is why, now it's not time sensitive, though it's my recommendation to the council that perhaps we call a special meeting and get some other work done while we're in there, but call a little workshop so that you can look at all this information or we put it back on the agenda at another time. And it gives us time, whoever can go to these essential classes that are going to be on land use and development and tax abatements. If y'all can make it to one of those classes, you'll get a huge education on it, you'll be more equipped to make a informed decision. I know I'm going to be going there, so this gives you the opportunity to understand exactly what's being done. And, you know, how the, how these abatements work in a clearer picture. And that would be my recommendation to the council. You don't have to make a decision right this minute. And Mr. Morales has mentioned it's not time sensitive, but we do have to do it soon, sometime soon.
And just a reminder to your point, I, I did send everybody a, a, a copy of the invitation for those classes.
Yes, you did.
They're free, and they're in San Marcos, and, and they'll talk about every, every individual, uh, uh, program is out there as a tool for every city.
I highly recommend it to all the council members and perhaps any staff that wants to go. Anyone else need to speak on this?
I, I just.
Councilman Lysaez?
Since, since we're on, on, on that topic, I know we had mentioned at one time of getting a package or something together for impact fees. Where are we on that? Is that something that we're going to have to be working on or where, do we need to be doing anything with that for impact or future development? So I think, I think, you know, once the council, uh, decides on, not, not that we've, we've agreed on the, uh, on the twenty forty program. And, uh, once the, the council decides with, with the work that the EDC and the council will do together, about what kind of development they want to see. Then you need to start looking at impact fees. And the impact fees, for, for those of you that may not understand, is really the impact it has on your. And the impact fees, for for those of you that may not understand, are is really the impact it has on your infrastructure, whatever development you have that impacts your your current infrastructure. If you you decide on on the uh on the triangle part of the Wonderland, if you would decide to put something that's, you know, five stories vertical, the increased demand on your utilities is what the impact fee covers. So the developer then has to pay for those those uh those increased demands. So anything above and beyond what we have there, if it if it has to go up to a twenty-inch uh sewer main or or an eight-inch water line to be able to service that program, they pay for, that that impact is what they cover. And so just, you know, some of the things that you need to that you need to understand, as you're talking about development, is all the other things that happen that impact your your infrastructure, and that's where impact fees come in. So, you know, that that has to be a topic along with all this other stuff, and that's that's another one of those discussion points in San Marcos.
So great, that's a wealth of information. I do advocate, anybody that can go to this meeting, go, it'll be great, and it's a good, good tool, educational tool. And um the other thing to consider, and I'll close with this on this subject, is that look at the long picture, like what we discussed earlier, that was presented to us on our strategic plan, that we must maintain that continuity, so these components are part of that. So what these adoptions of these particular abatement plans should be in line with our strategic plan, because that's where the big picture is gonna be at of economic development for our community. Mr. Peralas?
Whenever the last word. Now, uh also remember that in that in that uh report, it talks about giving really, really close consideration to creating a TIRS, a tax increment reinvestment zone around the Wonderland area, which can all, is which is also another tool for any increment in uh in in taxes get reinvested back into the area to continue the uh the efforts to redevelop and or attract new business. But it's another tool that you have to consider once, once the twenty forty uh plan, you know, really gets o- off it off the ground.
Yes, and empowerment zones as well will work really well for federal grants, incentives and grants to stimulate economic growth and um reduce unemployment. So those are all tools in our in our chest that we can utilize, so thank you, Mr. Peralas.
Make a motion to table.
You want to make a motion to table it?
A second.
We have a second by Mr. Sellers to table it.
Like to add an amendment to table it to the next budget meeting, that way we don't.
Okay. I I agree with that.
Okay.
Our 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 council meeting on June twenty-fourth, we pulled five items from the agenda. I don't think we ever got back to all of those, so. I agree with Mark that we need to bring this up in a
Would you consider Mr. Burton and Mr. Sellers possibly retreating or retracting that particular motion and just move forward with the Mr. Science, Councilman Science's suggestion that we do it at the next meeting?
I just did it as an amendment to their. Yeah, I think, and Councilman Burton accepted the amendment.
Okay, okay, good. All right, so we we accepted the amendment, then we've been called to vote for it. Let's call a vote on Councilman Science's amendment to it. Let's do a roll call. Councilman Valverde?
Yay.
Councilman Science?
Yeah.
Councilman Lysia?
Yeah.
Councilman Sellers?
Yeah.
Councilman Burton?
Yeah.
We pass five oh. We move to the amendment of Councilman um.
Memo from Mrs. Peralas, when it, what is is the data that San Marcos meeting after or before the the next budget?
You would ask me the question today.
Sorry.
I'll look it up.
Sorry, it's it's after, it's the fourth. September fourth, yes.
Okay, so Ms. We're gonna, Ms. Sanchez, we're gonna do it. Who, I guess we'll just get, make sure we have it on that agenda, or whoever's gonna be here. Yeah, we'll address it, and okay, moot point. All right, let's go ahead and move over to the next side.
Mayor.
Yes.
Take a five-minute recess.
If everybody's okay with it, five-minute recess, okay?
Are we ready to go, everyone? Time is nine sixteen PM. Let's call everybody back into the city council chambers. Chief, would you do me a favor and just let them know to come on in? We're ready to move forward. Don't, yeah, don't do anything drastic now. Come on in, Mr. Burton.
We'll wait on Mr. Sellers to come in. Councilman Sellers? Okay, thank you. Famous, famous last word. He's coming. He'll be here. There he is, yay, Mr. Sellers is here. All right, thank you. All right, let's go ahead and move forward. Item number eleven, consider an action to adopt a resolution to approve the exclusive franchise agreement with Frontier Texas Ventures. One LLC for the collection, hauling, disposal of municipal solid waste. Mr. Peralas?
It helped with the agreement was they were willing to to include it as long as the money was reinvested in a park. So, you know, for 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 the benefit of of the community. And uh so it it would be triggered every month if they miss ten or more homes and uh and they would automatically pay penalty, and with the proviso that 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 money go invested into a park. And so we agreed to that. Uh there there's also the indemnity clauses that that cover the city in case any 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 issues happen. They they are gonna do, they 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 agreed to the existing days on pickups. They they they're gonna add a an additional container or recycling, which is now you'll have two two same containers, same-sized containers. Nice equipment, new equipment, and so e- everything we asked for, they agreed to. So, you know, it's the the cost, the fee.
We lost, lost audio. Hold on, Mr. Peralas, I think we lost your audio. It does.
So, uh as I was saying, the uh it they met every every uh requirement we had. Their their fee, while slightly higher than than your current fee, is lower than what Republican Republic was uh was recommending for the option year. So all in all, we got pretty much everything what we that we wanted. We heard the the concerns from uh from our uh commercial businesses, and there's a huge impact on 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 their fees down. So they they will benefit greatly from the new fee structure, which is which is which is great, because seventy percent of our bit of of our collections are are commercial. Well, I like being over here, further away from them.
What's what's our new garbage fee, by the way?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six?
Three months?
Yeah.
And when does it start? Remember?
I don't remember.
I didn't either. Yeah, but when does it start, sir?
When it it starts, it starts October first.
October first.
Right.
It'll be fifty-six dollars roughly?
No, that's that's what we're paying now.
Oh, right, yeah.
That's what you're paying now. It'll it'll be slightly higher. Do you, I don't remember the number. I'll get you the number.
Like sixty bucks.
Yeah.
Like nineteen.
It's slight slightly higher, but but I'll guarantee you that uh that the uh the expense for commercial is is really down. So, which is good.
Everybody should, excuse me.
Yes, go ahead.
Everybody should have got a letter, all the residents should have got a letter in the mail.
I didn't get one.
You gotta call and give them your name and address and blah-ba-dah-bah, but that's to, so they can work you into their billing. You should have got that.
So so I think the other thing that that's that's important to note is that I know that, you know, every once in a while, we get questions about hazardous material. The way that's gonna work is uh on on an as needed basis, once a month, as opposed to once a year. So if you if you have something at home and you need it picked up, you schedule it with their third uh third-party provider. They schedule a time with you, they come in, they pick it up and they take it. So that's gonna be available to every citizen across the board. So once a month, you can have, you know, if you want to save, if you have twelve paint cans and you want to get rid of them once a month, you can do that, or get rid of one.
How many times a year are they gonna have brush pickup?
So it's gonna be two, so nothing changes. Yeah, no- nothing changes. They did, they did agree to uh to provide us a uh a container once every quarter for neighbor neighborhood cleanup. So hopefully between the neighborhood cleanup and the brush and bulky, you know, we we can get ahead of of some of the cold stuff that we have, that we deal with on on a regular basis.
Would you please let them know I didn't get anything? I didn't receive any correspondence.
Okay.
That's why I'm in the air as to when, and didn't you either, you, Mr. White? So maybe they can do an editing, and Mr. um Rudy Flores, he didn't get it either.
I'll I'll make sure, yeah, I'll find out, uh I'll find out how how uh if they've sent everything out already. Cause I know it's a, it's a huge list, so.
I don't want to fall off and then, oh, he didn't pay as they're going.
Yeah, yeah, we. Then I'll have to send code to your house and uh another hoarder.
Exactly.
No, but we'll 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 check up with them. We'll we'll call them tomorrow and find out.
All righty, so um we need a action item, so is there any other comments that anybody would like to have?
Yes. Yes, by reading the uh the contract, I've noticed that uh it says that this service will be subject to an increase depending on the CPI, which I've never heard of that before, but anyway. And in addition, this this company is probably gonna make a rate rate adjustments, cause it does say on the contract that they are subject to make rate adjustments depending on their costs for trash and fuel, things like that.
Right, so so every co- uh let the last contract had the same verbiage, so there's nothing different. So if, say for instance, gas all of a sudden hits, California rates, six dollars, you you I can rest, you can rest assured that there'll be an increase request for that. And so th- these are things that that when they make the request, it's not automatic. You still, you still have an opportunity to to have a conversation with them.
Okay.
So so all that, i- it's not, it's not automatic increases. They they have to make a request to council for for any increase. All right, we al- and we always request that those things come during budget season, so that it can be considered.
And it's also good to know that there's only three days that they're not gonna be providing service, which is New Year's, Thanksgiving, and Christmas.
And the last one was was, I think, like nine days, so, you know.
Yeah.
And so they they work.
And also, uh I was reading the the contract and it says that the rates are shown in ex- exhibit A.
So we'll add the exhibits.
See it A or B.
Yeah, so we'll add the exhibits. Uh it we we're still working on some of the numbers, but uh not changing, just adding them, because there there there's like uh sixty different categories, and uh e- every commercial establishment has opportunities to have a ninety-six gallon container, two yards, three yards, four yards, five yards, six yards, one day, one day a week, two days a week, three days a week, four days a week, five days a week, six days a week. So it's extensive. You you'll get it.
I was more concerned with residential.
Yeah, no, and those are just two pickups a day, a a week, and uh and and they're all the same, so.
Yeah.
And it's the the same days that we have right now.
All righty, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Valverde. Anybody else have any questions? Which one went first? Who went first?
I was just indicating that Mr. Burton had.
Okay, Councilman Burton?
When I, when I registered my my property, when they got the letter, I asked the girl, and I don't know this, this isn't set in stone, but I asked if there was a charge for paying on the internet, and she told me no. So I don't know if that's I I didn't see that in the schedule at all, but.
Yeah, I'm I'm not, I'm not sure what their uh what their process is, because everybody's different, you know, if if you some, if you pay with credit card, you get a four percent charge. I don't know how how they handle their their.
Well, with with Republic, it was if you did the E-check, they they didn't.
Okay.
They did, I don't think they charged me on it.
But uh tho- those are questions that I can ask them, and and if they can send it supplemental, then.
Yeah, that's from the customer service, whoever answered the line over over.
They assure me that they're gonna answer every call, so.
You did.
Good.
You finished, Councilman Science? Did you have something?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, any other council member have anything? So, real quick, do you think maybe we should wait till that missing items that Mr. Valverde just asked about in the exhibits?
So so those.
The approval of this before we do it?
You you won't have time. They 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 need to gear up. So the the thing is that the numbers are already set in stone. So nothing's gonna change. I'm just simply transferring numbers, their 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 information to our 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 website or our system, so that you can, it can be available, but I'll make it available to you tomorrow morning.
So you can just assure us of that, that's for sure.
Yes, I mean, that nothing's gonna change, nothing's gonna change it, so. And you you can see those numbers and and compare them to what the proposals were, and that's all all it is. So I'm taking all the proposal numbers and transferring them to our system. So you'll get all that information.
All right, thank you so much. So now, are we ready to take a vote on this?
Well, Mr. Burton.
Councilman who? Councilman Burton?
Uh, there's some considerations. I don't know if y'all checked into it.
Go ahead.
Are they gonna pick up for the hospital because they have their own people that they use to take care of medical and their waste, and they're really picky.
So so what whatever's in the books is what they're gonna do. And 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 if they currently handle the waste through another me- no, I'm not talking about Republic. If 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 the hospital has a specific uh contractor, then they'll continue to use that for for medical waste.
And every, just so you know, Mr. White, uh every hospital has those guidelines. There's a separation of waste. Waste is susceptible to the public municipal systems, and then there's a waste system for uh contaminated needles and contaminated waste, and it's separate from ours. It won't be mixed in ours, to my understanding. Is that correct, Mr. Peralas? So.
So they won't be doing uh grease pickup from restaurants? Okay.
That'll be a separate contract.
Yeah, because these these uh last times we switched, it was a big thing with the commercial district.
No, the the on- the only thing that there's that that there's always been an issue about is whether or not you can, if you have a construction site at your home, whether or not you can hire, or not, now this, they don't have an exclusive on that. So if you choose to go hire a dumpster, dumpster, whatever, you can do that, but you're liable for the six percent fee to the city. So that's a, that's understandable. So they don't have an exclusive on that, but they have exclusive on anything else that's that's regular garbage. Okay, I mean, that's.
It's mine, mine.
And forgive me, Mr. White, you were scheduled to speak on this at number eleven, so you're within your purview to do so.
Uh, the only other thing is uh how big is, can we put out for recycle? I mean, I recycle. Uh, the only other thing is, how big is, can we put out for recycle? I mean, not recycle, but rush.
Rush pickup.
They give six by six by six?
It does. It's universal.
Okay.
There's gonna be opportunities six times a year, you know, or four four more additional times a year to 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 get rid of stuff when we have the neighborhood, when we have the the neighborhood cleanups. So that'll that'll still be available.
So we'll have one big trash can and two recyclers?
You're gonna have two trash cans. So it's the the bin, two bins, ninety-five gallon, one recycle, one. One.
Regular.
Regular garbage.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Anything else, Mr. White? Okay. Thank you very much for your input.
I was just gonna say that.
Mr. Burton, go ahead.
That my last Republic was fifty-nine seventy-seven, so that's what we were paying. Take a picture.
So we.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the exclusive franchise agreement for Frontier Frontier Texas Ventures.
Do we have a second to Councilman Sines' motion?
Oh, second.
Councilman Burton? Okay, so let's do a roll call. Councilman Valverde?
Yay.
Councilman Sines?
Yay.
Councilman Lysia?
Yay.
Councilman Sellers? Yes, sir, you have a question?
You said that we get two trash cans and one recycle?
One, one recycle, one trash. You get two bins.
Two bins.
Yeah.
You'll now have a recycle bin. Plus the one that we always had.
Well.
I think we're.
If I have a rental, a rental has a trash can and I have a trash can, does that mean I have to pay two bills for that?
No.
Second trash can?
If if you so so there's a it with the existing contract, if you want an extra bin, you have to pay for it. This is no different. If you want an extra.
Always. I've got two trash cans and one little recycle. I've had that for years.
Were you paying extra for the other?
And I'm not paying extra for anything. They pick up two trash cans and a recycle every day, every.
Yeah, if you have two separate properties, then you're gonna have two separate bills. So that's that's the way it works.
So I'm you're saying I'm gonna go from two trash cans to one trash can?
For property.
And then one for recycle. So you'll lose one trash can, which you were, and if you want an extra one, you gotta pay extra. But just to call a order, a point of orders, that we gotta, we have a vote on.
Nay.
Okay, so nay. And then, Councilman Burton?
Yay.
Yay?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's four to one. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Peralas. Okay, item number twelve. Discussion and action to initiate process of contacting various educational colleges and universities to recruit, retain and implement the use of unpaid interns to be independently assigned to assist with the operations of mayor's office, city administrator, city secretary, police, community development, community and public affairs departments respectfully. So I'll let Mr. Peralas take this. We discussed it in our meeting. You wanna want me to, you want me to go ahead and do it? Okay, so what we discussed is, and I have been for some time now bringing this, this is the second time I've brought it to the attention of the council. I am wanting to get help for our staff, to include all of these staffs that I referred to with interns. And the discussion that Mr. Peralas and I had was that he suggested maybe a hundred and fifty dollar stipend for these students and preferably graduate students that we can recruit to help in these positions. It's my understanding in the past, what happened was there was really nothing for these interns to do because there really wasn't a specific job description of what they're going to be doing. So my goal and my vision in trying to help the city with extra staff that we don't have to pay is that if we get these interns to come in, that we have specific descriptions of what they will be doing for each respective department. For example, Police Chief John Ahara, he has special needs in his department that he has. So he would be in charge of drafting that particular description of what his needs are. And respectfully for each other department that we have in community development, I mean, public relations in different areas, the fire department, if it needs it, then we would be looking at the the department heads to provide that description so that when we get the interns, they're not standing around pointing their thumbs, they're actually gonna be working, and they will produce work product for us that will help our city efficiently move forward in the objectives that we need to for each respective department. And in a nutshell, that's basically what it is.
I also add is that, you know, the the one thing that that we have to be always cognizant of is, one, that that you have to have a work plan so that they can use that as part of their graduate studies. More important is that every department understands that for every intern, you need space and equipment. So if you don't have the available space and you don't have the available equipment, then it's difficult to to implement. So these are the things that 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 go into play. It it's not simply about adding a body, but adding the equipment to make that body successful. So, you know, it we're we're all housed in one building, so. So just 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 so everybody understands that that there's still still limitations, you just still need supervision and things of that nature. But I think it's it's a good idea to 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 at least look at opportunities that where we can really benefit from from the from the contributions of of someone in this position.
Right, and I don't wanna kick it down the road. I mean, I'd like to for the council to take action. Let's get it started. Let's get started on this. Let's start this pilot program. Let's see how it works out with one or two. In the words of a very my colleague, Councilman Jack Burton, and it always resonates with me when he says this. You can give me a lot of reasons why not to do it, but give me some good reasons or one good reasons why we need to do it. Is that correct, Jack? Uh, what how do you paraphrase? I paraphrased it, but how do you say that?
And get ten reasons not to do it and not one good reason to do it.
To do it. So, you know, we need to like implement it. Let's do it. Let's just do it. Let's get on it. I've already gotten the information to Ms. Sanchez on the universities to contact UT, and she went on contact St. Mary's University. And so let's do it for the benefit of our community, the benefit of our of our, excuse me, benefit of our employees. And let's help them out. Let's get that extra help for them so that some of this workload that they have can be reduced.
Okay.
Councilman Lysia, go ahead.
If I'm understanding right, we're looking to use interns, and I'm in in favor of that.
No, that's not true. I didn't say that.
Okay.
You use interns in favor of the employees?
No, that you're gonna use interns to use with the city, to have interns come help us.
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, so so I'm I'm saying if we're gonna do that, I'd like for us to study that, make sure, like Mr. Peralas was saying, that we have the equipment, the space and total cost, if there's any cost involved. If we're gonna give them a stipend, how is that gonna impact our our budget? I'm in favor of doing it. We need to do it, but I wanna make sure if we're gonna have to buy computers, if we're gonna have to buy more desks, what what else is gonna be needed before we move forward? But I I I like the idea. I wanna move forward for it, but like you say, I don't wanna bring them and then we don't have computers or we have to stop one employee so we can have the intern do the work. So I'm in favor of doing it. Just I wanna make sure we have all the logistics in place before we move forward.
Okay, well, the sooner the better. As I said before, yes, Councilman Burton, go right ahead.
How can we do it?
If if I were if I were the city administrator, I have all the answers for you.
Well, I I do have. So.
Sines, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I I do agree with you. I think it's a great idea to to look into having interns, but we do need the information first. We need to have those those plans in place. That way we can present them to the universities and say, this is our proposal. We want to have X amount of interns for these positions. They'll be doing this type of work. And that, I think what we can do is direct our our department heads to put those plans together. And then we can also direct the city administrator or the city staff to identify the equipment needs as well as placement needs, desks, office space or whatever. And and do all those things before we actually start reaching out to the universities and requesting those interns, because if we do it beforehand and we don't have the space, we don't have the equipment, we don't have the lesson plans, it's not gonna be successful. I wanna have everything in place before we reach out to them so we can have a successful program.
I concur. I agree with you a hundred percent. I think that's an excellent idea, Councilman Sines. And I think that if we can move forward and I suggest the council go ahead and take a vote to do those things, to instruct staff to gather that information. Get you all the equipment costs, everything that you need, then let's do that. That's the first step. I think that's an excellent idea. At least it starts getting the ball rolling, and I can, you know, just wanna bring the idea to you and then let you run with it. So I think it's excellent. Councilman Sellers?
I I concur with everybody. It's a great idea, and we need to initiate that. We need to pass it. We need to get together on it. My question is, once they're here, God forbid if they got hurt, who's gonna cover the insurance?
Right.
Us.
We're covering under our umbrella policy for those things.
That's what I want.
Different than anybody walking in.
All that stuff would be.
Yeah, I mean, you know, just.
Yeah, good, good, good.
You have to look at these things.
Yeah, you do, and good point. Councilman Burton?
And I I have I have I have questions as far as who's gonna manage this. And not, we don't necessarily have to pay the an intern fee. I mean, you probably get more interns if you did have pay an intern, but you don't necessarily have to pay them. My concern is, let's say we get a a financial, someone that wants to be an accountant or wants to be a Floyd Mason, and and we've got confidentiality or in the in the chief's case, helping out with the the police department. There's a lot of confidential things in 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 the police department that, you know, just the regular student should be perfect. The last thing we need to learn about is the computer. I think we have plenty of computers laying around. But.
So so there there's a strategy to all this. It is not just simply creating positions to fill them. And to your point, those are the things that we take into consideration is, you know, the 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 information and what's allowed to be distributed to to just anybody, right? And so those are the things that that we'll take into consideration as we create these work plans. One of the things I told the mayor is that, you know, one of the things that you hear constantly over the last at least two or four months is the issues with 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 our codes. And and I'll be the first one to say that, you know, you you've got, you you need updates to some of the codes. So a work plan could be for for your first code run, if you wanna see a pilot, is get somebody from a a that's got a a degree in planning to maybe look at one or two codes compared to what it whatever other cities have and 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 maybe look at updating some of the material in those codes that make more sense. Now, they, just because they do the work doesn't mean it has to be adopted, but at least you can see some of the advantages of having somebody work on these things that has the time to concentrate on that. That's a work plan that they can then go to their professors and say, this is what I'm doing, and and they get a grade for that. The 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 thing about about stipends is that they have to drive down here and stuff, and it's it it there's an expense. I'm not saying to pay them a salary, but pay them a stipend at least to cover some of their costs for travel and maybe a meal. I mean, they won't be here every day. They will dedicate, you know, ten to fifteen hours a week or twenty maybe. But, you know, those are the type of things that that you go and present to a to a college, and they make the determination as to whether or not there's viable opportunity there for one of their students.
And and my la- my last point would be, are they subject to a background check because they're behind?
The the simple answer is yes.
Door, the doors.
The simple answer is yes.
And to answer your question regarding the who's gonna be managing them, we utilize the same principles that we normally operate right now under the city administrators, the head of all personnel. But each respective department will manage that intern in respect to the description of the duties that we're gonna be drafting up, that are gonna be proposed. Chief John Ahara will know, for example, and I don't mean to be using his example, but he will know what can be disclosed and what not can be disclosed, what that individual can be accessible to or not accessible. And the same thing goes with the public affairs. They will know what their perimeters are in conjunction with their own job description. So it's gonna be right along the lines of those job descriptions, for the exception of little modifications geared towards the specific needs of that department. And that's where it will work for us. So, yes.
The only thing I wanna point out is, under FLSA, for internships to be acceptable by the government, two major things. There's seven requirements. The two major ones is that they be associated with some education institution. And two, they cannot replace paid workers. So those are the two main things that the FLSA looks for, that that as long as they they understand that it's unpaid.
The stipend with that qualifies?
Stipend, fine.
Okay.
But that they are getting some type of benefit from their university for doing the internship.
Absolutely. And that's in partnership. Each one, am I correct, Ms. Sanchez? Each university has its detailed plan on re- the use of interns and how they it's each one of it. It was in our our.
Well, I know St. Mary's does.
Yeah.
Uh, the other ones haven't gotten back with me, but St. Mary's did.
And UT. So what I'm looking on direction for council, did you wanna speak?
Yeah, just just.
Okay, go ahead.
That that I know of, we have one intern that was here several years ago from St. Mary's that is now a city manager somewhere up in North Carolina that came came through the program. His son was in our basketball team. So I got to know the gentleman before I came involved. So he came through the program and was very educated and and worked up. So we we've done this in the past, so I know we can we can do it. We just need to get all the logistics together. And just recently, we had another gentleman that helped us with the code and and parks that also is very fantastic, very knowledgeable. So it's it's something we've done in the past. We just need to 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 fine tune it.
Fantastic. Back in, so you know, back in two thousand, when I was the mayor back then, we did that as well with Roy Miller. There was a master student that was there, a master's degree, and he was going for higher education, and he came out to work with us, did very well for us back then. Well, great. I'm glad to hear that. So can we entertain a vote to move forward, Mr. Sines, with the criteria that you placed before? That staff instruct them to do what needs to be done?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to direct staff to develop those work plans and look into the equipment and spatial needs for potential interns.
Thank you. We have a second to Mr. Sines' motion. We have a second by Councilman Valverde. So let's call a vote. Councilman Valverde, Valverde?
Yay.
Councilman Sines?
Yay.
Councilman Lysia?
Yay.
Councilman Sellers?
Yay.
Councilman Burton?
Yay.
Fantastic. Motion passes five oh. Thank you very much for your cooperation and help, council. I think we're gonna benefit. So the next one is thirteen, discussion and action on utilizing best management practices to review and amend salary compensation, jobs attrition, the duties of city secretary upon completion of the review employment opportunity needs to be publicly advertised for the solicitation of applicants for the job opening of city secretary for the city of Balcony Heights. So just to clarify, the only thing I'm looking for on this now, cause after I reviewed everything on the city secretary, and is just to publicly advertise for the solicitation of applicants for the job opening of city secretary. I'm asking council to consider doing that in accordance to proper hiring procedures and proper advertisement under equal opportunity law. And I'll just let it end at that.
Okay, I'd like to get the, yeah, I'd just like to get the comments from the city administrator.
Absolutely.
Being that that's his employee.
So under under the the city's ordinances, you you do appoint the city secretary and the city manager or the city administrator?
Correct.
The one of the things, one of the first things I I I saw when I walked in was the complexity of of some of the positions. You don't have a city secretary. You have a city secretary slash HR director slash municipal court clerk slash elections administrator slash slash slash. So you there there's, it's very difficult for you to find the the type of individual that that can fit all those all those or can check all those squares. So one of the things that I did was recognizing that, start a succession plan and 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 then meet with employees that were interested and then start the process of preparing that individual to assume the responsibility of city secretary when Dele Alve. We we started that process, fully understanding that regardless of 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 what I was doing, council still had the authority to to hire or has the authority to hire to appoint. But I wanted to make sure that we left, or I left, this organization fully covered because some of the work that 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 falls under the responsibility of this position is very critical. is very critical to the success of this organization. If meetings don't get posted correctly, you don't have a meeting. If, uh, if HR, if, if medical insurance information is not done adequately, the employee suffers. So there's a, and, mm, the municipal court administrator requires at least three years of, of training to get that designation. So it, it's not an easy job. It's a very difficult job. And just so that you know, that absent a succession plan, you start from scratch everywhere if you hire somebody else. But that's, that's your purview, not mine. I'm simply making sure that, that if you go in this direction, we can at least leave the city in good hands. That's all.
Any, uh, comments? Yes, Mr. Burton?
Uh, for Frank, i- i- is there a policy where we, we have to post? I know, I know at Channel Four, you know, even though there was a succession plan, as Mr. Peralas calls it, we still, I law had to post, uh, openings.
There, there is no legal requirement of having to post a position, especially one that's appointed by the city council, unless your internal policies require posting. As city attorney for a lot of cities, whenever, whenever there's a city ministry leaving or a city secretary leaving and you don't have enough time to fill it before that person's gone, it's very common, as the mayor said, you still advertise for the position, but you still have to appoint someone to be interim city secretary to cover those duties for the city while the city goes through the process of filling the position. Uh, but there is no legal requirement that you have to post the position, especially since it's a council appointment.
No, one of the, yes.
Um, we have a policy here that if we go in internally, it needs to be posted fourteen days. And that would be it. Or, you know, we could go out and publicly announce it. But there is a, there is a, um, provision or whatever for the fourteen days.
Now, it's been my experience, you know, close to forty years being in governmental service as well, that, um, and I respectfully disagree with you on your assessment about position. It's incumbent upon us to always know that those positions are always difficult. They are, um, that they do hold a lot of responsibilities, and there's a lot of, uh, guidelines, you know, that we need to follow in order to have a city secretary. What I had a little bit of problem with it, and I, you know, you know, bear with me in the way I'm trying to explain this. But where I had a little bit of problem with it was that there should have been a process knowing, and you and I had a discussion in the very beginning when I came into this position about the possibility that Delia may be retiring, Ms. Sanchez may be retiring by January. So I had prior knowledge that you had shared with me that that may be the case. What was not discussed is the process in which we were going to be undertaking to replace Ms. Sanchez's position when the time came. So there was not really any kind of discussion with myself or the city council to be made aware of the, the plan and the process that you were going to undertake. The way I found out about it was in the last meeting, I went to go check my mail. And when I went to check the mail, it was posted on the inside of the door. And I just felt that a position like this should not be succeeded by somebody else that's internally in the city. I think we need to look outside of the city. And in the interim, using that word, we have the ability to put somebody already with experience in this job. And it just, it'd be a small cost factor. But there are firms that provide interim city secretaries and interim city administrators as well. And those are the, the avenues that I would suggest as mayor of the city that we need to look at and possibly suggest that we should follow that plan. Because what's happening is when you do this internal succession type of positions, not everybody has the opportunity in the city to apply for that job. They may be able to apply for it, but it's already set in stone that that individual that's been pre-selected that perhaps you, Mr. City Administrator, might have already in your purview done. It gives the, um, impression to that employee that, God, I wish I could have applied for that job. I wish I would have had an opportunity to apply for it. But because internally it's already been known and it's already been circulated within our employees of our city, it kind of rubs them in the wrong way that they don't have the opportunity or another person has that opportunity to apply for the job. So the proper thing to do and the traditional method of replacing any employee in the city should be applied in the acceptable equal opportunity employment methods. Go out and advertise this job. Advertise it for, you know, professional, with a professional recruiting agency, the way it should be done. In the meantime, you employ a temporary replacement that has all the skills, all the qualifications and all the certifications necessary to just step in the job. Now, there's always a learning curve. The new person that's going to come in, regardless if you, you decide to go with a, you know, internal, uh, candidate, is still going to have that learning curve, regardless. And the complexities of your job, of the city secretary's job will always be there. It's always a learning curve. But if we bring an outside person in, no affiliation to the city, no connection to the city, we get a fresh start for the city to have an employee present that can start new with no affiliation whatsoever and just moving forward. And that's my suggestion to the city. That's my recommendation. And pretty much the way I have it written is where it's set.
Uh, yeah, mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Lysa, please.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I just want to make a point of clarification. This was not done outside the purview of council. This happened a year and a half ago, and I had a discussion with the existing council about the plans to be able to replace. I knew about her, she told me she was leaving. So I wanted to make everything easier. But like I keep saying, it's the purview of the council, not mine. I'm simply making a suggestion and a recommendation. If the council wishes to go in a different direction, nothing of, of me, not, I don't really care. I'm just making it easier for you guys. The world that I live in, unlike yours, is that this is what we do. We plan for succession with the people within the departments to make sure that we continue, we, we don't lose continuity of business. That's why you do it. In your business, it may be different, but in, in mine, that's what we look for. Business continuity, because you don't want any, any crevices, any cracks when you're delivering the type of service we deliver. That's all.
Well, the only thing I have to respond to that is that, no, 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 but let me, let me respond to your, your, because I want to make sure it's clear. The issue I have is that you went, may have gone to the previous council, but you have a new council now. You have a new mayor now. So your responsibility should have been to come to us again and say, this is what I intend to doing. The previous council authorized, or at least they concurred with me when I presented it. However, in consideration that we have a new council now and we have a new mayor, that we should bring this to your attention again. And what is it that you want us to do? It's clear that the council has the authority. And I'm fully aware of it. I'm fully aware of that. So to not beat it over the head, that's, Mr. Lysa.
Yeah, and, and, and I, I agree with, with, with both sides, and I being retired civil service and understanding the, the flow of continu- continuity and preparing your succession. I think it's a very good plan. I think it works very well. There's opportunities to grow into the system. I believe the system we have is working. I think we should move forward with it just so we can keep the continuity, provided we have a candidate inside within the house that wants the, the, the position. Now, if we don't have the position, then we don't have a candidate that wants to, then by all means, we have to go outside. But if we have the opportunity to help one of our fellow employees succeed and grow and continue to flourish, I'd say let's give them the opportunity to, to move forward. Thank you.
I just want to be careful about the favoritism and, you know, selective.
And, and, okay, and, and, and it, it's a little bit disturbing that anything that's contradictory to what you say is favoritism, is illegal, it's wrong, or everything of that nature. So my, at this point, I'd like to make the motion that we keep going with the practice that we have with a succession plan and, and keep moving forward.
Okay, that's fine. Whatever you are the decision makers, you're the policymakers. I don't, I'm just bringing it to your attention. I'm putting it on the record.
Decision, the first sec, motion and second has been made, discussion, discussion.
Not the mayor, sir. And if you continue, I'm really, really trying to have a lot of patience with you. And we just need to stop this.
Mayor, there's a second, so we need to proceed with that.
Wait a minute. I am controlling this meeting, okay? In accordance to the Roberts Rules of Order, I control this meeting. Let's get this straight once and for all. Stop doing what you're doing. We're trying to conduct a professional meeting here. Okay? And right away, you make statements about I'm doing something, I'm insinuating something illegal. I have not said no such thing. So please, don't do that. It's destructive. And it, it looks, it's almost seeming like both of you, you didn't hear one word I said in the State of the City address. I said, let's work to collaborative, working together. Stop this. It's destructive to our city. I can't tell you any more than that. Quit doing this, both of you. It's destructive, sir.
What did I do?
But you don't even recognize it's really, it's even worse.
What did I do?
That you don't recognize.
I, I seconded his motion, that's it.
Argumentative. You constantly accuse me of things that I'm not doing. And I'm trying to make a point, a valid point, a very intelligent, valid point. Just to give you another perspective, there's no need to say that I'm trying to do something illegal. And I'm always looking at something illegal. Please.
We, he never said you were trying to do anything illegal.
Professional, respect the office. Please respect the office of the mayor and follow parliamentary procedure. Please. Otherwise, I'm going to have you removed from this premises. Do we understand each other?
We're trying to follow.
Do we understand each other?
We're trying to follow.
Do we understand that if you continue to be disruptive? You continue to, to cause this ruckus, then you leave me no other choice than to act the way and speak the way I'm speaking right now. Because I can't allow it to be happening in our city anymore. I've tried to, to really work with you. I've tried to be patient with you. I've tried to be nice to you. Everything I've tried to do, and you guys just keep coming at it and coming at it with no care about what you're doing to our city. So please, I'm going to end it with that. Please, just stop. Stop with this stuff. Let's get down to real city business and let's take care of what we need to do to take care of our city. Okay? Please.
The only thing I was going to say is.
So we have a motion on the table. Let's call the vote for the motion. Do we have a second to that motion?
I already called a second. I was trying to tell you, sir.
Just reassuring, sir. The second motion has been made by Councilman Science. Uh, now we call for.
Well, what was the? I was going to say something before the motions.
Yeah. So what is the original motion you made, Mr. Lysa? What is your motion?
The motion is to keep going with the succession rate that we're going and just keep moving forward the way we have it. We already have everything in place. So my motion is to keep the hiring practice and abide by the policies and ordinances that are already in place.
That's broad. You're not being specific to this specific item that's here right now. You need to be more specific.
We, we need, we, we do need a motion specific for the city secretary, because that's the item that's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda. You're incorrect in your motion, but you do what you want. If you want a second, we got a second to it. Let's get a second to his motion.
I believe he needs to correct his motion to make it specific.
We already called a second, so we have a second on the floor.
Well, it wasn't a val- it wasn't a valid motion, if I understand correct. My understanding was, Mayor, you said that motion was too broad, which I.
Well, I'm just bringing it to attention now after you called a second.
And I agree that it was too broad, and it, because when it was asked to be restated, when I heard that motion the first time, I heard it specifically for the city secretary position to continue the, uh, succession planning. When he restated it, it was very general, very broad, and that's when you pointed it out, and I agree with you, Mayor, that the, the second time he restated it, it was too broad. It was not specific for the city secretary position.
And I believe the first, uh, was the same way, but we could differ on that. It could be one or two words different, but it's not clear. It's not clear to the motion that, to the amendments on the agenda. So, um, at this point, we have a second to his original motion, whether he understood it or not. We've got a motion on the floor and we got a second to that emotion, so we need to have a vote on that motion that he made.
Councilman Val, Valverde?
Councilman Valverde, you want to go ahead?
Yes, I, I was just going to say before the motion was made that, um, I, in my opinion, I, I think we should put the trained person in here temporarily.
Yes.
We need to advertise a position and look at the applicants and see what kind of applicants we get. If we don't get a well-qualified applicant, we'll just retain what we got.
And also now is your chance to amend the salary, to bring it down lower so we can help our budget.
Yes. So I just wanted to say that, that's, that's my opinion. So I, I say we, we still need to advertise a position regardless if we put this, this person or whoever, yeah.
Okay. So your motion, your rather, your, your, would you like to amend your motion?
No.
With his motion, we got a second to it, but he now can amend it if he likes.
No, I just.
And offer another alternative motive to say we keep her as an interim, what I heard, and then advertise for the position. Is that what you were saying, Mr. Valverde?
Yes.
Would you like to do that as an amendment to the original motion?
Yes, yes, I will.
So now we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Valverde. Councilman Valverde's motion is to do an amendment that we hire in the form of utilizing an internal applicant or an internal candidate from the city.
Temporarily.
And then, as an interim, with the language interim, and then advertise for the position as a permanent city secretary. And then we fill the applicants and you choose from your pool of applicant, applicants at that point.
I second.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Councilman Burton has seconded. Now, I will call for the vote.
We need a discussion, we need a, we need discussion again.
Okay, go right ahead. Doesn't he have to accept them?
So I just want to make sure. The original motion was broad.
Was very broad.
Follow, to follow the succession planning, to follow the succession planning and so forth. The item was specific for city secretary.
Correct.
That original motion was seconded. Councilman Valverde, um, with hi- his proposed amendment, which has been seconded, was specific for the city secretary position. And his amendment is to proceed with the succession, succession planning and appoint an internal candidate as interim. And at the same time, city proceed with advertising the position of city secretary. That has been seconded.
Correct. By Councilman Burton.
So now there's discussion. If there's no further discussion, the first thing would be is whether Councilman Valverde agrees or is, is willing to accept that amendment, and if so, then we would vote on amendment, then on the main motion.
Councilman Lysa, are you, uh, acceptable to your colleague's amendment?
If, if I'm understanding correctly, we're going to ask an employee to come, give him a position. We're going to post it and then take the position back away. And we're going to disregard the succession training and everything that's been done. Is that what we're, we're saying?
No, sir. What they're saying is Councilman Valverde's amendment is to follow the succession planning and appoint someone as interim. Since this is a council appointment, Councilman Valverde would still like that position to be advertised. Council review applications, compare those applications with the internal candidate, and then make a decision as to who should be appointed. The taking away the position is a possibility, but that is not a guarantee. It depends on the applications.
On the applicants, okay.
Correct.
So we have a second to the amendment by Councilman Valverde. Let me call a vote for that.
Well, Mr. Lysa needs to accept the amendment.
Which one do we go with, Frank?
Well, he, he can accept it, and that makes it the vote much easier. If he doesn't accept it, we still have to vote on the amendment.
So my question to you is, do you accept your colleague, your colleague's amendment as it stands?
I'm going to say no, because we, we, we need to follow what, what we're working.
So if you don't accept it, then we move on with the vote, correct? With Mr. Valverde's vote. So, uh, the amendment. So we have a first and we have a second to his amendment by Mr. Burton. Let's call the vote. Councilman Valverde?
Yay.
Councilman Science?
Yeah.
Councilman Lysa?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilman Sellers?
Nay.
Nay. Councilman Burton? No, we're going public.
No, for both.
And allowing whoever can.
I, I, continue with the succession plan to hire someone internally on an interim basis at the same time advertising.
Yes, sir. So do we have your vote?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a four, one vote, is that correct? Motion carries. Okay? Thank you, gentlemen, very much for taking care of that. Now we have, um, we have item number fourteen. I think Mr. Peralas was going to speak on this to avoid any further. I think Mr. Peralas was gonna speak on this to avoid any further.
Yeah, I just wanted to make clear that, uh, you know, before you get into the item fourteen and fifteen, uh, I'm going to respectfully decline any extension to my contract so that you don't spend any time or capital on these discussions. So effective September twentieth, that will be my last day. And I just wanna make sure that it's perfectly clear so you can dispense with, with the discussion and our consideration of those two items.
Thank you, Mr. Peralas, very much, let's move on to item number sixteen. Discussion and possible action.
Fifteen.
Oh, excuse me, fifteen. No, I think he said he wanted to do a way with fourteen and fifteen, is that correct?
Both fourteen and fifteen are moot, both fourteen and fifteen are moot points.
That's what I'm saying, I'm trying to get clarification.
Yeah.
Did I hear it right, fourteen and fifteen?
Correct, so fourteen, no action, then for the record, item fifteen, uh, no action.
That is correct, that's what I thought I was right on that, okay, great. So item sixteen, discussion and possible action to amend the Code Book of Ordinances, section thirty-one twenty-seven, to include a requirement that individual filling the role of the city administrator meet the minimum qualifications as detailed in the city administrator job description. Councilman Sines.
Thank you, Mayor, so I believe that we should ensure that whoever fills the, the role of city administrator is qualified to do that, that job. It's a very complex role, oversees multiple positions, city, our fire, police, public works, municipal court, everything, so we can't have somebody that doesn't have the experience necessary to actually fulfill those duties. So, I have, it's included in the job description, but, or in the, um, attachments that Ms. Delia sent with, sent to us earlier this week. But, it has the full description of the job for the city council, or sorry, for the city administrator.
Okay, so just for informational purpose. That, that.
No, it's an action item to.
What is, what do you want?
So I want to amend the Code Book of Ordinances to.
Can you tell me how you'd like to amend it, what is it that you're offering to amend? What, what do you wanna do?
To amend the Code Book of Ordinances, section thirty-one dot twenty-seven, to in, include a requirement that any individual filling the role of city administrator meet the minimum qualifications as detailed in the city administrator job description. So.
I'm a little confused, uh, Frank, can you help me on this? Basically, is he trying to say on this? Uh, he wants to amend the ordinance, the ordinance and the qualifications already are there, right? We haven't?
So there's no qualifications in the ordinance that whoever is filling that role must meet the minimum requirements.
And what are the minimum requirements?
The minimum requirements are, um, sorry.
It's to amend the, the ordinance.
Education, experience, a master's degree, preferably in public administration, or any equivalent combination of experience and training that provides required knowledge, skills and abilities. Uh, seven to ten years of public sector management experience, four of which must have been at either the city manager or assistant city manager, uh, level with significant financial management responsibilities or an equivalent combination of education experience.
Okay, so that, what you just read right now is what we have in our books, correct?
No.
We don't have that.
That's not a requirement of ordinances, so that's what I'm trying to.
Do you wanna amend it to say that?
I'm trying to say that our ordinances should reflect what's in our job description.
Okay. So your ordinance needs to reflect what's in the job.
For anybody filling that role, either full-time or temporary.
Still a little confused.
Yeah, my understanding is that, uh, the, the recommendation is to amend section thirty-one point two seven of the city administrator code of conduct to include the qualifications for the job. The current provision only talks about the duties and responsibilities, but the code book does not identify the qualifications. Uh, the councilman is wanting to include the qualifications in the code book, so it's mandated, but.
There you go, that's what I needed to know. Because I did read it and I didn't see it in there either, and I was like, okay, what is, what are you talking about? I don't see any minimum qualifications.
And that's why they need to be added in.
Language, what he wanted in there.
Right, and that's why it needs to be added in.
I, I see what you're saying now. I can, I clarifies it for you. Anybody?
Just, just to make sure that we're all included, that's for the city administrator and the interim, anyone coming into that position.
Anyone filling that role.
Anyone fill, anyone filling that role, okay.
Excellent research. Excellent research, and I, I make a motion to pass that.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, we have a second to that motion?
Second, second.
Discussion. Councilman Burton, do you have something?
You're, you're really narrowing down the path when you're, when you're saying ten years' experience.
Seven to ten years of public sector management experience.
You know, we're, we're, we've got the sand going through the hourglass, if you will. And we just need to, to let the, whatever firm we decide to go with, vet, vet the, uh, the city manager's position as, they are the experts. I, I'm, I'm, I'm not.
It's already in, it's already in the job description that was sent out to those, those firms. This is just, it's not in the Code Book of Ordinances, which is what I'm adding, suggesting be added.
So, I, I'm, I guess I'm still not getting it, if it's already in the ordinance, is what, what do we need to change?
It's not in the ordinance. It's in the job description. It's in the job description that was sent to those.
The job description.
And not in the ordinance.
This is where I was confused too, Mr. Burton. But I, I get it, I know what he's doing now. He's, he's putting specific specifications in addition to the job description. There are specifications that he is requesting us, the council, to vote for, uh, that makes the minimum requirement ten years, is that correct?
Seven to ten years, as stated in the job description.
And, and so, if I may, Mr. Burton, let me know when I can, you know, when you're finished, and I'd like to just comment.
Okay, say we get a good applicant, he's six years' experience, are you, are you gonna say no?
Well, it's six years, it's.
Seven to ten years.
Yeah, and it also has, or an equivalent combination of education experience. So six years, and I've got two master's degrees, and well, we can kind of look at him. If I, but if he only has one year, fresh out of college with a master's degree or a bachelor's degrees, he shouldn't be considered.
Okay. I understand.
Why, where, where did you get this information from on the requirements and come up with the numbers of seven to ten?
I didn't come up with the numbers for seven to ten years, this is the city administrator job description.
You're confusing me.
It's.
So, wait a minute.
It's, it's in your packet.
It, it, it's in the packet.
It's in the packet, I mean, you could do research on it and find out, and it was provided to you. So it says, city of Balcony sites, job description, job title, city administrator, EEOC category, official slash administrative, FLSA exempt, revised date, ten twenty-four, twenty twenty-two, so this is almost two years old. Okay, so it.
Mr. Sines, I did read it, I, I looked at it, I still didn't understand it, that's why.
So I didn't come up with this, this is twenty twenty-two.
See, and I didn't know.
I wasn't even on city council at the time.
I didn't know. I'm just asking, and I'm just trying to inquire, to gather more intelligence, make an informed decision, that's all. Please don't be offended, I'm not trying to offend you.
The, the last time the city council went out for city administrator, the council members all received copies of the older job description, they all provided input and adopted a new job description, the job description that Councilman Sines is referring to was the job description that the council approved the last time it went out looking for city administrator.
There it is, that's what it is. The last council. Okay, so, um, you think maybe Councilman Sines, have you considered maybe? Um, or would you consider it possibly, that might be a little restrictive, maybe we should open it up a little bit more? Maybe get a better pool of candidates? Um, it might be receptive, and even if you don't like them, you can weed them out at that time? But you give yourself a little bit more wiggle room, would you consider doing that?
Well, I'm just going by what's on.
I know, but would you consider amending that? Being that the last council proposed it and it was adopted, would you consider amending that to not make it so restrictive? Give it a little bit more opening for maybe a better pool of candidates? And then you can field them, look at them, doesn't mean you have to choose them, but you've got a better pool of candidates that might be able to.
Well, I would, I wouldn't consider somebody with, with a minimum of experience a, a better pool, it's a wider pool.
That's what I was asking, so you wouldn't consider.
Wider pool, but it's not a deeper pool, I wouldn't, no.
Councilman Valverde?
No, I was just gonna say, I mean, that would have to, we would have to vote on changing the job description because all he's doing is putting what's on the job description here.
Then I was just asking, would you consider maybe?
Yeah.
You know, changing that and then making a little.
Well, I don't, I don't consider having a thousand applicants necessarily better than having ten really good applicants.
No, we're not gonna have a thousand.
I'm, I'm just using it as, as an example. Having many, many more applicants does not necessarily meaning, mean we'll have many more quality candidates.
Point taken, thank you. Councilman Lesea?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good, correct.
All right, so, um, is there any amendments by anybody in the council for this, or you wanna move forward with the, uh, motion that was made? Do we have?
Move forward for the sake of time.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Yes, sir.
We did, Mr.
So we had a council, we opened it up for discussion, any other discussion? Okay, so let's call for the vote, Councilman Valverde?
Yay.
Councilman Sines?
Yeah.
Councilman Lesea?
Yeah.
Councilman Sellers?
Yay.
Councilman Burton?
Yay.
Okay, uh, five oh, motion carries. Uh, four, four to one, I'm sorry. Four to one, motion carries, thank you, gentlemen, for your attention to this matter. Okay, discussion and action to discuss, address concerns to retain Davidson, Proio, Ream, and Garza to conduct search for city administrator and the potential conflict of interest under the Texas Rules of Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct. Mayor, uh, so, uh, Mr. Garza?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Um, the mayor and I spoke on Friday with regards to this item, because I, I needed to get some clarification, the mayor clarified his concerns with regard to the law firm, or my law firm, providing ancillary services that are not legally related. Uh, he believed, based on his communication with, uh, uh, attorneys and so forth, that he thought it was a conflict. Um, I spent the weekend researching the matter, um, and found that, under the professional rules of conduct, um, law firms are allowed, uh, to provide, uh, services that are not legal-related. I'll give examples, the law firm of Denton Navarro, one of my fa, fa, uh, friendly competitors, they provide planning services to cities that do not have planners. Um, uh, the law firm of, um, Al, Allen, uh, and I can't remember, lost his last name, but. Yes, Barkett Twist, uh, they provide demography services to municipalities that are going through redistricting plans and so forth. Um, so, the fact that of providing services to the city on, uh, the assistance of provi, uh, providing assistance on the hiring of a new city administrator. It was not recruiting services, because we do not go out and recruit. All we do is we get the council to approve a job description, we advertise, uh, on behalf of the city for that, we collect the resumes. We do not recruit, all we do is collect the resumes. Some recruiting firms, uh, uh, filter the resume cities received that may not meet the minimum qualifications, or they believe don't meet the minimum qualifications. We provide you every single resume, we just categorize them with city manager experience, city administrator experience, city experience, leadership experience. No experience, doesn't meet the qualifications, but we provide you all. But, at the same time, um, I've been practicing law thirty-seven years, I've never had, uh, a state bar complaint filed against me. My law firm, uh, when talking to the partners and so forth, they haven't, it's been over thirty-five years since any complaints have been filed against the firm. Uh, the amount we were going to charge to do this was, was not, uh, a financial windfall for this, for my law firm. So at this stage, uh, gonna follow the, the lead of, 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 of Mr. Peralas and our firm will decline, uh, the opportunity to provide those services to the city uh, and allow the city to select their own consultant to, do the search for city administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Guardian, so that would eliminate, um, items number, um, the same as Mr. Peralas.
We have a discussion.
Eliminate number, um, seventeen and eighteen, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Do we have a discussion?
No, I think it's a moot point, uh, there's no need to beat it over the head. Mr. Garza has, has stated that he is not interested in.
Right, but he, he made, he made a comment that, uh, got my attention, so I just wanted clarification on that. He made reference to the bar and not having complaints, I'm not sure what, what that, what that entailed or what that meant. Over thirty-five years and not having complaints with, with a bar, so I'm not sure what, what that.
In, in my discussion with the mayor on Friday, he, he believes that it is a violation of the Texas Rules of Disciplinary Action. And so he might have, he was considering pursuing a complaint if we were to be retained.
Okay.
And so, at, at this stage, the, my firm has just decided, my partners and I had the discussion, it was not worth pursuing the work.
Okay, thank you, so, so in, in essence, you've been forced out of the equation, and with that, I'll, I'll, I'll close.
I think that's an incorrect interpretation, just for clarification, so you understand what transpired, Mr. Lesea, so you have no misunderstanding.
I think, I think you said it was a moot point, and, uh, the question I needed from the attorney has been answered. So I'd like to call the question.
Okay, yeah, so you can't call the question on it, because there's no votes, sir, under parliamentary procedures, so let me just quickly, shortly, make a point. What I told Mr. Garza is I said, even the mere appearance of acting as an employment, either agency recruitment, whatever you wanna call it, it was a conflict of interest, period, not necessarily just the Texas Disciplinary Rules of Conduct, but as a matter of, of being, I, I know, you guys always tell me, my investigator, I've been doing this for forty years. When you have a law firm that is representing the interests of the city, and then he acts as an armature of an employment engagement, regardless of whatever manner that it's done, is now a component of the city affairs and businesses he's conducted. So, let's just take, for example, this is the most simplistic way I can give it to you to understand. And that is that, when you have a city attorney operating under the guise and cap of a city attorney, and then there is a person who's hired, and then they go south, let's just use that term, meaning that they don't work out, they wanna sue the city, well, guess what? Not only is the city gonna be sued, now whether they prevail or not is irrelevant, then they may sue Mr. Garza's firm as in acting of an arm of us, as a third party, now that's just a possibility. So what I mentioned to Mr. Garza was, why put yourself in that position? And, you know, we went a little engagement about the possibilities of, I don't think it's the Texas Rules of Disciplinary Procedure, and I said, well, the only way to find out is for me to file a complaint with the bar, and then the bar will be able to give us clarification. So that there is no guessing, and this way they can make a statement, well, that means that a complaint will be filed and it is in the form of an inquiry as well, and that would subject his firm, and I told him, you really want to put your firm in that position for this objective that the council is trying to achieve? And he said, I'll think about it.
Okay, and, 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 and I like the way, the, the way you think on some things and not, not others. Now, you, by your assumption that it's a conflict of interest, we've now added twenty thousand dollars, a twenty thousand dollar deficit. Now, on, on the same concept, I'm a little confused how that is a conflict, but not the presentation we received earlier from a vendor that you wanted to bring in that doesn't provide that service. And with, with that, I'll, I'll leave you perplexed and try and figure out what I'm talking about.
And if I may retort in my answer, very quickly, yeah. I'll may retort and we'll close with this, okay?
Thank you.
There'll be no more further discussion after this. That vendor that you're referring to, sir, is, I'm trying to strict, strictly stick to the traditional methods of hiring an individual, as I mentioned earlier on the city secretary job. It's incumbent upon us to use the traditional industry-accepted manner into hire professional individuals such as the ones that are in such important positions for our city. So, all we need to do is you need to calculate, if you were to keep Mr. Peralas on board for three months.
I think, I think, I think we're ready to move forward, it's a moot point, it's a moot point, you've made your point, let's move forward.
I have not, I'm gonna make it for you.
You're interested on, on not saving money, you're interested in doing things that only paying for your, if, if that's your choice, if that's your.
All right, just listen, please. This is the logic behind, the illogical behind what you're doing. If we have Mr. Peralas stay on for three more months, which you were probably considering to find a new replacement at almost thirteen thousand dollars a month, because his salary is twelve thousand and change, it's very close to thirteen thousand dollars a month that we're paying him. All right, you wanna save the city money, but you wanna keep him on, or you were considering keeping him on for three months, then you were gonna pay Mr. Garza an additional five thousand dollars. That's close to fifty thousand dollars you were gonna have to spend, as opposed to hiring a professional executive firm for eighteen thousand dollars to select a suitable candidate. Where does the math work that way? You see why our city's in trouble? Because you're not thinking on how to manage the proper money. So with that, we'll close out.
There you go, thank you.
We're done, we're done. Let's move on to the next item. So item seventeen and eighteen, they are. So, item seventeen and eighteen, they are items that no longer need to be discussed. Let's move to the more important one of the nineteen, discussion and action to not outsource the Balcony Heights Police and Fire Dispatch Services. I am, and I told you that I was going to fight this tooth and nail, I do not want our city services to be outsourced. What is the purview of the council on this?
I think this is a discussion that's better suited for our budget meeting, where we can discuss different options to pay for this, because we can't just say, yes, we're going to keep them without having the options to offset that cost.
And with that, no motion, I, I, I'd like to make the motion that we table this indefinitely, or until we're done with the budget, because we cannot make this decision without our budget in place. It, it, it's, to me, ridiculous to try and kill something that's a budgeted item. We have to study the budget first. We cannot eliminate, we cannot, we can choose what we're going to outsource or what we're going to keep. We have to follow the budget process. If it comes to that, we, we're still going to have time to discuss, but I think it's premature to try and eliminate the outsourcing of dispatch. It's still a discussion, we haven't, we still have to agree to it, but to try and kill it for not wanting to make a decision, I think is a very bad choice.
The other discussion?
Uh.
We have, you made a motion.
And I, I made, I made a motion to, to table, to table.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have second motion by Sines. Now, let's open it up for more discussion. Councilman Burton, go right ahead.
Uh, something was said earlier, and I, I don't remember who said it, uh, about, you know, we have a, the two-hundred-and-thirty-dollar, two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar deficit to, uh, and, and doing, outsourcing the Balcony Heights, uh, dispatch would, would take care of that shortfall. Well, that, that's, that's not necessarily true, because you're still going to have to pay the entity, whether it's Bear Metro or, or whoever. Uh, the other, the other thing is, uh, one of the people spoke up out here about, you know, it, it's just, you know, or, or one of the council members, I can't, it's a long night, excuse me, um, that, uh, you know, they're talking about, once they get the, the call, that they dispatch, you know, immediately. Well, that's not the problem. The problem is the queue. The queue, when that phone sits there and rings and rings and ring and says, thank you for calling, we are experiencing high call volumes, that's time, and that's either lives or, or the difference between getting, trying to catch criminal activity or not catching criminal activity. Uh, I, I think, uh, it was said by, uh, one of our council members, and, and I, I kind of agree with this, once, once you do away with, with the Balcony Heights, uh, dispatch, you will never replicate it. You won't be able to, it won't be cost-effective. I think Mr. Rodriguez, uh, and our former mayor had, had mentioned about the, um, Bear Metro coming in and redoing our equipment, I think that's great. All we have to do is staff it, and, uh.
If I may, Jack.
Hold on, I, I know the question you're going to ask me, I bet. Uh, where are we going to get the money?
No, that wasn't the question I was going to ask.
Well, Karnak was wrong. Go ahead.
You, you were going to. Yeah, I was going to say, the most expensive thing is the staffing. It's not the equipment so much, it's, it's the staffing. Um, and we can't go on a pipe dream that we're going to have a bunch of entities come in and say, yes, we want Bear, Balcony Heights to dispatch out for us. Okay, we, if we don't have anybody already saying, yes, we want to, we can't just go on a wing and a prayer and say, maybe they will if we upgrade our equipment, or if we hire more staff.
No, if we upgrade our equipment, we're not going to need to, because it'll go away. It'll, it'll, it'll just, Balcony Heights Dispatch will disappear, and we'll never have it again. But, uh, you know, where can we find the money from? I, I still haven't heard about the sale of Alt Gelt Properties, and to, to get us through to, to the next budget for twenty-five, uh, or for, for twenty-six, I should say. Um, you know, that's, that property right there would help, but you're still going to have to pay at least, what is it going to be if, if we outsource? How much would it be, a hundred thousand, a hundred fifty thousand? So.
The, the net that Mr. Peralas shared last, in the last budget meeting, was about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, potential savings, or the, the savings, the ballpark.
I just asked him.
Yeah, you know, you asked him what the expense would be, or.
But, at, at any rate, there, there's going to be, there's going to be a shortfall anyway. So, uh, what do the citizens want? Well, they're not around right now because of all the.
Ten-thirty at night.
Because of all the, uh, the length of the meeting that we promised we weren't going to stack this agenda like this, but, um, it, it's your privy. If you want to table it, table it. But, you know, I, 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 again, you're giving me all these reasons not to, give me a reason how we can. Help, help me help you.
That's what I'm asking the mayor to do.
He, he doesn't have any say-so, and he's the mayor.
He can provide ideas. He's saying we need to cut staff, but he won't say what staff to cut.
Never said we had to cut staff.
You've said it multiple times.
Okay, not, not, I have a gal.
Go ahead.
Uh, let's not get into that, that debate. Let, let's, let's, let's try and find a way. Let, let's, 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 let's have, I, that's what we're, us four up here, let's have ideas, not just ambiguously say, hey, we, we got a two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar shortfall, let's just get rid of it, you know?
And what I've said, if we can find a way to sustain savings over the period, because if we, if we cut, if we find a way to cut two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars.
Best, at best, what you're going to do is sustain it for a year.
That's my point. If we just find cutting here, cutting there, we're going to be in the same boat, but worse next year, because the dispatch expenses are going to be five-hundred-thousand dollars instead of four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. But, so, if we, if we manage to cut office supplies, and we cut our fire and over, and police overtime, or we don't fill the three, three open positions we have on the fire or in the police department right now.
No, no, okay.
Then, yeah, we could potentially make that, that two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar shortfall, but next year, we're in the, the same boat and, but worse.
Hey, we're, we're up here to make the tough decision, buddy.
That's what I'm saying.
Right, and, and that, and that's, that, that, that's what I'm saying. We, we cannot make a, a decision to kick the decision or to eliminate a possibility.
Every year is going to be like that.
Exactly, exactly. So, what, what, what I want to do is say, no, we're not, we're not going to take this off the table, because we cannot take it off the table. We've talked that there's a possibility that we can find funding, but I think we cannot take this off the table. I mean, I mean, we, 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 we cannot, and no, I, my, well, my motion is to table this until after the budget cycle, and then we'll, we'll take it from there.
Kick the can down the road.
Yes, and what I'm, I put it on.
Kicking the can down the road is, let's not do anything, let's do something.
Let's just wait for next year, so we can kick it again, and kick it again, and kick it again.
Every year, you're going to kick it. Every, and every year in the past, since I've been off council, it's been kicked down the road. It, there's, there's always been this discussion.
And, and that's what we're saying, it's time to stop kicking the can. It's time to stop kicking the can. I'm not, I'm, I'm not saying, I said, let's do what we're doing now, but we need to unifiedly collaborate, so we can work on it.
He has the floor, let him finish.
If you get rid of it, there's going to be something else down the road that you're going to have to kick the can on. You know, right now, we're kicking, we've got a big kick to make, which is Hillcrest, and I, I, I had no orientation coming up here, uh, knowing, I thought Hillcrest was off, off the table. It wasn't until Mr. Gillian said, hey, you've already received a check, and where is that check?
It's okay, we, we're just.
We have not physically received a check.
What we got, no need to respond, of the action.
Okay, I, I, I'll retract that.
Okay.
Uh, but, just, you know, I, I, I think, I think this should be a number-one priority. I, I think the citizens that were here earlier would have, would agree with me, and, and, uh, you know, if, if that's, you're going to do what you're going to do, I'm not going to twist your arm, but I, I, I don't, I don't think we should outsource the, the dispatch. And with that, I, I yield.
So, um, again, this item is on here to force you to come up with a solution, because you're, you are kicking the can down the road, believe it or not. And by your mere actions and your own statements that you've made in this meeting, and in the last meeting, we all know where you're headed. You want to get rid of our dispatch, it's a fact, no doubt.
I don't want to get rid of anything.
Well, let's just call it, outsource our dispatch.
I want to find savings.
Yeah, and you're looking at outsourcing our dispatch, it's probably what it is. Be man enough and then come tell the public what you're doing.
We, we are, okay.
I have clearly stated what my position is. We have a two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar budget shortfall.
We all know that.
We are not going to nickel and dime our way to doing it. We're not going to, we cannot cut police overtime, we cannot cut fire overtime. That will leave our citizens in, in peril, okay? We can't pull from our, our general fund savings to pay for it. Even Mr. Burton thought that was a bad idea when you suggested that at the last meeting.
Guess what?
Suggested that we pull money from the general fund.
Well, it was just idea that I was throwing out for you guys.
Right, but, but it's not, it's not, it's not a viable idea.
Okay, but.
We're not going, we're not going to cut our office expenses, okay? We can't cut enough reams of paper out of our budget.
We realize that.
Okay, so, the major expenses we have are city staff. That's our biggest expense, as Mr. Messick, uh, has presented several times. It's what, seventy percent of our budget-ish?
What I said.
Seventy-two percent.
That's where our problem lies.
Exactly, but, so.
And, and the amount of employees we have in our city.
The amount of employees we have. So I'm asking you, if there's other employees we can cut, who are they?
No, but I said to you.
You said we need to, we need to reduce our cities' or, or salary expenses.
We need to do an audit, we have to have a professional firm come in, advise us, give us direction, do a study, look at all of the positions that we have, to see if a city of our size should be having the amount of employees we have, and the rate of salary that we're paying our employees. So this is where you misconstrue, and you always misconvey what I say. It's very clear what I said. So we're going to end that conversation now, we're no longer going to move forward. I want to hear.
I think it's.
From Mr. Lysia, please, sir, you need to ask and be recognized.
May I be recognized?
No, you may not. Uh, Police Chief, man, would you put up, provide some input on your department, please, sir? We've never heard from you, and I'd like to hear your input, because it affects your department and also the fire department. Would you kindly provide some input for us?
Oh, well, Mayor, I, I know this has been a, a, a delicate discussion. Uh, we've, we've had this discussion, uh, nine years ago, uh, we moved three years past that with a former council, uh, with our former, uh, mayor. Uh, it, it's always been a, a item of discussion, like I said. Uh, it's very sensitive, because as earlier, as we heard from our lieutenant, uh, they've been doing research from the officers, and, um, I think everyone's trying to put into the pot. I, I haven't had an official sit-down with them, but you can always pretty much check that box with them, with officers, and then with dispatchers. They don't want to be outsourced, so, uh, but, this is something that we've talked about for years. I know when, um, Mr. Harris had left, that was always a discussion. I know when Mr. Peralas had come in, uh, he gave us a laundry list of what we need to cut back because of the twenty-twenty-five year that what we're facing and budget. I think I've spoken to residents, I've spoken to everyone on council before, uh, to feel what their, what our options are, uh, what we can do. I, I know we've discussed fire services, police services, um, things, things will be different. Uh, I think if, uh, somebody had said earlier, uh, give me reasons why we can, don't give me reasons why we can't on certain items, uh, it's going to be a change. Uh, I don't want to be the person that's going to sit here and throw a tantrum, but it'll be different, excuse me, from what we know of now. So, um, will it be bad? I, I can't say that. Uh, will it be better? We may embrace it, and it may be better, we may not even know a difference if we go that route. The thing is, is that it's going to be different from something that we've always, we've always, um, been used to, picking up the phone and speaking up to a live dispatcher. Uh, there is a call tree, it's a little bit different from Bear County. Uh, the only thing I, I'll end it with is just, uh, a neighboring city was in our particular spot several years back with a good friend of mine that was their, uh, police chief. Uh, what they did, because it sounded like it was a split decision as well, it was council, it was the residents, uh, having to make this decision that what we're going through right now, uh, what they did is they initiated a call through Bear County, and, uh, the outcome was, okay, look at what we're going to go into by just initiating one call. We usually have a response time of two minutes, I know fire is pretty quick, so after they got the result, excuse me, from that, they decided to keep their, their dispatch services. So, uh, I, I just think, uh, whatever direction you want us to head in, I know Mr. Peralas and I have done, uh, other cities to try to get us a good consensus, uh, with Halotas, with, uh, Castle Hills, um, it looks like Bear County's probably going to be the better option, like he's explained, uh, in, in former council meetings, but, uh, I, I think research, and if anyone needs any of the data, if, uh, if there's anything else that we need to provide before y'all make that decision, or to help that decision easier for y'all, I, I don't want to sit in your chairs, because I know it's hard, but, um, whatever we have to do, and I'm sure I can probably speak for Fire Chief, but, uh, to make that transition for us, we're going to make it the best possible for our residents, for our city, uh, whether it's to keep our dispatch, or whether it's to outsource, um, because we have to make it work. So, uh, I, I mean, I'm happy to open, add for any questions that are floating out there, because there's a lot of moving parts in this.
Captain Manokeen, you have some input, please, in less than five minutes, just three minutes.
Fire Chief.
Fire Chief.
So, what I would suggest, or what my outlook on it, is contrary to what we want to do with the budget, if we're going to keep dispatch, I think they need to be better trained and better paid, because they could, there's a revolving door down there. There's no incentive there for them to stay, but we're loyal to them, you know, does that make any sense? And that's all I got, is that.
Councilman Sellers.
Can you tell me how much dispatcher gets paid yearly now? And how many dispatchers we have?
Yes, sir.
I've been here too.
So, we, we have five, five full-time, so there's four full-time dispatchers with one supervisor, and we have two part-times as of right now.
Why do we have that many?
Because of the shifts that they work, and then with days off as well. So they, what they do is they, the supervisor is basically for administrative duties, but you also have to take in consideration all the extra duties, and, um, I, I'm not sure if I've shared that with everyone, um, but they just don't answer calls, there's so many other things that we have in running, as far as, uh, our impound services, uh, auctions, validations, uh, there's so much that goes in the dispatch world that I, that I learned as, when we took over through my years of promotions here, uh, but there's just so much that just goes in besides, like I said, just dispatching and answering calls.
I, I just think that's too many employees for dispatch. You have, you have three employees, eight to four, four to twelve, and twelve to eight, it's three eight-hour shifts. What's wrong with that?
Mr. Sellers, you also have to account for sick time and personal time off, et cetera.
Uh. For being recognized. Mr. Sellers still have the floor.
I just wanted to know, I, I'm just saying, there's too many employees, uh, for dispatch. We're talking about cutting down people. Uh, you're talking about replacing Delia, hiring somebody to replace Delia, you have Lisa right there, train her, we don't need to hire anybody else. We have enough staff that to take care of a city of ten thousand people. We've got to cut back somewhere. Why don't you train Lisa to take her job? Why don't you cut back on the dispatch employees?
Mr. Sellers, so just to answer your question, dispatch, dispatch supervisor makes seventy-two-thousand-five-hundred total compensation. The four dispatchers, they make from sixty-six thousand fifty-four to sixty-eight thousand twenty-six, benefits and all that. They have a fifty-thousand-dollar overtime budget, just in case. So, between the overtime for the police department, the fire chief, and the, um, dispatch is about a hundred and ninety thousand. So, I kind of respectfully disagree with what was said earlier, but.
The total is about a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars.
Excuse me, Mr. Sines, again, I'm going to have to have you removed, this is your last warning, stop doing that. You need to ask me to be recognized. Respect parliamentary procedure.
May I be recognized?
Oh, you may not.
Thank you.
Um, not because of the fact you're going to be disruptive again. Now, will you promise to be not disruptive and not continue doing what you're doing right now? I will recognize. Will you promise me not to keep interrupting?
May I answer that question?
You may be recognized.
Thank you, sir. I, I was trying to provide information and rebut some informa-, some inaccurate information you provided. It is not 190,000 dollars in overtime. It's about 117,000 dollars in total overtime for the budget. 114,000 of that was police and fire dispatched.
Again, I didn't say it was. I told you that was in total compensation package. That is what Mr. Floyd Messick provided.
Right, but I was talking about the, I was referring to the overtime and you mistated that.
Well, no, it was said in.
It's about, it's about $3,000 for the city staff.
Was $50,000 overtime. Okay? I just provided what was provided to me from Mr. Messi. So, Mr. Burton, go right ahead. Let's wrap it up.
Does the, the dispatch supervisor dispatch as well? Yes, sir. So let's, let's play the devil's advocate here. Uh, dispatch goes away. Who's going to handle all the other, the impounds, the, the, the other stuff that, that that one person is overseeing? So with the information that we gathered, uh, we're probably the, probably between maybe two to three employees that we're going to, uh, retain to handle everything, all the other services plus the non-emergency calls on, on the plan that we're on now. Uh, because there is a chance that Bear County is going to start charging for the 911 calls versus the non-emergency calls and the self-initiated, which non-emergency self-initiated, our officers are through the roof. Uh, we keep them working and, uh, functioning at all times. Uh, all the cities that we've gone to, uh, when we were trying to get our dispatch outsourced, I looked at the numbers and even though we're seven tenths of a square mile, they've looked at the numbers and, and they're astonished on how much work that the officers produce. Uh, and, and we've had these discussions before. It's everything that comes through our city. We don't really have problems with our residential. Besides that, I won't get into that. But so I think when we looked at it, Mr. Pedales says, hey, let's go ahead and we'll just retain three, two to three positions and it'll be what C just requires on validations. And that comes in from anything from, uh, stolen vehicles, missing persons, uh, and that's a yearly audit, but the records have to be maintained. That's one person, but then that doesn't include the non-emergency calls and the self-initiated. So, uh, we'll have to figure that portion out. And then all the 911 or emergency calls will go to Bear County as of now, what we're thinking. When you say two to three employees, are you, are you saying two to three police officer employees or are you saying staff that's not police?
These are my numbers, you know, that he's trying to reference. So po- part of the, part of the information I provided includes maintaining some staff which are at the dispatcher level or less, uh, and not necessarily full-time, but part-time to be able to handle all the other ancillary, uh, business that we handle. The auction, the siege is required, uh, information. So all that is, is all encompassing in the numbers that I've provided. All that is covered. Nothing changes in the numbers. It's just, it's just exactly what I, what I sent you guys.
So that's in the $230,000?
The, the number that I gave you as a savings is a, is a, is a net savings. Yeah.
Thank you. From the horses now, that's, that's better. Thank, thank you.
In closing, Chief, um, when we spoke, and I just want a clarification from you because you mentioned, or you told me one thing and, uh, right now I hear a little softer version. So you told me that you were not in favor of outsourcing our dispatch services and that you were prepared to come to the city council and provide the information to tell them why you were not in favor of outsourcing the dispatch. Now I'm hearing a little bit different, that you've been in conversation with Mr. Pedales and now it's more of a softer approach instead of I'm totally against outsourcing dispatch. It doesn't matter whether you do it or not. You have hard decisions in the city council to do it and we just have to deal with it as it come forth. So can I get clarification from your position? Are you for outsourcing our dispatch or are you for keeping our dispatch here?
No, sir. I've never been in favor of outsourcing our dispatch through the nine years. Can I, can I follow up with that?
Yes, sir, of course.
So, but this is something that's going to affect our city. So as a personal like view of maintaining dispatch. So there's, I, I keep saying there's so many working parts of this, but if it's going to sustain our city, uh, if we're not going to lose it, as, uh, y'all have said, we're going to go to the city of San Antonio. They're going to take us over. Uh, the first council meeting night, I, I did address all of y'all and I asked that y'all had a big decision for y'all all to come together and to, uh, because of the 2025, uh, layoffs, if you want to say, or cutbacks. So it's going to change, uh, when we go to Bear County. Uh, only because I have, I know other chiefs, I know other cities. If y'all are ready to take those changes and adapt to those changes, by all means, I'll take my orders. I've never been insubordinate. Uh, we'll move in that direction. So I'm waiting for y'all's direction on what y'all want to do. Uh, like I said, we've been with Mr. Pedales, uh, even with our former city manager. He's wanted us to go out and get data, get numbers, uh, work with these other agencies. I've done it before. Uh, Mr. Harris didn't have a very good run when we announced this to our employees a couple of years back. Uh, but I stood side by side with him. Uh, that's, that's my, that's my job. And, uh, so my.
The bottom line answer is you don't want the police dispatch services to be outsourced. You're not in favor.
It's a trick question.
Well, Mr. Lesea. I'm going to, I'm going to instruct you in another minute to remove this man. Okay? He's being disruptive to the meeting. I've warned him numerous times. Next one, you're going to be removed. Understand? Okay.
Just to end it, Mayor, but I, we can make it work.
Okay.
We can make it work if that's what y'all decide that we want to do.
Yes, sir. I think we can move on. Let's get on to the next item of the agenda. We have a.
I don't think we've voted on it.
Yes, we have. We have a motion on the floor. We have a motion and we have a second to it. So now let's call the vote for tabling the item that was on the agenda. Councilman Valverde.
Yay.
Councilman Science.
Yay.
Councilman Lesea.
Yes.
Councilman Sellers.
Yay.
Councilman Burton. Table the item indefinitely. Indefinitely.
I have to the next budget cycle.
You want it on the next budget cycle? Okay, to the next budget cycle.
Well, actually I said to the next budget meeting.
Swan.
Okay.
Right.
So that means almost indefinitely you got to wait for next year.
Move it to the next budget meeting.
So you have to amend it now.
Hmm?
You have to amend that motion.
Okay, the motion was, the motion was.
If it's going to simplify it.
The motion was to table to the next budget cycle. That was the motion I heard and that's what I heard seconded. So far we have four votes in favor of that motion.
Cycle. So you're going to have to amend it or you're going to wait till next year?
That is currently the item is to, um, to table until the next motion cycle.
Nay.
Okay, so what are we going to do about that? Um, that you're meaning that you want to take this out, this subject now because you didn't correctly state it in your motion is that now you're saying you want this item to be considered and discussed in the next year's cycle of budget cycle, not this one.
In a city council meeting. We still have budget meetings coming up where we have to discuss our budget.
Stick to the motion at hand. Didn't make the proper motion. You made a motion that was adopted by the city council now for the next fiscal year, not the next meeting or the next budget cycle.
Mr. Pedales? To be able to help you, budget cycle for next year starts October 1st. So, so it, it, it is not, it doesn't necessarily mean the next budget meeting in 2025. The budget cycle starts October 1st.
Right, but we still have to adopt the budget this cycle.
E- exactly. So, you know, the, it, it, in the previous fiscal year, we move forward with looking for an opportunity to outsource. The budget was approved with a full year funding of, of the, uh, of, of dispatch with the understanding that if we found a solution to outsource, that we would come back and amend the budget at that point. That's still an option. So you can still move forward with approving the budget with a full, with, with full funding for dispatch with whatever decisions we have to make on, uh, accommodations to be able to, to achieve a balanced budget. And if you decide to move forward with an outsourcing, then you simply come back and amend the budget at that point because the numbers are not going to be the same. If I, if I outsource in, in March, then the savings are not going to be 200 and about thousand, it's going to be half of that.
That's right.
So those are the things that, that you have to consider. If, even if you decided today to outsource, nothing will happen for the next four, five, six months. You just, just understand that.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Pedales. And so I'm on the record unequivocally. I do not want to outsource our dispatch services and I'm going to fight through it tooth and nail to keep our services in our city. Charlie, if you can make it very short, uh, very short, then we'll move on.
We're going to put this on the ballot. It won't be this November. It'd be in May. We can't do that? To not outsource our dispatch, the citizens?
No, sir.
Cannot do that?
You can do it as a campaign issue.
A general law city doesn't have the authority to call a referendum election.
So you can just do it on the campaign for the next election or the candidates that are up for next, the next election?
But, but here's.
Be taken up as an issue.
Okay, thank, thank you, Frank.
Okay.
But the issue is why can't you outsource the staff here for another city? Why aren't you thinking that way? Why can't, why can't our dispatch handle another city? Why aren't you thinking about that?
Mayor, may I be recognized?
No, I think we're going to finish as I mentioned, Mr. Would you like an answer?
Mr. White was looking directly at me when he was asking.
Yeah. Excuse me, sir. Would you like an answer from him?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead, Mr..
Yes, thank you. Mr. White, um, that's something that the mayor has, has proposed several times, but he's not brought forth any entities that are wanting to come to us. So, um, Castle Hills isn't going to come to us and a smaller city and ask us to do their dispatch. Leon Valley is not going to come to us. We would end up, he hasn't proposed or, or said any entities or any municipalities that are willing to come to us. So that's not something that is even right now on the horizon. So we can't continue where we're at hoping that somebody will eventually come to us.
The bottom line is that if you, do you go to Bear County or whatever, you're going to have to pay. If the savings is only 100,000 or 150,000 dollars.
250.
I doubt that. When they looked at it years ago, the savings was not that much.
Mr. White, just for clarification purposes, he's not really giving you the proper information. You see, when you have the steps that we took, I, I took an initiative to try to help our city and I went and looked for resources for a possible answer for us to, you know, not our source, but have, be us as a source, upgrade our equipment, all of the things necessary to do it with. That's the first step. What Mr. Science expects me to do is miraculously provide these individuals right after that. It's a process. They had to come over and evaluate our dispatch. They had to come over and look where the chairs were going to be placed. The new workstations that I got for them. We have a collaborative, uh, relationship with 911. They're willing to help us. They were going to give us all the tools and they still aren't. Give us all the tools necessary to complete this task. The secondary phase of this was going to be now, let's talk about what are there cities that we can utilize to be able to start drawing revenue. They were going to identify those cities for us and bring them to us. So it can't be done overnight. You can't expect me to bring it in the next council meeting because we first of all had to go just get the equipment first. There's a step process. So when you say the mayor has not brought this to me, the mayor has not done this, it's not me that's in control of that. It's the 911 services that there's a step process that we have to follow. And that's what it is. The next process will be once the equipment's in our system, it is upgraded and we have top of the notch equipment in place for free plus the chairs and the workstation to make it more easier for the dispatch services. Now the next step is let's generate those revenue sources, identify them, and they were going to bring us to the table with those sources and be able to give us that source of revenue. So when you look at it, it's a plan. It's a step plan. So for me to be wanting or being able to bring it to you miraculously like you're wanting me to and make you, making the public think like the mayor did not give us this, the mayor did not do this, this and that, this is why. Well, that's not the truth. The truth is it's beyond my control. I'm, I'm have to take the steps necessary. First step was to getting the equipment. Everything else now it's, we're getting that in place. Next step would have been identify the resources to help our community. But at least I'm trying. I'm trying to come up with ideas. I'm trying to help our city. What have you brought to the table that you can say that you're helping our city draw revenue for us? You haven't brought one single, you or Mr. Lesea, not one single item on the agenda that has tried to help our city get out of this mess. Instead you want to throw it on me. You want me to make the decision as to what jobs to cut. With that, I'll close. Let's end it.
Mayor, may I reply?
May I reply?
No, we're going to move on to the next item.
Thank you, Mayor. May I be recognized?
So let's go on to number, item number, um, number 20. Let's move on because we all need to get home. We beat this over the head too much. Item number 20, consideration and action to consider application received for Marshal F. Herbert. You serve on the Board of Adjustments and Appeal for the term of June 2024, June 2026. So let's move forward.
Approve.
Okay, motion on the floor. Uh, Councilman Burton. Okay, do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second from Councilman Science. Let's call the vote. Uh, Mr. Valverde.
Yay.
Okay, Mr. Science.
Yay.
Mr. Uh, Lesea.
Nay.
Okay, Mr. Sellers.
Yay.
Mr. Burton.
Yeah.
Order one, motion carries. Mr. Herbert is now on the board of BOA.
Mayor, Mayor, since you refuse to acknowledge me and recognize me, I'm going to step out of the meeting.
You've not been recognized. Do whatever you need to do, sir. Okay, you're doing us a favor. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Item number 20.
Gentlemen and citizens of the, of the city. Thank you for your time. I cannot support not being recognized. So I am departing because I am not being recognized.
Please leave the premises.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. 22, discussion and action to consider EDC board recommendation for joint EDC city council meeting hosted by the EDC. Do we have a motion for this item? To conduct a joint session with the EDC and the, uh, city council meeting.
So moved.
Okay, we have that by Councilman Valverde.
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Mr. Burton. Okay, I called, uh, the vote, Mr. Valverde. Yay or nay?
Yay.
Yay. Okay, Mr. Science?
Yay.
Yay, okay. Mr. Sellers.
Nay.
Nay, one nay. Mr. Burton.
Yay.
Yay. Okay, so we have, um, what is it? It's, uh, one, two, three, four. So three to one. Motion carries. Okay, and now we will move on to item number 23, discussion and possible action to require all meeting the agenda items proposed by mayor, city council. They have possible action including supporting documentation. Mr. Science, I'm going to allow you just a little time to talk about this as little as possible so we can move forward.
Thank you. Go right ahead, sir. Thank you. The reason I propose this is because the city council members need to have as much information as possible whenever an item is brought up that we need to take action on, that we need to make a decision on. So as an example, in June, there were several proposals made that did not have any kind of supporting documentation. They were asking for essentially a blank check. And Mayor, you actually got upset at me for asking for additional information. So if we pass this, then as we propose, uh, agenda items, we would have to present that information for our colleagues to have that information in a timely manner so we can research it and make, make informed decisions.
Great. Thank you very much for this item on the agenda. I appreciate it very much. I'll definitely take it into consideration. How would you like to move on? What kind of possible action you want to take on it? Or you don't want to take any action? Just FYI information? How would you like to move?
No, the, the action is to require that.
Whatever you would like, sir. Whatever your purview is.
Yes, so.
Would you like to make a motion? Would you like to make a motion?
Sure, I can make a motion.
I'm just asking, is your item on the agenda? What would you like to do with it?
I would make a motion to require that city council
To make a motion, correct? The proper language is I would move to make a motion. Go ahead. What is your motion?
I move to make a motion that city council members and the mayor are required to include supporting documentation when they submit items to the agenda. If they require possible action.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Hey, Councilman Sellers, open up for discussion. I just tell you, I'll do my best. How's that, Mr. Science? I will really make an effort.
Oh, when, when would this documentate, would the documentation be included?
With the agenda items.
When we get our packet?
Right.
Okay. That's, that's fine with me.
Yeah.
You know, I, I don't want to receive it as I'm sitting down.
Exactly, that, that's why I say we need, it needs to be included with the agenda so it can be included with the packet so we can read it over the weekend or whatever and make informed decisions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Science. Do our best. Okay, so we have a second to the item, let's call the vote. Councilman Valverde?
Yay.
Nay or yay? Yay, Councilman Science?
Yay.
Councilman Sellers?
Yay.
Councilman Burton?
Yay.
Okay, great. Let's move on. All you had to do is just ask me. You didn't have to put it on the agenda, but it's okay. Item number twenty-four, discussion and action. To respectfully request council members make an extra effort to begin working together to build collaboration and make suggestions, place items on the agenda that are constructive and conducted, conducive to solving the dire financial needs of our city, helping our community, fellow citizens, and promoting business, community prosperity. Let's just move on from that agenda. That item just speaks for itself. No problem. Let's move on. Do we have item number twenty-five? Departmental reports and Q and A, police department, fire department, community development, economic development, and public affairs. Do we have any items for that from anybody in the department? Want to move on that, speak on that? Okay, no reports, nothing from staff? Okay? Great, now we have announcements, comments, and requests. Item number twenty-six, announcements, comments by mayor or any council member. Do you have any items that need to be discussed, brought to the attention of staff for the next meetings or anything like that?
I, I would like to find out more since I kind of got shut down because it was out of the realm of the questioning. I want to find out more about Hillcrest and, and if and what funds we've received from Bear County and where that money is.
Okay. Do you want to instruct a certain staff member? Okay, Mr. Pedales, then you'll take care of that before your departure. And if you can on your prior to your departure, you can bring me up to date and the council on all the yeah, bring us up, myself included. Bring me up to date on all the stuff that needs to be looked at and any negotiations. Also, I had requested for you to provide and give me your calendar dates of your meetings so I know who you'll be meeting and talking with. Perhaps maybe I can come in and collaborate together. It's not, okay, but please just let me know on what your schedule, your itinerary
Really?
Between now and the twenty. Okay, no, I want it done, not tried. Okay, thank you. Okay, there were a couple of items I wanted to talk about real quick, make it fast on future agenda items. So I'd like to see possibly on the next item on the agenda, possibly in, to create an internal affairs department for the police and fire, but mainly police, so that we can have either a citizens oversight committee that we can establish, that we can possibly feel some of these complaints that may come in against the chief or in anybody in the department. And we can have an oversight committee. The city of San Antonio has an oversight committee for the police to oversee any complaints that are come in. We may look at possibly an internal department, internal affairs to look at objectively that is not controlled by the police themselves. And that this is a non-interested party that just rather has its oversight to oversee the department on any possible complaints so the department doesn't investigate itself. An outside internal department will look at that and then give recommendations to the staff or to city council as well as to how to move forward on those particular things. And obviously, with those things will be discussed in executive session so that we have privy to, to privacy on that. But I'd like to see that possibly discussed in the next meeting, yes?
So I just sent two officers to be internal affair certified because Chief Volzit sent me.
Fantastic.
So there's three of us. Right now, we're dealing with a complaint right now that we get randomly. We could go months without complaints. So it goes back to something that was discussed where there's body cam footage. There's stuff that's not privy to civilians. I can reach out, I, I can get with Mr. Pedales and we can see as far as
Again, we're, we're going into detail about something.
We don't need to, this is
It's just a future agenda.
Right. And perhaps we can look at the city of San Antonio's plan, how they handle it.
Okay.
Just follow along that.
I just need direction for that.
Okay, absolutely, we recognize that completely. And then obviously I had recommended the salary audit. I want to follow up on that and conduct an employee compensation study. So I'd like to have on the agenda for the next council meeting or the next, next council meeting we have or the budget cycle. We need to talk about those employment firms.[1741.29]